All right, it is two o'clock and it is July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four. Glad to see everybody here today. We're gonna, as normal, we'll start off with a prayer. Mr. Langford's gonna introduce us with a prayer. Mr. Thomas is gonna introduce with the pledge of the flag.
Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you for this another beautiful day, an opportunity that we have to come together as a commission and a community and conduct the business has been set before us. We pray, Father, that you guide our minds and our hearts in the right direction, that we might study the evidence that's been presented to us, the budget and all the other things, that we might make the best decisions for this county and for everybody that lives here, that we can live our life here on earth and serve you. We pray, Father, that you be with our nation as we seem to be in turmoil. We just ask, Father, that you would take control and turn it in the right direction and prick people's hearts to where they'll want to turn back to you and serve you and do the right things. And if not, we know, Father, you're still in control. We ask, Father, that you'd be with our military as they serve throughout the world to keep us free. We pray we'll always be free and always have the opportunity to come and go as we please, as we do here even today. Be with this county as we continue to manage it and do the things that we need to do. Be with our first responders, protect them also. We thank you, Father, for everything that you've ever done for us. Let us always put you first in our hearts and in our lives. We pray, Father, that you'll continue to bless us in every way. We thank you for your long suffering, for your patience, and especially for your love. For everything that you do for us, we just pray, Father, that we'll continue to honor and glorify you in every way across the name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of the flag. The United States of America and to the republic from which it's founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're gonna start off with our budget here. And Mr. Newton, are you gonna run the show for us?
Sure, Mr. Chair. So we're gonna start with mental health and Meridian is here to present to you. In your books, you're gonna find them on page fifty-three, and their presentation starts on page fifty-four.
Hello, my name is Ashley Tozer. I'm a senior vice president of medical services. Do you all have a copy of the card, please, that I started to talk to you here or you're gonna?
We do, but there's also a point in the.
I was just gonna say, I don't think the audience can hear that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna. Speak, test, do a test and do it.
Testing.
There you go. There you go. We can hear.
Okay, I'll start over. My name is Ashley Tozer. I am Meridian's senior vice president of medical services. So I'm gonna be presenting on behalf of Meridian today. So will it be up there or will just, I'll just talk to you what you all have access to see?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We have it in front of us.
Okay, very good. So I know you all are probably familiar with us, but I'll just give a little background. We have been providing mental health services in this area for fifty years. We were established in nineteen seventy-one and are accredited by CARF, which is the council for accreditation of rehabilitation facilities. And we actually just had a reac- accreditation audit and we have, so yay, every three years we have to have that done. We address a broad range of community and individual needs that includes mental health, substance disorders. We provide services for adults and children. We have a continuum of services and levels of care and supportive services, which also includes our crisis stabilization unit. Our mission is to promote the health, recovery, and well-being of those affected by mental illness and substance disorders through prevention, coordinated treatment, and supportive services. Our vision is hope, recovery, and wellness are within everyone's reach, and that's really what we strive to do on a daily basis and all the services that we provide. You can see here in this picture that it's basically our continuum of services. So it starts with education and outreach, kind of that preventing piece, and then actually goes into all of the various treatments that we provide, starting with our highest level of care being that process intervention, and then moving on to other various levels of care that include residential, outpatient, substance, mental health, and various grant-funded services, which includes season SAG, which is related to criminal justice services. And then we have, of course, our supported services, which includes housing, veteran services, care coordination, supportive employment, and so on. I was actually just talking with Ms. Knight about, we're gonna be hosting a vet fest at Otter Springs this weekend, August third. So we do a lot of work with the veterans here in this community. If you go on to the next slide, we do provide telehealth services, which is something we started doing more often whenever COVID came about and there were, there were restrictions. So it looks like three hundred and sixty-seven Gilchrist County residents received two thousand two hundred and ninety-five telehealth services so far in this fiscal year that has now ended. Our fiscal year goes from July first to June thirtieth. So at the time, I believe this was created, it was sometime in early June. This, of course, allows for faster access to treatment and the individuals are able to be seen in their own homes, which allows for the, sometimes the stigma and so on that may cause a barrier for individuals receiving services to be able to push that aside, so they can be comfortable being seen in their own home. And then clients with no devices may qualify for some type of tablet or something that they can utilize to receive those services at no cost. So if you look here, this gives some of the demographics of who we serve here in Gilchrist County. As you can see, it looks like we're providing the most services to individuals ages forty to sixty-four and those that are white. So that's our biggest demographic here in Gilchrist. And then this specifically goes through how many services were actually provided to each resident based upon the level of care. So adults, you're looking at acute care, that would be our crisis stabilization unit, or our disability-receiving facility, counseling with outpatient services, residential, psychiatric care, there's also outpatient, medication-assisted treatment, that is related to those with opioid use disorder who might be on some type of M A P treatment, which could be Bivitrol, methadone, or buprenorphine. And then our mobile response team is also in this community as well. And then children, those are the same categories of services there. So we accept a wide range of care, ensuring that the medical public funds are the payer of last resort. We, of course, would attempt to go Medicaid or some other type of insurance that individuals have. We also may look at our grants and other opportunities. But again, we are required to ask for local funding, and that, of course, is the payer of last resort. In Gilchrist County, the majority of individuals we're seeing, eighty-four percent, are at or below the poverty guidelines, and nine percent of those were seen were eligible, were ineligible for any subsidy to address the cost of their care. So we really have to look at a fiscal fund in order to provide these services. Individual care is funded through Medicaid, state E C F, and local matching funds. And so forty-six percent of the services provided thus far in Gilchrist have been paid for with this in advance care funding from state and county. Twenty-eight percent have been covered by Medicaid, and twenty percent have some form of insurance. Their insurance only covers seven percent of the services these individuals need and receive. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we are required to generate local matching funds from some of our state and federal funds. So we are expected to get that total dollar amount there this year, and we are requesting the same amount that we did last year from Gilchrist, which is sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. I also wanted to point out that in addition to some of the services that we talked about up there, we have also received an Idalia and Sina grant, where we are helping hurricane survivors in this area with getting funding to get their homes rebuilt and so on. So we have been doing a lot of work in the community related to that and generating those grants from disadvantaged individuals. That is our CEO, Don. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
We're having a real hard time understanding her. I don't believe it's her, but the reverb that I'm getting is making it sound like gerbil up here, and I can't understand but about half of what she's saying. When she was reading it, I could follow her, but when she got off script, I can't understand what she's saying. Is it possible to fix that a little bit?
I'm trying to adjust it as she's talking.
Okay. Well, that could be the case. I don't doubt that. I, I think she's speaking clearly, but when we get the reverb out of the speaker, am I getting the same thing from you all?
Yeah, I'm hearing, yeah. I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, I haven't heard, I could follow you when you were following the script, but when you got off script, I couldn't understand but a little bit of what you were saying. I can hear you, but I can't understand it. So we gotta, we gotta get this a little better somehow.
Yeah, a lot better.
You wanna try, try this mic up there, something? No? Okay. All right, continue. We'll, we'll try to follow along with you the best we can.
Yeah, so I mean, I was just talking about other things that we have been doing that aren't included in there as it relates to Sema and Idalia grants that we receive for hurricane survivors. So our staff are helping individuals get significant funding to rebuild their homes and so on, in addition to providing the services that we do for these individuals that may be experiencing some type of mental health or substance difficulty because of what they've been through. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. What I also said that was off script is on August third this weekend, we're gonna be having a veterans festival at Otter Springs.
What kind of festival?
For the veterans, it's called that stuff, at Otter Springs.
August the third?
August the third.
At what time?
I don't know the time, and I will get that information to you. Over there, ten to three.
That would be just Saturday. Ten to three, Saturday. Okay. Ten to three, Saturday. Otter Springs.
We appreciate all that you do and also keeping the budget the same as last year. We appreciate that very much. I know lots of people in our county take advantage of your services, and so all that you do, we appreciate.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Y'all doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, come on up if you would, please, and give us your name so we can have it on record.
Christian, I, I serve on the board of Meridian and pay your healthcare, and I just wanted to tell you, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners, how much we appreciate your continuous support. And as you can see from the graphs and the numbers, the impact that Meridian makes in Gilchrist County.
And thank you for giving us that data like y'all have. We appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Thank you for all y'all doing.
Appreciate it. Okay. Any questions? All right.
Mr. Chair, next up, we have aid to private organizations, and I believe we have, Mr. Van Canon is here to speak on behalf of Swanee Leagues. You will find their information on page seventy-one in your book.
Swanee, what's it?
Swanee Valley League. All right, you're today.
Good, good. How you doing?
All right.
So I'm Matthew Van Canon. I'm here on behalf of Swanee Valley League. I'm the director of the organization. As I talk to your me, kind of use the word, the term Gilchrist League, that's the main, main that we operate under, although I bother one, two, three, is Swanee Valley League. So we're a one-hundred percent volunteer-run organization that provides youth recreational services for the children of Gilchrist County, primarily target the ages five through twelve-year-olds through. This, this past school year, and that's kind of the way that we look at our numbers, we had approximately a thousand participants in sports this year, within the nine-hundred, nine-hundred-plus range. Some of those, those participants play one sport, some of them may play three sport seasons with us. But nonetheless, we're, we're doing a, a good job reaching out to the youth of our county. This past school year, we did add several additional sports. We had been only doing soccer in the fall. We offered that in the fall, but we also offered a spring soccer league. And then this past school year, we offered for the first time, fall and spring volleyball for the girls. So as we're continuing to look at what the needs of the youth are of our counties, of county, offering programs as, as they become available. Several of our sports now, volleyball, soccer, and basketball, we participate in the organization ACTFOR. It's a Lockwood County time to help on recreation. It's a nonprofit. Basically, it just administers the league. The one that's paid from it, we pay a fee per team to enter, covers the officials for those games and the scheduling of games. So us, the chief, Lynn Bronson, and other municipalities outside of the Lockwood County participate in it. But that is, we are now building three sports in that, in that league. A little bit about, about our organization or about our needs. So in the letter, the request that we, we put in there, we covered some of our major capital expenditures that we had this past year, just ongoing maintenance of, of our property. In our requests that we have this year, we do, we are asking for the additional twenty-five thousand over and above what you guys have provided us in, in some years in the past. The last two years, you've provided us an additional twenty-five thousand, which is being earmarked specifically for replacing the poles and the lights on Field Four, which is the southernmost field at the Field of Dreams. We received a quote on those a few years ago, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for the materials to be delivered to site. Does not include the installation of the, of the lighting. So we're trying to build toward that. It's not an immediate need at this point to replace the poles, but in the right, rate of going twenty-five thousand dollars a year, by the time we get the funds to do it, we'll need to replace, replace those lights.
Matthew, how, how would are the, the lights on that field? They're in original or? Yeah.
Is that something we could get a grant to replace those poles with?
Not at this, or my understanding is not at this time, because Gilchrist County Recreational Authority is still the owner of the southern part of the property. The county has the northern part, but G C R A is the owner of the southern part.
And you said a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Hundred and fifty, a hundred, and I'm just guessing based on, you know, how the COVID inflation goes on.
Yeah. No, I, I talked to Mr. Denny George asking, because they might be able to help as well, and that's pretty much what he said.
Right. You know, some of the projects that we have coming up, and it was kind of covered in this letter, we, we are to the point where we're needing to start rehabbing some of our fields. The outfield have been utilized three seasons a year, football season, soccer, soccer in the fall, and then baseball in the spring. So we only get the summer months to really give the field the rest. So we're kind of to the point where we're gonna need to put some money into the turf on those, those outfield to, to help keep them at a, at a quality playing level.
You hoping to just fertilizer or, or, I mean, I don't know what it takes to maintain a turf field for that type of thing, but it's.
We need, we need to get the weeds under control, do some aeration on it, fertilize it, just really put some, put some money into it that we haven't, haven't been able to in prior years. And I know there's been some questions around, what do the registration fees for Gilchrist County, for Gilchrist League go to? Really, our, our primary funding for the sports itself are the registration fee, business sponsorships of teams, and concessions. All but one of the sports, those, that pool of money covers the operating costs of the sport. Tackle football is the one sport that is extremely expensive to be fun. You have to refurbish the helmets every couple of years. The helmets, they have a lifespan, whether they've been used or not, more or less, they have a lifespan on the helmets. And then that is the only sport that we provide uniforms to, that we collect every year and continue to reuse those uniforms. So that is a sport, but a lot of the other sports help cover the cost as well as some of the money the county provides to us, the twenty-five thousand dollars you provided in previous years for operating expenses. Some of that helps to offset the costs of football. What we have really tried to do is, is set our registration fees at a level that is affordable for the participants in our league. You know, as, as families have financial needs, we have always taken care of that for them on a case-by-case basis. But most of the monies that we, we rely on are from county and Rotary does help us, has, has been helping us for a number of years with a, a donation through the league.
Well, you know, I know you do a great job. Every time I go by there, it seems to be lit up just about every night of the week, and just hundreds of kids running around, playing ball, playing soccer, whatever sport they happen to be in. My girls participated in it when they were younger, and we, we loved it, and they all got a chance to try every sport out that there was. So we understand the importance of it in our community, and, and we want to do what we can to help you. But we'll just have to see what's in the budget.
And I, I would say long range for Gilchrist League and early for the county is space. We, we are, we have outgrown facilities there, and we have a thousand kids participating throughout the year in sports. The school system has been a big help to us. They do provide Trent Elementary practice space for volleyball and basketball throughout the school year, and then we host basketball and football games at the high schools, or Trent High School for basketball, and alternate between the, the schools for football. So we do appreciate the support the county has provided, both the school district and the county commission. But kind of long range is space is our primary, is gonna be our biggest, biggest need into the future.
So, so basically, you're saying that you want the same thing as last year?
That's what our request is.
And then twenty-five will be, operating expense and twenty-five will be for.
That's correct. At this point, we have fifty thousand dollars that the county has provided us from two previous years in a capital account going toward those lights. We're asking for an additional twenty-five thousand to go with that plus twenty-five thousand property.
So taking total.
Yeah, I, I wanna give you my card. I asked the board at the last meeting to allow me to get with you and some others and address the future needs. So I've met with one person already. I, I'd like to meet with you and, and, and a couple more, and let's see what we can come up with a game plan and, and do, and do some future, future planning. But here's my card right here. If you'll email me or call me, we'll set up a time and, and meet. I'd like to look into it.
A lot of things we do, we do with grants.
Correct.
And, and I, I talked to the people over in Lockwood County when they got new facilities, oh, we got it with a grant. And I'm thinking, well, the grants are out there. We certainly have people that can help fill them out and help get them the way they need to be so that y'all can receive them. But you can't apply for grants because part of it you own. Is that what the?
That is my understanding that in order for you guys to be eligible for some, for certain grants, the county has to own the property.
But if, if a grant would buy some property, we could put it under Gilchrist County and then apply for a grant to buy the property. And then the next year, maybe apply for another grant to put the fields out there and what we eat out there.
I know there's a lot of grants available, but we haven't seemed to be able to get them ourselves. And I was wondering maybe what the reason was, and I guess it's because it's not owned by one entity.
That might be something we have to work on the street. I went to an economic class down in Orlando at the, at the fact conference, and one of them was on sports tourism. Florida is the number one in the nation. But there are some money out there. There's some help out there. There's some, there's some, there are some grants out there. We may have to do the groundwork like you're talking about, but that's one thing I want to get with you and get in contact with these people and, and see what is available. A lot of people don't understand how important youth sports are. I, I coached Pop Warner football in Lockaway for, for five years when my, my oldest son was playing. And these kids, they just love it. It gives them something to do. It, it occupies their time. And, and actually, two of them went on to be NFL football players. It gives them an opportunity to develop their talent and be around other kids and, and, and work as a team. There's just so much that comes out of that, and I realize that by being involved with it. And what y'all do is, is just super fantastic for, for all these kids, all of them. It really is. It means a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. You indicated needing space. What, what's the primary need?
Field, ball fields.
Ball fields, space.
Primary baseball and soccer usage. I mean, just, just to give you an idea of numbers, last fall, we had two hundred and thirty-four participants in soccer. And between baseball and softball, we had well over two hundred and fifty. So you try to practice that many kids on those ball fields. You, you see the parking situation out there if you drive by on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday night of how crowded the place is.
Yeah, up and over.
Matthew, so we've had some conversations, and I, there are some questions related to how you spend money. And I have confidence in you and the others involved, because I know you have a financial background. I think what it would help is just kind of summarizing the finance, finances, where you spend money and where it goes. And most people are gonna understand when you present that to them. I, I, I've been there. I know a lot of us have, you know, the original Gilchrist County Recreational Authority when the fields were built. I know how much time it takes, and we appreciate what you guys do. You don't, I know you get probably lots of criticism for the no pay you make, and, but you're doing it for the kids, and, and so this for the right reasons. So we appreciate that. And I just think being able to communicate where the money is going would be helpful. And just encourage you to do that, and if we can help, we'd be glad to help as well.
Yeah, I mean, too, that we, we do try to be good stewards of the monies that we have, both the registration fees and the donations from the county and Rotary. You know, we, we do have monies in reserve, but part of that is, as you can see from our letter, last year alone, we spent almost twenty-three thousand dollars to repair the lighting issues that we have out there. So if we were operating to a zero budget, down to zero every year, spending every penny we brought in, we would not be able to handle those and would have to rely on additional stuff. So, but yet, we will, we can.
As they age, it gets more expensive and more expensive to keep.
Well, and that's the, that's been the biggest, that's been the biggest thing. We've been able to defer a lot of things for a number of years, but it's the last several years, we've really had to pace the music on some of those expenditures. So hopefully, as we get through several things, we'll, we'll be able to put some out, further out in the future now.
Yeah, the fields.
So we've been able to cover it.
I think it was built in the late nineties, and so it's getting where you gotta replace things, and things are gonna tear up and. I think it was built in the late nineties and so it's getting, um, where you gotta replace things and things are going to tear up and fall down and.
The ones we've been able to defer that long are, are big ticket items, which is the, the lights.
And you're going to get more and more youth as more and more people come to Gilchrist County.
Right.
You're going to get more and more demand. And to add to what Daryl said, um, if you had some type of spreadsheet, I have people asking, what do they do with the money? What do they spend this on? If you had some type of spreadsheet, and I'm not saying you'd have to let everybody in Gilchrist County have a copy of it, but if, if, if someone like us looked at it, we could say, well, he spent, you know, quite a bit on this and he put quite a bit on that and paid the light bill. And insurance, insurance is expensive, always expensive. It goes up every year. And like you said, your football equipment, um, that is just a, a big, big cost, a real big cost because of the safety issues and everything else. But, uh, maybe sometimes if you could put together some type of spreadsheet and we spent X number of dollars this year and that's what we spent it on. Just kind of a budget sheet and, and, and let us take a look at it. Like I said, you don't have to share it with everybody, but we would have a better idea, maybe answer the public a little bit better about, about what you spend your money. I've, I've had several questions this year about, about it and their kids were participating and some of them, you know, ask questions.
Sure.
You're gonna always have questions. I look forward to talking to you though.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for what you're doing.
All right. Thank you, man. We appreciate it. Thanks.
So, um, do we want to continue with, um, aid to private? Um, I don't have anybody else here, I think, to present on maybe aid to private. Um, but do we want to go ahead and wrap up everybody on aid?
Again, I can't hear, want to hear what you're saying.
Do you want to wrap up everything on aid to private right now?
Yeah, they're here. They're here.
There's nobody else here to present, but.
Okay.
So I'll just go through them.
Okay. There, no one, no one's going to come present later?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So we, uh, we did have one change on aid to private. We just received today a letter from Bell Library. Um, they are actually increasing their request from forty-five hundred dollars to fifty-two hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did, did you provide the letter?
He said Bell Library? Okay.
I, I have a copy of it here.
Okay.
I have.
Um, Mr. Prosser has a copy of the letter.
And the chamber for an increase also?
The chamber, I was gonna, uh, hold off on that one for a second, but, um, anyway, is there any concerns or issue with increasing that seven hundred dollars?
No.
I don't. They do a wonderful.
I don't see. They do a good job there.
I've taken my granddaughter there.
Well, that here don't pay very good.
Yeah.
Good program.
So next item is, um, the, the chamber is requesting an increase from twenty-one five to twenty-six nine oh eight. Um, you'll find that request on page sixty-nine and seventy in your book. I will tell you this, um, there has been a, a change at the chamber. Walter Wobig was the executive director and that was part of the reason for the, um, the increased request. That was to help provide additional pay for Mr. Wobig. Uh, Mr. Wobig actually put in his letter of resignation and so currently the chamber is without a, a executive director.
I did not know he had that.
Yep.
Came up and gave that presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
With them.
Um, so anyway, uh, the, the request is here for, for twenty-six nine oh eight. Again, the, the increases were primarily to assist with providing additional pay for the executive director. So I will leave that to the board at your discretion, um, whether or not, you know, to leave it at twenty-one five or to, you know, approve the request to give additional funds, you know, for hiring a new executive director.
Well, I think if we're gonna get someone of quality that can continue doing what he's been doing, we're gonna have to be, we'd be willing to pay. Uh, it is a kind of important year with the one hundred year celebration coming in. Be nice to get someone back in that office that could help keep that thing, the ball rolling with that. I'm sure if it was, uh, left vacant for a long time, some of things may fall to the side there. So, um, at this point in time, uh, what is it, what, do you know what the salary is of the?
It's been nineteen-five.
Yeah, and it's.
Uh, which is a part-time position. Uh, it's twenty hours a week.
Twenty hours a week.
Walter put in a lot more hours than part-time.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, which is gonna be the challenge, you know? Walter did, did a great job. Um, so yeah, I, you know, I'll leave that to the board's discretion if, if you want to leave it at that, you know, with the increase. And I will let the chamber know.
Todd, what, um, how much does the membership pay towards the budget for the chamber?
So the, uh, a business pays a hundred dollars per year. Um, nonprofits and individuals pay thirty dollars per year.
How much do y'all bring in, um, yearly and, um, approximately?
Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me to be honest, but we have somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five members. And I don't know the breakdown of nonprofit versus business, but.
Yeah, I, I would rather, uh, get a little more information.
Yeah.
And with Mr. Walter leaving, keep it at last year's budget, but it's up to the board.
I would support leaving it like it is until we find a new director and then.
Evaluate him.
Evaluate him and see what, you know, like I said, Walter put in more hours than he was required to. If the first is going to be part-time and maybe not do everything Walter did, maybe he only needs twenty-one. We can address that at a later time.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So consensus is to leave it at the twenty-one five?
Yeah.
And readdress, readdress the salary at a, at a time that a, a new director is, uh, is hired. If, if, uh, depending on the hours they're willing to work and that type of thing. Now, this year I think is gonna probably be more hours than normal because of all the one hundred year celebration stuff they're, they're planning. But in a regular year, it may not be as, as hectic. So that was my only concern of, of getting someone in there as soon as possible who can keep that ball rolling. Cause they had a bunch of really neat ideas for a hundred year celebration. I'd like to see those happen.
And they do have several people working on that.
Okay.
And, and the chamber does a lot. They have the, the Christmas thing and the spring sale and, you know, you, me and Todd both serve on, on, on the board. And they've got something planned, four, five, six event throughout the year. So there's a lot of volunteer outreach, a lot of time, a lot of effort goes into it and volunteer don't pay real well.
No.
No.
But there's a lot of people that, that do put an effort into, to making all that happen. And Walter worked with everybody really well. Everybody, uh, everybody participated and done their part, but, uh, everyone knows events have somebody in charge of it and there's a lot of, lot of work put into it to make, to make it happen.
So other than, uh, other than North Central Florida Planning Council, um, there are no other increase requests. Um, just continuation budget requests. Um, I just passed out the, um, the food pantry letter. I just received that today, actually. Um, it does indicate that they are still requesting the fifteen thousand dollars, but it gives you a little bit more information on, um, what's been going on over the past year, just for your information. And.
So the senior center is the pantry. Is that the same with what you just handed out?
No, sir. Um, so the senior center, um.
Okay.
Is the senior.
S R E C Advisory Board. And that's actually the one, um, Mr. Norm Conti.
Right.
Works with. And there's a letter from, from him as well in your book.
I don't know how Mr. Norm does what he does, but he does lots of stuff for the seniors. Yep.
And his information is on page seventy-three. Um, with that, I think we.
The North Central Florida Planning. That went up, Mr. Cloverdo, only or?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that population, no?
It does.
Is that required?
Um, I wouldn't say it's required.
That's something we always do.
Yeah, I, it's definitely not a requirement. Um, but my understanding is that the planning council, they, they assist us with, like the hazmat. Is that, is that the one I'm thinking of?
Yeah, they, but then we have to pay additional for that, but we're, uh, we're required to be a member of it. And there's different parts we can participate in and then we pay for those, those parts as well. They share information with us on any updates and, and that types of thing for this. But, um, we, we have, we don't use them for a whole lot of services anymore. But they do help us monitor our hazardous waste and just so you kind of understand what that is. Um, any type of hazardous waste from like, uh, like your waste oil at a service station or whatever, has to be properly disposed of, documented. They have to have all the receipts for that. That's what they monitor. They go around and make sure that's all being done correctly and monitored. So that's, that's what they do.
So it's required?
Well, yes. It, it, you have to have someone doing it and they're probably gonna do it less, for less than anyone else would.
I know, Kendrick, you, you represent us on that and you all feel like we're getting the value.
Mm-hmm.
Sound like.
No, they help with the amnesty danger if that doesn't, or different.
No, they don't help with amnesty. That's not. That, if they, La Chute County helps with the amnesty. Okay.
Okay. If there's no other questions, um, move on to the property appraiser. You'll find him on page ninety-eight through one seventeen.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
How are you doing today? I'm a leg. It's a property appraiser. It's funny, y'all having a debate there. Um, asking right now for a two-point-eight percent increase. Uh, most of all that is due to my contract, had some small contract increases. Tuition on courses for my employees to get certified, so those, that went up a little bit. Had two employees hit longevity numbers, uh, that I'm gonna be paying out on course post, posted rates went up just a little bit. Um, but that's, that's pretty much it. Um, I, I do want you to realize that there is no insurance increases or salary increases in this budget right now. Um, you know, most y'all know I have to send my stuff into Tallahassee and it has to go. That letter that you sent out initially, I had to send that letter with my budget and of course that letter had no raises and no insurance increases, so.
You got, you got a footnote down there about your, uh, will have, budget amendments will have to be sent to Department of Revenue?
Right. Yep.
And, uh, and, uh, on the Walter retirement.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We appreciate you keeping, uh, increase percent down. You set me a good example for everybody. Damon, I did notice in your, uh, vehicles, at some point you're gonna have to replace vehicles because you got twenty-five year old.
We're pushing twenty-year-old vehicles in the office. Um, and I actually was gonna come this year, uh, and discuss that, but I've been kind of doing a little research. And of course, right now there's a lot of stuff being said out there, but from what I'm hearing, the car market is struggling. And possibly six months to a year from now, maybe a better time to purchase a car. So I'm figured mine, mine lasts another year.
Yeah.
I mean, that's no problem. So whether that's true or false, uh, if we can save some money next year because of prices being cut on these vehicles, I figured I was gonna wait one more year.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, of course, kind of moving away from the budget a minute, you know, not knowing exactly. The values aren't going down at this point. I, I mean, it looks like they stabilized a little bit, but I mean, we've had unprecedented increases for the last two years. And, um, so, uh, in the first six months of this year, um, they're staying about the same. So we're not seeing any turn down of value at this point, so.
How many vehicles you have?
Three.
Three. You'd, you'd replace them one, one at a time?
I would probably just replace one at a time, the oldest one. I've got a two thousand five, a two thousand six, and a two thousand eleven. One, I had a tree fall on one of the two thousand sixes. It was something about that a few years ago, but. Anyway, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Appreciate what you did. Thank you very much.
Actually, Damon, Damon, um, so you looking at next year, potentially needing to add, add vehicles?
Add a vehicle, yeah. Yeah, one or two, you know.
And when we, when I say next year, are we talking about like next calendar or next fiscal?
Yeah, next fiscal.
Okay, so.
So that's something that's, you're gonna come back to us or?
I'm gonna wait till the next calendar.
Okay. For next budget, budgeting.
I'm gonna wait till the next budget year.
Okay.
All right.
Good. I just wanted.
I'd say, I'm getting, you know, we're getting little odds and ends on the vehicles having problems, but nothing major, you know, so. Um, I'd say that, that we definitely manage another year, so you're no problem.
All right. Thank you, Damon. Appreciate it.
And next up, we got a tax collector.
Good afternoon, Michael McElroy, Tax collector. So as you would see on the personnel services, um, this does not, uh, include any raises for our employee. The legislature approved a pretty large, um, pay increase for the tax collector. So that's where that seven percent increase has come from. Uh, the operating expense system, as you have heard me talk about, um, us replacing our tax system. We have a twenty-year-old tax system, um, that's become very ineffective, uh, difficult to be updated for. And so we have entered into a contract, um, with a company and we entered in a, into a, not an agreement with other counties, but, um, um, Columbia, Dixie, and myself, we used our bargaining power, um, with a company called Phoenix to obtain a good rate for those of us who are physically constrained. And so we were able to, um, to, to get a new tax system, um, very extensively based upon everything that's out there. A lot of the larger companies do not want smaller counties like Gilchrist. There's just not enough money in it for them in order to make it advantageous. So whenever you find a company that is willing to work with a small county, you, you need to jump on it and you need to, um, have friends with you and that's what we do. So that's why the four percent increase in the operating expense.
Everything else is good with the, uh, cameras and the licensing and, and all that?
Everything is good.
Okay, cause that's a fairly, fairly new system and.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I've had nothing but good reports about what you do up there and, and good reports about the office in general. Y'all do a great job, Mike. I really do appreciate it. And, uh, and so, uh.
Thank you. And again, we, we couldn't do it with, without your help. Um, and I, every chance that I get to speak, I always, um, thank you guys because with, without your assistance, we wouldn't be where we are. Uh, we didn't have enough electric power in the, in the courthouse to do the things we needed nor enough space. And so even though we are still faced challenged, we are far and above and beyond where we would have been, um, had we stayed in the courthouse. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have these services. And one of the things that I also like to say is, um, it's taken us about three years to return to Gilchrist the money that, that was allotted to us in rehabbing this building over here. So in three years, we've been able to pay that back with the fees that we generated. So again, thank you for your confidence in, in me and our staff. And we look forward to, to many years of additional, um, services and things that we can bring as the budget allows.
Is your bail office still doing?
Bail office is doing great. I would love to open it another day. Um, staffing, of course, is an issue. Uh, we're trying to, to keep that down because as you know, that's one of the largest expenses that we have is staffing. So, uh, but eventually we will want to open it another day.
Well, you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The concealed, the concealed permits, the driver's license and that, that saved a lot of people a lot of money having to go out, outside the county.
Lot of money, a lot of time.
Plus that money stays.
And that was money that was going to other counties, so.
Yep.
Do you have any idea how many people you serve on an annual basis? Ever had a count done?
I'll tell you what, there are days I think it's, uh, fourteen million.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
You know, you're, you're serving a tri-county area and you know that.
Yeah, we do get a lot of out-of-county, uh, I say a lot. We, we do get a significant number of out-of-county folks. Um, we do a lot of out-of-county driving that we do try to limit that on the Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, we've actually started limiting the number of out-of-county because we were being inundated, um, with out-of-county requests. Um, we, we, we love the out-of-county money, but we don't want to sacrifice the service that our in-county, um, residents have come to expect. So it's a fine line. So when we see opportunities to streamline or to, to, uh, navigate and to funnel. So when we see opportunities to streamline or to, to, uh, navigate and to funnel these out-of-county folks into a, a specific timeframe, it works much better. And so we're, we're learning that as we go.
Well, every time I go over there, I have to wait, but I don't have to wait long, so I appreciate it.
That's right. It's, it's a fine line.
Yeah, yeah.
Always busy up there.
Always. I tell you, I think it's the busiest spot, maybe unless it's Heart Springs. That Heart Springs is pretty busy, but I, I'd say it's one of the busiest places in Gilchrist County.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, you offer a lot of services.
Yes, thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Crosby, um, do you want to go to some of the smaller departments now, or you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, we, we have a few people from some of the smaller departments. It won't take long, if you're okay with doing that. Um, if you'd like, we can go ahead and go to TDC, Miss Donna's right here. That's on page twenty-five of the handout and page forty-eight in the book.
Good afternoon, Donna Kramer, you're TDC Executive Director and your Economic Director. First of all, I would like to give a little update of where this cash and money comes from that's in the budget. I would like folks to understand it's not coming out of the general funds. This is not taxpayers' payments here. What is this is our visitors. We started in two thousand seven in asking the TDC. Back then in two thousand seven, we brought in fifteen thousand dollars from two percent of sales for people staying overnight. Last year, we brought in a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from people staying overnight in Gilchrist County. At three percent, you do the math, that's five and a half million dollars, people paying to stay overnight in Gilchrist County. Add to that fuel, gas, food, activities, tourism, and the seventeen million dollar investments in Gilchrist County. We also, within that timeframe, it is, it's seasonal, but as I've been talking to Brian, our seasons are changing. We're actually getting busier in the winter too. We hire anywhere, not lead accountants, but in the county, search and well, two hundred, about two hundred and seventy employees. Then they get paid by the different campgrounds. They turn around, spend their money in Gilchrist County. So it is a win-win for Gilchrist County, search or temporary taxpayer. Do I come here, visit, and leave? But in order to get on here, I must highlight Gilchrist County, and that's why I'm here today.
So Donna, related to the overnight stays, the, I think Brian had told me, twenty-five thousand or so campground at Heart Springs. Does that include, we, we're collecting that overnight?
Uh, overnight is just a, an overnight at the camp.
But it would be Heart Springs or Blue?
Heart Springs, Otter Springs, Otter Springs, Otter Springs, Elie Ray's RVs, or Jenny Springs, and Gilchrist Village Springs. As well as we do have a few Airbnbs that people, those folks also have to contribute. We're not a self-collecting county. We're not that busy. So the way it's done here, the taxpayer of the campgrounds or whatever turns in their taxes, they add in the other three percent, which was paid by the visitors, not residents, paid by the visitors. It goes to the state. The state turns around and reimburses us. I will tell you, I just pulled the number for July, and Richard doesn't know this, I pulled it from the state. We brought in forty-four thousand dollars in one year, which means for July, people spent one and a half million dollars to camp overnight in July alone.
Yeah, I, I think you had shown me something related. The state did for Blue Springs, Gilchrist Blue. The economic impact was around twelve million, Gilchrist County.
Just for Gilchrist.
And so that's people going to restaurants or, you know, the Jiffy's or whatever. I was telling somebody earlier, I was at the Jiffy last week and a carload of eight people pulled up. And they bought over a hundred dollars in gas. They bought over a hundred dollars in stuff inside the store. And I asked them where they're going. They said, we're going to Heart Springs. And so, uh, that gives you an idea of what kind of impact. It's probably second to agriculture. Agriculture is much larger, but those are the two biggest. And I, that's probably the same way in the state of Florida. Agriculture's right there with tourism.
Yeah, year COVID hit, agriculture was number one. So it, it, when, when tourism isn't, uh, when something hits tourism, agriculture picks up. And so between the two, uh, uh, they make it an inexpensive place to live.
And for every tourist dollar, one, for every household in Gilchrist County, one thousand eight hundred dollars in state and taxes that they would have to pay because outsiders put them in.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you're doing a great job with it. I know that, uh, every time I come in, you've got something going on and, uh, the, the, the barbecue, uh, at Heart is a, a big event. And I know there are some other things and, uh, we appreciate what you do. And we've seen it grow over the last five years tremendously. And, uh, and we were glad to be able to bring you on in, in a full-time into that position because I know you were doing it part-time earlier and it, it, it needs to be, needed to be a full-time position. So we appreciate what you do with it and thank you.
Yep, thank you, Miss Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to just turn over a few pages in your big book, page forty-nine, it's Veteran Services. Page twenty-six of your handout, and Mr. Steve Hudson is here as well. We have a small increase in his this year and mostly it's just due to the, uh, to our insurance and, and, uh, and FRS, so.
Everybody?
Hey, how you doing?
Steve Hudson, Veterans Services. Uh, Bobby just moved to, we don't, we don't have a whole lot changed.
Yes.
Uh, one person in the office and I did get, uh, four hours extra, extra weeks. So, uh, you know, just so that's why I squeeze a, you know, round peg in a square hole. Um, been, been doing some good things with the veterans here recently, uh, as y'all know, interior hardware, we've got the new monument. Um, that was, uh, that big endowment from, uh, post ninety-one that closed down. And, uh, the toll came out for about nineteen thousand dollars. There was, uh, world war terrorism and current conflict. Turned out really well. And we're able to, uh, for those of y'all that weren't there, we were able to, uh, present it for Memorial Day, which turned out, it was a, it was a great timing thing. Um, the Veterans, the Veterans Day Parade, uh, I talked to Bobby about before, we're, uh, we're rotating it now with, uh, with, uh, with Bell. Uh, back again, which it used to be before I started. And that's gonna be with, uh, Heart Springs and, uh, Dan Cadden off show and Debbie Duffson from, I think, Heart Springs. So, uh, you know, it'll be working, people, you know, different venues, I guess. Um, I'll still be, still be helping them out there as well with that on, uh, on Veterans Day. Uh, sort of that, uh, things are going well. Um, really no complaints, not on my end, and I look forward to, uh, to another year with y'all.
All right, we thank you what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the, the hours that you have are enough, you think, to cover the demand?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, there's a little, again, um, you know, with things that I, I do a lot of stuff because I, I live in Newbury. But coming in and I, I still have veterans here that are unable to, you know, get out of their homes or go on their, their appointments to Swan Economic Council and try and get ahold of DAB to come out here and help a lot of these older folks get out there to their appointments a little bit. So, so a lot of times I do that, I, I put those on Wednesdays and Thursdays. So it's, uh, it's really kind of, that, the, the extra, no, the extra, the extra four hours is really helpful.
Yeah, I know the time that I was trying to learn more about it and spent with you, I'm, uh, impressed with, which is not a lot to exceed my knowledge, but you've, you've got a lot of knowledge related to helping veterans and we appreciate it very much.
Well, thanks, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to do it. I'm just, I'm just happy to be here, you know, that y'all put up with me. You know, a lot, a lot of folks around here understand we're just, we've put up with it and a lot of stuff. Uh, you know, good luck to all y'all running and, uh, again, I look forward to another year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man, we appreciate it.
Also, uh, just a lot of people made on it, uh, on our flagpole. It was donated by, um.
Sons can better better.
Yeah, and the, um, the, the sign that gave them the recognition for that somehow was damaged or beat off. Um, Steve had another one made recently and we're in the process of getting that put on. We actually have it. It's just a matter of putting it back on.
Yes, sir. War orders in.
All right, appreciate it.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
If you'd like, we can move to county extension, page forty-five in your workbook and twenty-one on your handout.
So, the people are coming, extension.
How are you, Jessica?
I'm doing well. How are you all?
Good. Twenty-one.
I believe there's a typo in our budget.
Forty-five.
Please. For absolutely. Can you hear me better now? I'm a little slower than the rest of you guys. So I believe there's a typo when it comes to the regular salaries and wages. There's a large increase there that shouldn't be there, but we ask for a main flat, so we should be straight across the board there.
So this is going wrong here?
Um, yes, please.
What, should it be?
It should just be flat and the personal.
Two forty.
It's the one that's off. Is that correct, Mr. Robbins?
I have it at, uh, one forty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
One forty-two instead of one forty-three?
Yeah, we can double check that and bring it back too. I'll, I'll get with Mr. Romans as well too, that I have, uh, uh, one forty-two, seven oh four.
One forty-two? Huh?
Did that say my due, or?
I just caught it a few minutes ago yesterday. Everything else, I was looking at the bottom part of it primarily because we don't mess with the top hardly at all. So all of the bottom part of it, which is what we use to make requests and everything is correct, so.
That might be my typo from when I transferred it and gave it to Mr. Romans, so.
That's right, I figured we could just make the change.
Go back and double, double check that, so.
It should just be a minus typo, but everything on the bottom, which is all of the operating expenses, all of our screening costs, all of that should be all in line.
Now, there been going with, uh, the ground, the groundbreaking coming up soon. Are we ready?
Everything is going well, yes, sir. We've got the tent and everything ordered for that. A large sign is ordered. Um, we've got the dirt arranged to be dropped off from the road department. Um, all of the engineering stuff is lining up, so everything should be ready to go. You all should have received your invitation and we hope to see you there. All the shovels in the hard hat are arranged. We've, um, gotten all the refreshments donated, um, and it should be a really warm day, but otherwise, we're really excited about it. And, um, we have a pretty good list of speakers lined up that Commission of Agriculture will be joining us, as well as some other elected officials. And, um, our county council president, who's currently the vice president of Florida four eight, so he's one of the speakers as well. And hopefully everyone that's on the board will be in attendance and we can celebrate the grant accomplishments as well as just moving into phase one and being able to break ground on the new extension offer. So we're very grateful for your continued support, all of you, and we're very excited to have a new facility. And we're going to hopefully in the next year or two.
We'll look to share a new facility too, and hopefully some more funding that will come in to be able to do phase two of it.
Absolutely. So that was a large portion of why we asked for a main flat. We're extremely grateful for everything that you've done and we know that we'll have some future requests in the hopper. Um, and needs moving forward and we're not sure what those are quite yet. So we're trying to be as flat as we can be so that way we can look forward, um, and try to be as realistic as possible with those long-range plans.
Jessica, how many four Hers do we have?
Um, about three hundred are part of the community club program. And then we impact nearly all of the students in the school and the elementary schools. And, um, I would say about fifty percent of the population in the middle and high schools through our programs there.
That's good. Yep, I'm excited. The new extension facility is gonna be something that those four Hers and our farmers and other parts of the community will be able to use for three years. And I know that's a big deal for you all and for us, for IFIS. Uh, what, what, um, percent, I know IFIS provides a percent of your, yours and Tyler's and your budget. Generally, how much does the state IFIS provide?
So it's usually about a forty-sixty breakdown, but, um, in our FYI, that we generally do, for every one dollar that the county government invests, we are about a twenty-dollar return on investment for the community.
Okay, yep.
One of the groundbreaking.
August ninth.
Friday night.
At ten A, yes, sir.
One other clarification, um, down at the bottom, it indicates fifteen thousand dollars for a sprayer, uh, for last year and this year. I believe that's for a grain drill, yes?
Yes, sir, that is another change. So it will be a grain drill this year. The sprayer was purchased and we were actually able to purchase it at a lesser cost than what we originally anticipated. So we didn't utilize all of those funds this year, which is great. We were able to save the county some money there. Um, and the fifteen thousand dollars out, well, that we're requesting this year for capital outlay will be for a grain drill.
Is it gonna be a no-till?
Yes, that's the plan.
And that would be for demonstrations on farms, or how would that work?
It will be for demonstration plots behind the new office and also for producers and small farms to utilize in the community on a checkout program. So they would come to a community class on how to operate it and also some of the practices and best management, um, classes at the, uh, extension office. And then through those educational programs, they would be able to lease the no-till grain and they would do a deposit. And once they returned the no-till grain drill, they would get it back. So soil and water, I believe, used to do a similar program.
Right, they did, did.
Behind me, taking a set about, yeah. So, and I know that in other counties, it has been successful. A lot of it is just keeping up with the inventory and making sure that it's safe on maintenance and that people are respectful of the equipment, so.
Part of the training.
Part of it is a training.
Because a lot of people think they know how to operate it until they get it home and then they don't know what they're doing. And, and they end up breaking more than they fix and so that, that's a good idea.
Yes, sir. And that helps with the deposit as well. We do a test aside book as well because a lot of people will borrow them and then not return them sometimes. So we have them drop off a deposit and then once they return the book, we exchange for the test, so it works out well.
How many, uh, four H volunteers do you have?
About a hundred that are consistently volunteering. And then we have a pretty good number of episodic volunteers as well that come in and judge an event from time to time, like county events, or they come in and do like mock interviews or something like that.
Yeah, I know they do lots of good work. We appreciate all your work.
Yeah.
We should not do it without all of our volunteers.
Tell Tyler, we thank him also because I know he's, he's usually hard at it.
He is, yes, sir.
You're, you're fortunate to get that many volunteers. You really are.
Yeah.
You have some that have been there a pretty good while as well because I know when my son was in four H, some of those are still there. And, uh, they are pretty special people to stay there and help our kids for that.
Even after their kids are gone, yeah.
And we keep kind of cycle, so generally people will help when their kids are involved and then we see them cycle back through. Sometimes when their grandchildren are involved and that has been amazing. But also we've found that if we treat people really well, then they want to continue to be part of a program. And if we can enrich their lives, they want to enrich the lives behind them. So it is definitely a wonderful process, similar to the Swan Valley Racquet. If we can continue to invest in the life, we can continue to pay it forward. So we're glad to be a part of that. Can I ask for any other questions, please?
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, looking forward to the groundbreaking.
Um, if we can, next we'll do, uh, be on, it'll be emergency, um, management. It'll be on page twenty-two and then page forty-one in your book. Miss also helping us today trying to work out some sound issues.
Ralph, emergency management. So as you can see, the mine, we requested a little bit of entry some of that just to the match from the county.
You're also gonna see an equipment purchase down at the bottom of forty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we're not sure what that is yet and that's not unusual, the way we budget for him because we have to spend a certain order, the portion of the money, as you'll know, we've done this a few years. Um, I never have liked the program, spend it or lose it, but that's the way this program works. Uh, so that's kind of what's left over and then we try to watch and see what a need might be. And then closer towards the end of the budget, we, we could have a storm or something and we wind up using it up during a storm as well. You know, it can be used for anything, not necessarily it has to be equipment, equipment or whatever. But it's what it is, it's the amount that takes to balance in the budget, to present a balanced budget.
Ralph, how much of your budget is funded by state grant?
So we get two grants a year. One, the EMPG is a hundred and, I'm sorry, the EMPA is one oh five, eight oh six. And EMPG is, I believe, forty-three thousand.
Four, forty-two, six, seventy-four.
Forty-two, six, seventy-four this year.
About a hundred and fifty thousand.
About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yeah, more or less. So more than half of it.
And as Mr. Crosby said earlier, there is new rules. If we do not spend that money, whatever we do not spend of that money this year, we get deducted next year.
Under a regular salary, salaries and wages, does this include, um, we're not including raises right now, or?
No.
So how come it, that went up then?
That is the, uh, the grant position.
Yeah, that is part of the grant position that we put in after the budget last year, so we moved it around.
Nobody has been raised right now, we're gonna be talking about that yet.
That money you were talking about, wasn't that some of that money that we used to get Donna, a vehicle, we did some of his and some, some?
Yeah, we did that because we, uh, we had shared the cost of a vehicle earlier and we shared the cost again. That way the one vehicle became TDC's one hundred percent.
Right.
And then with the cost you shared, that one became EMN, a hundred percent, and then the other vehicle was transferred to another Florida.
So the grant person will help us and, and emergency management, the county?
Well, we have a lot, all your HMPG grants are, um, come through Florida Department of Emergency Management, so, but one of the things we're looking at is getting a, uh, one hundred percent grant position. Because of the number of grants that we have now, before we just, we weren't, I mean, we've started getting so many and so many, we've gotta manage, that's why.
That's it. Getting a grant is tough, but managing the grant is the hard part.
So that person will get grants for us and for, which is us also.
For the county.
It's, that, that person will get grants for anything apartment we're trying to get a grant for. So sometimes what happens in, uh, Mr. Smith's department, if you have a storm or something related to that, if there's money left over, they send us and say, hey, you got this much money and there are certain items you can use it on. So, between Mr. Smith and that person, they start working on that, both people, so. And then if you've got something that comes available in animal or solid waste or fur dabs or, but they, whatever department it is or wherever, they help those people.
Most, most grants have a lot of paperwork attached to them. You have to document, when you apply for that grant, you can only use it for what you applied it for. You can't use it for any and everything. All that has to be documented and turned in and signed off and there, there is a lot of follow-up on the grant. It's, it's good and, and we, we live off of it. But, it takes a lot of, uh, a lot of work to make it happen. Getting it sometimes is the easy part, managing is the hard part.
Right.
But thirty million dollars worth makes it worth managing.
I, I know when you do, I know.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but it makes, makes it worth.
I know, I know, but when a, a federal grant is, is, is even tougher.
And we're dealing with federal grants on it.
Yeah, exactly.
We just applied for three months.
There's a lot of documentation, a lot.
Well, we think everything you do, this is off the subject just a little bit. Uh, I hear there's a storm out there somewhere?
There is a storm out there, yes sir.
You have an, an update on, uh?
It was about forty percent chance of making it to anything this morning. When I looked at it, it, it's still too early to tell, so hopefully, one day next week, I may get with you guys and send you an email and.
I was out.
If there's no more, I'll let you know.
I was sick all last week and, and then last night someone said, hey, there's a storm out in the Gulf and I said, oh my gosh, I hadn't heard about it. And so this morning I turned on the weather and there wasn't, still wasn't a whole lot on it. I knew you would know what's going on.
And while we're, just one of the, throw an FYI out there, while we're going through these budgets, we don't want it to happen, remember last year was a difference of twenty miles.
Yep.
Okay.
How hard we would have gotten hit.
Oh yeah.
Remember your son balance, that could have been wiped out completely, a hundred percent last year. So I think, I think I actually said before you guys, about two weeks before that, letting you know that it was possible.
Yeah, we got lucky on that one.
We were very fortunate and they're saying it's gonna be a lot worse this way.
Do, do you know what the cost comparison for us versus Perry?
I do not, because DOT picked up the cost for Dixie, um, Taylor, Swanee, and it also took them about a year to get it picked up. So, we were fortunate, we hired our contractor we have on file and we were done, I believe it was four months.
Yeah, probably four to five at the moment.
Fortunately, we had to pay for that. We've gotten a lot of that back already, uh, due to the relationship we have with our contractors. And, like I said, we had to pay for it upfront, but we're getting it back slowly.
The percent we've gotten back, you got an idea how much that is?
One, two, five, six, sixty-five thousand a year fee. Um, I'm not quite sure of everything.
Alright.
Thank you, Ralph.
You do very well, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
Alright, we'll take a, we'll take a break.
Yeah, I mean.
Take a five minute recess, sure? Alright, we're gonna take a five minute recess and then we'll get started back.
And if we can't work through a few more of these, we may make a good, good headway and see if we can't work on through it. Where would we like to start?
Ms. Chairman, if we can, this will not be in your handout, but Mr. Lemire is here today. It's gonna be in your book on page thirty-five. It's other buildings, our maintenance. If you'd like, we'd like to go ahead and do it if we can while he's here today.
How are y'all?
Yeah, how are you?
Gerald Lemire, building, maintenance, repair, lawn service, whatever you need.
If you're not, his, his budget has went down some this year, about fifteen hundred dollars, I'm guessing off the top of my head here real quick, a couple thousand. One of the things, just to remind you, that's four hundred and forty-three doll- four hundred, four hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. What that is, is the grant for the hardening of the Sheriff's Department. We've been working on it since June of two thousand and twenty. We think we have finally made some headway, actually in about the last thirty days. So, real soon, we hope to be going out to bid and that will be something we'll be working on this coming year. But that particular money is, uh, it's refunded with a grant, so that, that'll be covered by our grant.
And that's for hardening the sheriff's building, as you, just as you walk in, is that?
No, what it'll be is, uh, it helped me remember everything. It's, it's a new roof. It'll be tied down, there'll be a, a new roof, windows, doors, soffit, special design soffit, so reduce. It'll be rated at a hundred and seventy-five? Yeah, one seventy, to meet the federal grant. So, that, that is what those funds are for. So, we moved it through the budget several times. We're beginning to think we're just gonna need to take it out. All of a sudden, we got a phone call and it's, it's going pretty strong right now. So, it's looking good over the next few months, but probably be in the next year sometime. Possibly actually start some construction on the next.
We're gonna have a grand opening of a jail further soon?
Yep. Um, well, if I go out on a limb, they said it should be in August, so.
Alright, I won't, I won't.
Just don't, don't tote no sols with you all night. But I will say this, the last time we walked through it, Mr. Newton was with me when we walked through it as well. They have made some progress and it, it's sort of like a, a house now, you know, when you get to the last little bit that you're trying to trim out, get finished and look, that's what, you know, a lot of the technology part's going on right now. A lot of the glass, I think most of the glass is in now. But, yeah, I think, I think we're close. I, I think we're real close, yes.
Well, I won't hold you down to a day yet. Sorry. We'll get back with, we'll get back to this gentleman. Thank you.
Other than that, pretty much his budget is just a duplicate of last year.
Yeah, but we appreciate Mr. Gerald, everything y'all do and looking at your budget, everything went down. So, and the big ticket item you just talked about is grant funded, so I don't know how you argue with any of that, so thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Good workin' for him.
Keep up the good work.
We've still got some small ones, but they're ones I do, so you want us to go ahead and move into the ones that we have people here for now? We'll move into solid waste.
Let me find the page for you. You have the page right in front of you?
Yeah, solid waste is, um, page one seventy-three in the book. All the way to the end.
One seventy-three. What page am I in now?
There ain't no page number on it. Be like twenty, page twenty or something like that. Page nineteen, twenty?
Also, before the meeting started, I passed out a handout and one of those has got solid waste on the front of it. And I can let Mr. Rush answer any questions or explain the numbers. I did hand you one, Mr. Rush, I handed you. If, if you'll notice what he did, he went through and he gave you the hours of the sites from southeast and northeast and the number of hours that those sites are open. And the main bell site as well. He gave you the hours for, um, that would be Donnie and Crew and one thirty-eight as well. And what we did in two thousand thirteen was better hours, two thousand twenty-four. Or the next hour, we increased to two hundred and eighteen open hours on the six sites. And then what it, all sites are a hundred percent manned. Increase of hours has been sixty-eight point ninety-nine percent. Seventy-nine percent increase in trash, a fifteen point forty percent increase in population. And as of two thousand and twenty-three, the expenditures have only increased thirty-six point four-two. So, you can see that we've increased hours. We've increased, uh, he's increased the amount of trash that he handles. Of course, the population's increased, but at the same time, the increases are way larger than the cost of operation, which is remarkable. Most of that has came from suggestions from Mr. Rush as he's worked there day by day and seen some needs and things that would make the operations a lot smoother and a lot more efficiently financially and operational wise, so. But if you turn over to the next page, in two thousand and thirteen, you'll see the tonnage was, uh, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-two with a population of right at seventeen thousand. In two thousand and twenty-three, the tonnage is, uh, five thousand two hundred, a little over fifty-two hundred with a population of almost twenty thousand. So, that's your seventy-nine point oh-four increase in trash over ten years with the population increase, again, of fifteen point four. Uh, expenditures in two thousand and thirteen were eight hundred and, eight hundred thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, expenditures in two thousand and twenty-three of one million ninety-two thousand three hundred and sixty-four. So, that's the third, that's where you get the thirty-six point four-two percent increase.
Our amount of trash has increased more than our population growth though.
Yes.
And if you, you figure, figure they were, it would, it would go up the same amount, but it really hasn't. We're getting a lot more trash. And I guess a lot less on the side of the road to pick up as we.
Not really. That has everything to do with, um, two thousand and thirteen and before, everything was not disposable. Now it is. The washing machine tears up, they take it to the dump.
You're right.
Amazon is quicker button, you know, it's happening ten times a day in some houses. And, uh, and all of it's junk that ends up, uh, up again. And, uh, that's for that.
Yeah, so it's become a disposable world.
Yeah, both of those numbers, the population and the trash increase moved up together, you know, it would have been a whole lot easier because then we would have the backup money to pull back.
Well, people used to burn some of their trash, but they don't do that anymore. I mean, I know they had burn barrels and everything else, but now everything goes, everything goes to you.
Exactly. We have the occasional burn barrel of a century.
Bobby, I know, um, looking at the increase in expenditures, we're only thirty-six percent. Um, part of that was inflation. I don't know, I mean.
I, uh, pulled up the, uh, inflation from two thousand and thirteen to now and I added up the figures and it was like over twenty-eight percent.
Twenty-eight.
Do you think we have a lot of, um, out of county people that uses our, um, drop-off sites?
They have done some reports of that, but I think it's very low.
And do you think we need to go to a sticker type deal or anything like that?
Um, that would be for you guys to decide. I don't, um, I don't feel that it's necessary. This will make you guys feel more.
I was just, I mean, you're over the department, so I was just asking you your opinion.
I think it's fine. I think that when you have a man, man of thought and for the first, you know, two years, he's checking your ID, checking your ID and checking your ID.
Did he even check mine one time?
Now, suddenly this person comes in, then they kind of know, hey, I don't know this guy, you know, and, um, and I think that over time.
So, okay. Just as long as it's still working, I was just asking.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Alright.
I use the one up at forty-seven and I've seen people come and go. I kind of look at their tag to see if there's much out of, out of county stuff like that, but I, I don't see hardly any of it.
But, you know, um, I mean, just because it's an out of county tag, don't mean it's a.
No, it doesn't. It, it, it doesn't, but.
I, I have to talk to them. I say, you know, you got that New York tag. This, this trash could not come from New York, so.
Right.
There's a lot of people, you know, that are just throwing some places.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay.
Well, I, I, uh, I get almost no complaints about what you do and your co- and the way the trash is handled. Most people are, especially with a little change of hours we did on some places, so I, I think they're doing a great job. I think you're doing a good job. Your people are doing a good job, so. Um, I, I know it's, it's a, it's a never-ending battle though and it just, just keeps coming every week down there.
It, it does, and.
Don't ever, don't ever get an off, off period. It's, it's there all the time.
You know, so, um, and I think we're one of the few facilities that actually, um, um, helps people unload their, their trucks.
Guys at the, at the dump, at those sites, doing a great job.
Yeah, Bobby, I think the compactors and having somebody there has made a big difference. Yeah.
And somebody that's always keeping them and then it's four hundred and thirty-six thousand pounds by us, you know, and, uh, you know.
We bought some.
People complaining about getting their load rated.
Yeah.
You know, just two weeks of that, over four hundred thousand pounds piling up somewhere. I mean, there really is a whole lot of trash that have moved out, over ten million pounds of garbage.
A couple of years ago, we bought the trucks and the trailers. Um, how are they holding out? Is that something that, uh, you see in the near future, us having to maybe purchase another truck? I know you put a lot of mileage on it back and forth between here and Union County.
Yeah, and, um, the, the truck that we bought, the market down there, it seems to be pretty problematic and, and we would like to trade that in and get another one.
Is that something here?
We have it in the budget.
You're fixing to say that in the bud, something that's in the budget for this year?
Yeah.
And I guess the one that we had got was like one of the first years that came up, the Zepwood, and, uh, I don't think we had the team for that on it.
But you had estimated how much we were saving by us tr- transporting?
Yeah.
Yeah, how much?
It was, um, like over two, li- li- little under two hundred thousand.
A year? We're saving?
For the two thousand and twenty-three year.
Okay, I'm sure the compactors help with that as well, being more.
And home, and, 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 yeah.
What about the new facility? So, that's the other big thing in this budget is, um, we've tried to get appropriation through the legislature last year and maybe the year before. And we were not successful. I know I talked to Representative Clemens. Uh, he, he was in a great position last year and it, I, I questioned whether we're gonna be able to get it from the state legislature because if we didn't get it last year, it's gonna be hard. Um, when I, when I talked to him though, he did say there may be funding available through DEP and some special funding. So, that might be something we want to pursue with a new representative and, uh, but I know, how, how old is this current facility? Like fifty years or?
It was built in, it was built in the mid-nineties.
Oh, in the mid-nineties, okay.
I was fixing to say, when I was at school, it was, it, it just was built not long after I got out of school.
But if you'll, if you'll flip over to your next page, you're gonna see some pictures there and you're gonna see what the issue we have. Um, when you're looking at those beams, especially in that bottom, when you see through at the bottom, that's a beam rusted all the way through it. So, and there's several of those in there. So, that's just, that's just, that's just some of them. And if you flip over to the next page, you can see that beam's even worse. Um, and then also we've got, you know, we, we've had to redo the floor once and the floor is wearing down again. And if you, at the, that bottom picture, there's, that's rebar. If you flip to your last picture, you can see rebar sticking up again. So, you know, we're getting to a point that we're gonna have to invest some money here, even just to continue with, with this building. So, is it, do you want to invest a lot of money in this or do you want to kind of build a larger facility?
What you're looking at in that last picture, because we spent, I think, fifty grand in that whole rebar, then it's already gone that far below the wall already enough that you're looking at.
It's just wear and tear on the concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
But we've had an engineering firm look at it, evaluate it, tell us about what recommendations they have, the risk, all that stuff. Do we have?
Well, we haven't done a structure evaluation on the building as of yet, but we, we can have one done, but.
Yeah, it seems like we ought to get somebody to.
You have to, well, I do this, but it's really getting them.
I was there this morning, I saw.
Deep pictures, don't do it.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I personally walked with the, uh, engineer and the contractor and Mr. Jeter, spoke to Paddick, you know, and, uh, the liability of it, you know, I mean, I've, um, and the feed mill collapsed there in front of, from, and that, that was what it was from, the pouring water down. And, um, and I tried to nail him down on the number and the mile per hour wind that that was what he could hold when he said. And he was looking at it, you know, maybe a hundred, uh, eighty to a hundred mile an hour wind, so it'd be about a little bit safe to finish that off. This is what he told me while I was speaking with him.
But you, you are asking, uh, was it three million or?
Three and a half million.
Three and a half million. And that's based on though, an engineer evaluation and estimates or?
Well, the, the estimate on it and, um, is actually around seven to eight million to build a facility that would double the size. Uh, you know, because we've got a lot more trash and it lasts for a long time to, uh, be built, you know, build them a little bit differently now so you don't wear the floors out the way you wear these out and that type of thing. So, um, what, what Mr. Rush did is he sat down with the engineer and the engineer went back through it and reduced the size of it to about half. And, uh, that came out around three and a half to, to four million. And the way we came up with the three and a half million, there's some, some of the work we can do, you know, like site work, dirt rock or something that they need. And, uh, that would be to just do half. And one of the things that I have when I talk with Senator Bradley and, and her assistant, uh, Mary, um, uh, each year they've asked me, says, and hands, is there any way y'all can come up with fifty percent? You know, he said, this would make this a lot easier to be funded if you were matching it with fifty percent. Um, he said, that's what's happening. That's been the pattern, in other words. As we know, patterns can change in the legislation, but that's been what the pattern's been. And that is actually some of the DEP money that they're using for the appropriations. So, um, there's, uh, but that's one of the reasons that we put the three and a half in there. We've got some design, but we don't have a set of buildable plans. So, that's something we can kind of go ahead and be moving forward with. Also letting them know that we have, you know, three and a half million budgeted and apply for the full money and maybe we'll get the other three and a half or, or four million from appropriations. But that still leaves the county responsible for, you know, three, three and a half million dollars.
So, it will cost seven, eight million, but we're only gonna pay half of that then hopefully.
That, that is what the hopes are and, you know, there's no promise, but, um, right after the session last year, that was their thing. Um, they said, is there any way y'all can work on, you know, maybe having a fifty percent match roughly? Um, we may get by with a forty percent before it's over with. It just depends on how many projects, but, um, we, we're gonna try to get the project in very early this year.
So, Bobby, you're, y'all are asking for us to, uh, authorize the idea of a match? And we would go after the legislative funding with Senator Bradley and the new representative and see what funds are available through DEP. And all that would come back to us, the, the board at some point.
Oh, absolutely. It has to. It has to.
But the facility, facility basically is gonna cost about what that jail costs. Wasn't that jail a seven million dollar project?
No, ten.
Ten million dollar project and then, yeah, this is a seven million dollar project.
You know, unfortunately, everything's costly now and unfortunately, one thing that's not gonna go away is inmates and trash.
That's right.
Yeah, but I know we also got to build within what we can pay for, so it could come down to we didn't get the funding this year. And you have to build, start on that, the half that you need and then maybe you might get it next year to finish it because it can be built to where you can just come in and add to it.
Then was there an explanation given on why this project would cost so much?
I thought he said a while ago it was seven, eight, but you met with them and got it down to three and a half to four million.
That's a half, that facility's half the size of the original facility, that's why.
Whenever, whenever this facility that we're using, whenever they build it, I think that they were doing probably ten thousand tons a year for that. And, um, now we're doing over five thousand tons a year. We're busting out things as far as, uh, we, you know, we have the land still here and the cement line here and the heads and siting it. We definitely have to run the job around it for the semi. And, uh, when they built it, it wasn't semi. They were selling up compactors and hiring compactors to watch the county. Um, the county has drawn a lot since then and, uh, trash has increased, you know, um, like you can see there, you know.
So, with a new facility, is it gonna be built on the same property, but not at the same spot, basically? You're gonna tear down what's there and, and build new or?
Currently with the spot, which would all need to come to y'all for approval, as well as they're looking to place it, would be behind our animal control. Because we have a good piece of land there and, uh, then a lot of the, um, I think what Mr. Rush would like to do is the drop-off, like the household trash drop-off would stay where it's at. Then that way you don't have people intermingling. You know, those people drop off for free and can leave and then these, the people that's going across the scale would be in another site. There'd be a connecting road in the back that connects the two facilities so they don't have to go back out on ten to, to get there. And, uh, so that, it, that's, that it would be.
The exist, existing building will have to be destroyed basically because of the, the deteriorating of it?
Well, what we would like to do is leave that there and, uh, that's what we're saving it because us moving to another spot, we can operate while that's being built. And then once other one's built, um, when we have loaded semis, we can pull the loaded semis up through that building and park it so, um, it don't get rained in.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about liability on the building as it gets older and older.
I think structural analysts might tell you that. Structural analysts might tell you it'd be okay to park semis under. It may tell you that you need to tear it down.
Yeah, I would like to get their opinion, um, before we start parking a semi under, just, just to make sure.
Yeah. The bad part is you've identified the need. Today it's seven million, five, six, seven years from now it'll be twelve million. So, if, if the need's there, we need to make some type of effort to, to move forward with it because the longer you wait, the more expensive, the more expensive it's gonna be. I mean, everything's just going up so much every year.
I think Mr. Newton asked the question of, of why so expensive, I think, so you. One of the reasons is, is, is a lot of concrete, it's very thick, it's not your normal thickness because of what you're using it for. Um, in there, you've got to put special drainage system for all your leach aid. Uh, it's gotta be protected, gotta have, you know, um, there's, uh, I guess you'd call it environmental containment for where you park your trailers, uh, you know, with drainage. Um, you've got, there is some equipment actually in this, but what it is, is like how we have the old Prentice, which is wore out too, that packs trash. They have a system that runs on a rail that works much better, that helps with, um, compacting the trailers. So, it, it's not just putting up a metal building. It's, you know, when they first gave me the price, I like fell out of my chair too, but we, it, that's what a lot of it is.
That's updating the technology also.
Yeah, and the structure's up in the air so that the semis can back level and you just push trash and stuff off, you know. So, it's built more like, I mean, you probably went to what, Luchewa County or something, being more, I mean, they've got a more modern one. That's why I'm saying Luchewa County, that you'd see something there like.
It's something we're gonna have to work faster with.
Yeah, sure.
You park semi under basically and you shove the trash off into it and so, um, they actually have, uh, rubber guards, you know, like that thing. Always through the, uh, loader bucket so it's not, uh, deteriorating the concrete. So, you do it, you do things that guard it. And pushing the same problem for all, probably like.
And, and this is, you know, it's an engineered estimate. It, it could come back more, but most of the time the engineer tries to give you an estimate a little bit higher, so there's usually some cutting. But any more, what I've noticed about the engineering estimates, there's not a whole lot of cutting, uh, but they're using a little bit, so.
And my thing too is the longer that we wait, the more money we're gonna have to dump into this building.
Saying, we need to, we need to see if we can't move forward a little bit on this thing and, and get the ball rolling. Yep.
Bobby, I know, uh, knowing you, I think you've already evaluated this, but. But Bobby, I know, uh, knowing you, I think you've already evaluated this, but you, so the compacters in the satellite areas are reducing the volume you're transporting, but are we bringing?
It's not reducing the volume.
It's not? I thought it was compacting, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's true enough, we're still have the same things, but.
Yeah.
The volume is compacted into the same, into a smaller ball, but you've still got.
It's reducing the space, but it's doing the same way.
Two tons or two tons.
Yeah, I got, but, uh, what I'm thinking about is, could you load up at Southwest or Forty Seven and go straight to the Union rather than coming back to Bell, just reducing the transportation cost, is there a way to do that?
Well, we can haul more efficiently by bringing it in and packing that semi, so instead of, you know, hauling eight tons or hauling twenty two tons. And, um, when you do that, we have the two class B trucks and then we have the semi trucks. So when you take that class B, you know, and send him out on a, you know, a two and a half hour run, then he's out of the mix, not able to bring the other boxes in.
Yeah, I figured you'd evaluated it, I just was curious.
Yeah, the, the other thing it would cause is the class B trucks that we have, we've been able to get a longer life out of them because they cut the usage way down, so if you start to carry them all the way to Raper's, that's gonna, our new river, that's gonna increase the mileage on them, looking to purchase those center to.
So Bobby, you don't think there's a problem, big problem with outer county companies that does that?
I don't think that there is, I mean, um, the, I'm sure that there's some that flip by, but you know, at the same time, I have people in our county, said, yeah, most of the time I go over to, uh, you know, High Springs and dump, you know, between High Springs and Luchewa. You know, I mean, it's, same thing happens when we do that, you know, I, I think it kind of goes back and forth regarding and.
At least they're dumping it somewhere instead of on the side of the road.
Yeah, I will tell you this, though, there's one thing that did happen and, and Bobby may know the numbers on the amount. When we manned, we all approved and we manned all of these outlined sites, the tonnage actually went down. So that went to prove that we were getting a lot of trash that when we weren't manning them from other places. But also tipping fees went up, so a lot of things that were going in there that were required to go to, to the Bell facility to be weighed in. So that fixed a couple of problems out of town and stuff that wasn't supposed to be dumped there, being dumped there.
Yeah, that was a mess before we started manning those facilities, you know, people would dump stuff everywhere. For y'all to clean up, you know, which is not fair.
And we just didn't have to help to do it.
No.
Well Bobby, we appreciate everything you do and we're gonna, we're gonna have to tackle this problem with some facilities money and, and, uh, hopefully we can do that sooner than later before we have to spend a whole lot refurbishing something where.
Well, yeah, I, I hate seeing, you know, another sixty grand going into this site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
And then.
It's something we gotta do and.
Only thing you're gonna have is something that's really not what we need to begin with.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Hey, uh, just so quickly, we talked about a lot of things, but there is a truck in the budget for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We were able to get state price from Mac, um, we chose Nextran and the reason we did, there's about three counties that we know of that purchase these trucks for this same type of hauling and that's who they use, so they know the proper setup. And they do have a state contract price and it fell within that hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I just wanted to be sure the board was aware that's in there. The actual building, you'll, will, it'll be in another budget and it's in our, um, thank you, our capital projects, thank you sir. And, uh, so, but, but I'm glad we spoke about it now because it pertains to this budget, but that's not in this budget that you're looking at right now.
So, so the three and a half million for the new building would come out of the general, would come out of the fund balance? Okay, savings, it'll basically come out of our savings account to fund that. And that's in this original summary.
It is.
That you all gave us, which shows we'd still have a fund balance next year at twelve million, even with that.
We've actually gotta adjust that number, get to that before.
So we're gonna, we're, we're planning on doing something then, you know, just so you know.
All right, thank you Bobby, do appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you like, we'll go ahead, Hard Springs, and it's on, uh, page twenty-four in, in your handout and seventy-five in your book.
Twenty-four, seven to five.
Um, if you, if you see here, um, even with the, some of the increases, our salaries went down a little bit at Hart Springs just due to some changes. Um, we do have three hundred and fifty-eight thousand in there for improvements other than buildings. That's the hundred and fifty-eight thousand for the water plant, we are still currently working on the grant for that. Um, it's looking pretty good, they keep asking us a few questions, but we continue to work on that. And the other two hundred thousand is still the, uh, camp grant expansion. We're in the permit process of that, um, and we've got about twenty-four questions that we got to answer for, um, Twenty River Water Management District, so we've got, we're working on answering those questions.
Is expansion gonna be where the parking used to be for like, uh, the, the, when they have the, uh, the barbecue?
No sir, it will be over where, uh, by the springs where it used to be the primitive camp.
Oh, okay, I remember y'all.
Probably where you camp when you was a boy.
Right, right, okay, I remember you talking about that.
Where's the revenues on this, like the projected revenue? What page is that on?
That's all the way, uh, like goes, three or four?
Page three or four?
Yeah.
In the big book?
Yeah, in the big book.
I'm okay, I thought it was on page seventy-five.
Four.
Okay, I see it.
Yeah, that's the projected revenues, um.
Didn't we put this in the budget last year?
You're gonna find Hart Springs revenues on.
Yeah, to the bottom of eight. Estimated at, uh, five hundred, almost five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So, and that's, um, what I remember is about a hundred thousand on average for the last four or five years, more than they are expending, right?
So we take in approximately a hundred more thousand dollars a year than what we.
Than what they spend. And with that hundred thousand, that's what we do a lot of our improvements with out there, that's what's helping to build the new laundry facility, that's what's helping to build, uh, expand the, expand the thing, so the monies we make, it's a money-making adventure, but we take the money that we make and put it back into the springs most of the time, don't we? To, to make improvements and things such as that?
Yeah, we have, and we went for a few years, we didn't do a whole lot of improvements, but we didn't need to, but now we've had a, you know, we've got a lot more people using the park. Um, the winter months is amazing to me now, used to you'd go out there and see two, three campers, now it's.
It's full.
Forty.
Yeah.
You know, forty-five, and, uh, so it's two-thirds full, that's, you know, you know, that's creating a lot more traffic. And, um, of course in the summer it's full every weekend. Um, Brian and them did a great job this year, even with the flooding. We had a few people canceled, but this year the majority of them stayed because they put together programs like with movies and kickball and a lot of different other programs that they put together and they sent that out. Um, and, uh, people just, they loved it, uh, we, I, I received some comments where they emailed me directly and just said, hey, uh, our family had such a wonderful time while we kind of missed getting to use the springs, it was kind of felt like we had our own private park, cause it, it wasn't so crowded, so they were over the ball field. Uh, one of the other things they've done is they keep the ball field in shape, they've got all the lights working and everything now. And that way if any of the ball clubs want to use it to practice or if they want to, uh, play games, you know, we're trying to encourage them, especially with T-ball, we're trying to encourage them for T-ball. One of the things that we, that we've hoped to do maybe in the future and it works with the, um, the, the valid twenty guy leagues and all, and get someone out there and to see if, uh, we know you can put at least one more ball field and have plenty of parking, but can you put a third one if you reduce on the T-ball size? Cause that, you know, it's a lot smaller field and because if we could have three T-ball fields out there, you know, the thought is of some of the people, instead of, some of the kids having to play so late, then they could all play an early game. And there, you don't have kids of that age trying to start a ball game at seven o'clock at night or, or later, so. And they could even maybe have some tournaments and tournaments bring campers.
Yep, I went out on Friday and looked at the, at the, the new laundry room, it, it jammed up, I mean, it's a really a nice building.
It's nice and it's gonna be used a lot, we've had a lot of campers that have thanked us for it. Um, they, they, they're excited to get it, you know, cause there's gonna be a folding area. Um, and I, I think what we're gonna find out is more people are gonna use it while they're there. Um, because where the other ones are, they're stuck right in by the bathroom, so you take them out, throw them back in a basket, it's not really, they keep it clean, but it's an outdoor area that gets sandy and all, so, I, you know, and see a lot.
Well, the more they use it, the more revenue generated.
Right, and, and the thing about, thing about it is, it'll eventually pay for itself, whi- which we, it's already paid for really with the revenues that's come in, but it eventually pays for itself. But the purpose of having nice things that you're parked is to get more people to come and stay and spend this money to stay. So if you've got five campers there in the winter, but now you've created something that people like a lot better and now you've got forty-five or fifty, now you've been, you've increased your income through the year. And, uh, and, you know, the price to wash your laundry out, there's three dollars to load to wash it, three dollars to dry it. Um, so it's, it's fairly, you know, that's, I think that's kind of high. I know compared to, we've checked around, that's, you know, that's right there with about the max everybody.
People are willing to pay that too, if it's convenient to them and it's clean and it's nice and it's probably really nice.
You don't have to leave the campground with, take care of everything.
Well, and the other thing is, um, you know, they, when they get home, they've already got it done. They don't have to do it when they get home, um, and.
Are we still compatible with our fees right now, charging for?
Oh, yeah, if anything, we probably need to look at in the near future, going up maybe three to five dollars a night. And the reason I'm saying that is, you know, we provide a nice, uh, area for showers and all, which has got hot water and it's climate controlled and your electric cost is just going up, so we, we may, I don't think it'd be a big increase, but maybe three to five dollars a night increase.
Bringing that to.
But I've talked to, talked to a number, even a number of people, um, some of them who stay up in, in Cheeplin and, in that area and, and we're considerably cheaper, but at Cheeplin, if you want to stay year round, you can stay year round. You know, at their sites and we're not a year round, um, type thing, so.
Have we thought about on weekends or like, um, your holidays to have food trucks out there at the springs and we've charged the food trucks to set up for additional revenue?
We have talked about that actually, and we've actually talked to a few of the food truck vendors, um, to see, um, kind of if it's better to get a percentage or if it's better to just, you know, have like three spots and you rent them for a hundred dollars a piece a day or something like, or a weekend. So we're, we're still trying to work that out just to figure out what we should be charging. I don't like the percentage one and it's, and that might be just me personally. I would rather know that somebody's gonna pay me X number of dollars. They may sell a lot of food and I should have took a percentage, they may not sell any food and I'm glad I charged them that, but they know what they're paying upfront, so nobody feels like, well, I saw people, that line never ended and they only gave me fifty dollars today, you know. So you don't ever, you don't have, you're not dealing with that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I would like to, you know.
I'd rather have a flat rate and.
And offer that, that would be additional revenue that we could bring in also.
I think it's a great.
Brian, didn't you have a handout you was gonna give it?
I've got it right here, I'm sorry, we got to talking and I didn't hand it out.
Well, I, I had a little preview of it, it's, it's real good information.
Yeah, I've been down there and it looks good, the trees.
Yeah.
They keep it up nice. Thank you.
Is your copy of what? Uh, it's fifty, oh, I'm, I'm sure, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, what we're reading on the copies, I, I think Brian, you told me that the campground has around twenty-five thousand visitors each year and the, the park itself, sixty thousand. And I've had questions related to why, you know, make improvements at Hart Springs and we've talked about part of it and I think the, the other part of it is the impact to our local, you know, economy and, uh, to our small businesses and, you know, they go to, these people visit our restaurants and our, uh, gas stations and, you know, all these other things and supporting those small businesses provide jobs and, uh, to our local folks and, and again, I know it's, you know, it's seventeen million or twenty million, whatever it is, but it's, it's important to those businesses. And so I, you know, as long as we can, uh, make those improvements, particularly in a way that we're using the funds that Hart Springs has generated, um, you know, Gilchrist Blue Spring is the state's estimating a twelve million dollar economic impact, so uh, tourism is a big deal for our county and so appreciate everything you're doing, I know you work hard.
I like the programs you're having out there, the Sprite, the lights at Christmas was real nice with the, you know, hot chocolate and all that and, and then having all these other events for the campers that are out there. It's like Bobby said, I've had some people say, oh man, we had a great time out there, we didn't go swimming at all, but we had a great time.
The Easter hunt was good too.
Yeah. But you, but you look, you look at this sheet that he, he's got here, I mean, just, um, how much revenue it's gonna generate? You had, you had fourteen campers last year, winter campers, and now you've got forty-two, forty-five. Well, that's five times as much. You're going up on your prices on your laundry room, not only that, you're gonna have three washing machines instead of one, three dryers instead of one. So everything's gonna be a win-win, your revenue stream is gonna, uh, ten times full, you know. Plus people's gonna come back because you've got all the amenities, you've got everything they need, they love the park, they'll advertise for you. Best advertisement is word of mouth, there, there's no, no better advertisement than that. So, so you, it's, it's just gonna get better and better and better and better, even with the park closed sometime this year, look at your revenue.
Yeah, 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 in, 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 right, right, in Hart, 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 Hart Springs, um, um, sorry, I'm speaking off. Um, um, and, and, and just, 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 just alone, just, just, just for a period of, you know, when we, uh, just, just spring, 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 spring itself has already pulled in over, over, over seventy, seventy, seventy thousand dollars, just, just, just the spring, not, we can't grant, but. People want, want to be there, um, they, they want to come, and then at, at the bottom of handout, you know, the term investment, it, 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 it's, look, 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 look at the, 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 the winter, winter campers. The, the camp, if the camp got a little pay, pay, pay for the, the laundry room, just with the, 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 the winter campers and, and, and under, and, and under five, five years. And that, that's just with the winter campers, not, not, not in total, total revenue. If you, if you, if you look at to, 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 to revenue, we can do it in point six, six of a year. So the laundry, laundry room is, is, is one of the, uh, 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 every camp, camp, campground is out, is out, man. We're, 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 so, 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 so far, off, off, off the, that, 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 of every, uh, every downtown and camp campground. If we don't, we don't keep the, have the amenities, we're not, we're not gonna keep camp, camp.
That's right.
We, we got, we got it, we got a, you know, the ma- nature's wonderful, but you can't, can't, can't walk the slow, slow road with a bear.
Well, it'll pay for itself, you know, and it'll add additional revenue. And that, that's in the first year or two, for, for you, but after that, all that's, is, is profit because you already paid for everything. And that brand new building, it won't have to have no maintenance for a long, long time, it, it's well-built, it's a beautiful building.
All right.
Good job.
Yeah, all right, you do a great job, man, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Do we need to stop and open up our meeting at four o'clock or?
There's not a time set, just one.
For the meeting, it's just once we get to that point.
You wanna go ahead and go into fire service? You'll find that on, uh, with the fund balance analysis page, it'll be on page seven in your handout and continuing on page eight, the fire service, through I think page nine. And then in your book, your budget will be on page one twenty. And then in your book, your budget will be on page one twenty-nine and one thirty.
You got lots of graphs.
I had some narratives in that city, but it's getting quite lengthy, so that'll be sent to you by email. Graphs I'm showing you there, and even more EMS related. Um, I know we spoke about fire, uh our last meeting, really other than we, the question that's not in the main one there is to add that other med unit. Uh, when I say add a med unit, that's a crew. Eventually we have to buy trust for that as well too, just to be vocal there, but adding another medic crew. Uh, and of course fifty percent of that call compared with fire.
So would we use an old ambulance for that until we get a new one?
We would, if I ordered it today, it's a decade, year, three years. So if we budgeted for another truck, and I'm gonna have to budget for another truck. Um, just like we're doing with the squad right now, we'll be budgeted.
So where would that third one be at then? Where would we have that third crew at?
That third crew is looking like right now would probably be in the southeast. Um, that's actually the very last page of this handout that I just gave.
Okay. And there's more um there than there is in the north end of the county right now or what's, that's gonna be, okay, well, I'll let you get to it, okay.
We'll uh.
I won't, I'll let you get to it.
Yeah, just the southeast portion of the county.
You can wait till you get to it.
Um, for two years at us and put everything together, the southeast portion, uh twenty-five percent of our call loads.
You're on the last page, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, last page looks like this right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the southeast alone is twenty-five percent of our call loads. Um, southwest is twenty-two percent, the city of Trenton, you'll see, that's the only one that I broke out just into the city. Cause they have twenty-six percent of our call loads in the county, not in the city. You have to understand, they have farms, medical, they have a dialysis center and a skilled nursing facility that call us every day. You're going to go to those every day, if not multiple times a day, if not multiple times at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Now, now, why would you respond ahead of Trenton?
Trenton doesn't own an ambulance.
They just got fire trucks?
They're just, they're strictly fire trucks. And these calls too are not fire response calls, we've already enough response.
We're looking at the fire budget right now, but if y'all wanna, y'all, I mean, we can still go over this, but to take out the confusion, so.
Yeah, and I brought, I brought, I brought that up because of the increase, adding the truck will be an increase to the fire budget as well. To compare that call fifty percent uh for the staffing on that.
So this is just EMS, not fire?
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed, I know we're not on that yet, but Bell, it would be northeast, northwest?
That would be northwest.
Northwest?
No, Bell, the Bell area. That would be where we're at now, their station, correct?
And we'll get through the, get through the fire here.
Southwest has quite a few calls too.
What's that?
Southwest?
Yeah, yes, the south end of the county is the heaviest.
It'd be out that way near um.
Well, I mean, you're, you're close to seventy-five percent of all of your call loads comes from the south of the county.
Yeah, but that, but the southwest, that would be over like towards the river.
Be over around Fanning Springs area.
Springs area.
Well, that would be as soon as you get outside of Trenton, that's all southwest. As you head west outside of Trenton, it goes all the way up to um Thorny Street.
Yep.
Uh, I broke it out in the four quadrants, the only reason I I pulled Trenton out of there, cause it was such a big. I could have split that southwest and southeast, but it's such a big chunk and Trenton usually was actually one tow. So you'd have had to go call by call, but we know where the call loads out there. So, um, as far as our fire budget, like I said, I know we went over it before, we haven't really made any changes other than um what we expected. And we add the other truck, otherwise we went up on our physical, so the last time we wanted to get the uh the light stand. Firefighters, start getting them out in a comprehensive physical, that is their catching thing. Job-related illnesses, uh, the real good program that catches some kinda oddball things from time to time. Uh, X-rays, ultrasound, stress test. And then the, we went up uh in the education for firefighter too. Uh, cause that's all before, we are just not getting applicants for the fully preventive anymore. You go to any other county around us and you get hired sometimes without any certificates at all. And that'll give you a job regularly and you send it to school and pay for that too. So we happen to the more, more and more features new fire schools, they uh, as they try to profession their careers with uh, they go through.
When we put them through fire school, is there some type of contract they sign that say they'll stay with us for a certain amount of time? And that can be expensive.
There is, and it's about thirty-three hundred dollars to send somebody to fire school. We already have the gear most of the time, so that's a big cost as well, but you do make them sign on for a certain period of time.
James, back on the squad truck, we talked about it previously, but you got a hundred thousand in the budget. Now, you might have covered this and I just missed it, I'm sorry. Um, that's replacing squad truck in, where would that be?
That's the squad truck, that's our, our fire squad truck in Bell right now.
Okay.
Um, it's a twenty-eighteen truck, it's a little over two hundred thousand miles on it. We're having some issues with the compartments on the back of it. Uh, truck's getting a little worn out anyway, but the compartments, the way that it's picked down and place compartments are. He had bumped this wrong, the door comes open, um, we've lost some equipment onto that truck because of that. Like we put in a fit to help keep the doors closed, but the more and more that we're out, we're just gonna have issues with that. And the problem that we're running into right now is I've been out, finally found a couple places that would build the truck. We've not went out and bid, but I've met with several different vendors and tried to spec the truck out. So one we're in now, I think we paid a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, they're now three thousand. And that's pretty consistent amongst all the different vendors. Um, and that's no, you've got anything you want to on these trucks from here, just bare bones, compartmentation. Uh, there's a map for our tools, which we put in every one of these trucks, keep the tools from getting beat up in the truck. Some of these uh extraction tools in that truck are two to three hundred pounds worth of equipment, you know, that's rolling around in the department. Um, and the only electrical in that besides the emergency lighting and radios, there's a shoreline power that charges other equipment once it's plugged in. It doesn't have an inverter generator or anything like that, and it's, um, and that's been where all of my quotes have fallen so far.
So you bought a truck six years ago for a hundred and eighteen thousand and they're now three hundred and twenty?
Yes.
When, when you say the latches for it, is that something you could, you could replace the latch?
We, we've worked on the latches, it's the compartments themselves, it's just diamond plate truck boxes along the side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, never thought we'd have an issue with it, didn't have an issue with the other truck.
Yeah.
But I think the weight that we've got on this truck is when that dead latch is like just popping open, you put a, if we put a second latch inside of it. So you do the first latch and I have to pull two to get the second compartment open and it seemed to help a little bit. But it's only a matter of time until you start wearing that out of the window. The other trucks we're looking at do have a different kinda compartmentation on the back of it, more of a solid door. But that's really the difference.
Can't we find good used squad trucks somewhere or not?
One, if you look for a used one, like you know, who built it, then normally people don't get rid of equipment like this. Definitely, definitely look out there for it, I did go online and was looking at some trucks, trying to get ideas of just to build the truck for it. I found some brand new ones you can pick up and then they get back to, you know, you can buy two thousand twelve, two thousand fifteen. Uh, that didn't have anything newer than that and that's kind of really replacing the building as well too, it's already got two hundred thousand. This truck runs almost every medical call we go to and it does go on every fire call that we go to unless it's a large fire and a good engine. But this is essentially our best truck, uh, despite a house fire, that's all of our vehicle education. Very, very frontline truck, truck that kinda is the uh Swiss Army knife of the fire service.
Is it a diesel?
The one we have now is gas. Probably get back to a diesel, we tried to switch gas, we saved a little money on that. Um, it's been okay, just some wear items and stuff on there. Uh, and it just doesn't have the power that the diesel has when you're driving through these cloud fields and all that. Several hundred gallons of water on the back, all the other equipment.
So we're not on the news proposed adding the unit yet, we really hadn't talked about it, yeah, that's some of what you've got in these graphs.
Yeah, this was, like I said, this, these graphs were more talking about a call load, it did talk about EMS call load, but I'm just saying, share that call of personnel with both EMS and fire.
I think you'd give me about three hundred thousand to add a new um third ambulance.
Be six hundred thousand.
What now?
Six hundred thousand.
Three hundred per the fire, three hundred.
Three hundred for the EMS. So tell us why we gotta have that, James. I mean, we've talked about it some and I know that's why you put some of this together, but that'd be the question what most people would ask is why do we gotta have it right now?
Honestly, we've been kinda kicking this sand on the road for too, too, too long. Um, first couple pages just talked about the, the history of MSU and the special assessments, if you get a page three. Um, the total time in days without EMS or fire coverage. Because the way our system works is we have two twenty-four hour ambulances and one twenty-four hour squad truck. In the event that both those ambulances tied up, the squad truck can jump in a third ambulance and run another call. Um, we pulled all the time where all of the trucks were committed to a call, added that time up. And you'll see in twenty eighteen, if I added those up minute for minute, I equaled about five and a half days, a little over five days worth of, we didn't have coverage at all. Come down to twenty thirteen, we've almost tripled that number to thirteen and a half, a little over thirteen and a half days. Where these trucks are all committed at the same time, we have no responders in the county.
This is twenty-four hour days, right?
Correct.
So what happens in that case?
We try to call for mutual aid, but in that, and sometimes we still call for mutual aid during these instances. But in that instance there, you don't even have a first responder from the county coming to you. Uh, we, I'm, I'm gonna tell you now, we've been lucky. Right after we had a conversation today, um, we got a vehicle accident and we were immediately calling for mutual aid from another county. Because our squad truck was already on a call, continuing to break some traffic crash for possibly an execution or fire. Our only available med unit came to us, well, if you have a vehicle accident, normally two vehicles, presumably two vehicles, we had three. Um, we were very fortunate that nobody was seriously injured and nobody went to the hospital. But a call that simple, we're already calling for mutual aid to come and help us.
So you called Levy or Dixie?
Levy, Dixie, Los Angeles, Columbia, whoever.
Whoever you get, yeah.
That one there, I called for Los Angeles County because it was a three forty and forty-seven.
You had something yesterday. Uh, up on Miami County, I seen a fire truck and two deputies.
We just did a uh, a captain's assessment, we had an open captain's position, we just did an assessment and I built a scenario based on a traffic crash at three forty and forty-seven. And I can tell you this now, it's a never use a scenario again. But all of our scenarios like that revolve around us using mutual aid. Um, same thing I said before, if you put four ambulances on the road today, we will still have to use mutual aid at some point. But at this point, we're relying on it.
If we do the third ambulance, are we gonna be able to staff?
That'll be, that'll be the next challenge.
Cause we're already having a hard time right now, aren't we?
We're looking for paramedics now.
I, I think the harder question is how you can pay for it. If you, if you consider adding three hundred thousand for EMS and fire, you you've got to increase your MSTU. And you've got to increase your fire assessment. Um, you can't, like, we don't, we don't have the fund balance in either one of those to cover that kind of an increase. And even if you did, it might be for a year. Um, but the bottom line is, is that, you know, i- if you feel that the need is there. You've got to increase your rates, um, that's, I mean, that's bottom line.
Goes back to the question you said last time, what level of service do you want?
Correct.
And what are you willing to pay for?
Correct.
Well, we did Dixie counties last week and they're almost double what we are.
I mean, if we do this, I mean, like, are we gonna have the staff to fill it, you know, or are we gonna have to pay more overtime? Cause right now, we don't have.
We won't, we won't mandate overtime, cause somebody brought up a different way to kinda make it alleviate this. Um, the people that we have now are already overworked.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, they already overworked, I mean.
That's an issue that we're running into because we don't have enough crews. I think it could help if we added more people out here, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have the stress level that you already have now, cause they're not running as many calls. Um, you're, you're gonna start seeing, I told you in the last meeting, that uh, you're gonna start seeing that base pay for paramedics all around us. It's gonna, it's gonna jump again very soon. Um, the new push now that James just went through is they're now working um twenty-four on seventy-two off. It actually puts you out of forty-two hour work week instead of fifty-six. Um, if you look at it now, I pulled some payroll reports earlier, I've got people that average eighty hours a week. And if you get mandated to work an additional day, so you're on for forty-eight hours. You used to have some downtime in that, and every now and then they still do. But you work at, you're, you're at work for forty-eight hours running emergency calls, you get off in the morning. You have your handle what you got to at home, gonna try to catch up on some sleep, but the next morning, you're right back on the same truck again. Uh, and it's really wearing on these guys and you see it every day, the, the mental health and the physical health is declining. Uh, and that's, that's industry-wise, that's not just us.
Do, do we know, um, comparing to other counties, our population size are similar? Do we know what kind of uh setup they have as far as units and people and?
The easiest one to compare to is Dixie County, cause even though Dixie County is larger and landmass. Um, we're still fairly close in residents. They have a longer transport time, they have more, they have more staff on there now. Um, we pay close to the same for a brand new person. We don't pay any money for experience, but Dixie County is offering you ten cents an hour for every year of experience up to two years, for up to twenty years. So if you just go get another two dollars an hour, you're not gonna come working Gilchrist, you're gonna work Dixie. Most, all of our crews are at base pay. Uh, and that is still, the entry level position is fifteen dollars an hour and the captain supervises around the truck at eighty dollars. Yes, they make almost fifty thousand dollars a year at that entry level position, but it's cause they work eight hundred and fifty hours of overtime every year before we need to.
How many ambulances do they have?
Dixie, Dixie, Dixie's been running three.
Three full-time?
They've been running three full-time for.
Do they have a squad truck too, like we have?
They have a squad truck, they have some dedicated fire staff as well too, they have squad truck and I believe have an agent uh that helps out with their calls. And they have a lot more.
But like you said, they do have to transport farther distance too.
They do. Um, they have a lot more support staff as well too, they have a lot more supervisors in the office. Uh, I don't even know how many people they have in the office or anything. Uh, Mr. Charlie said, so your side. I don't even know how many people they have in the office or anything. Uh, Mr. Charlie said, judging your side, we, we've dwindled ours down so we only have for fire, fire and EMS, we only had two officers that are not assigned to a truck and that's myself. The third officer, just a couple of months after I came here, we, we put that position back on the road. Uh, put the money back in the bag. I'm saying we need more supervision this time. We've gotta get people on the ground, run the calls.
Yeah.
But the aid you'll see on the, the next page on there for mutual aid, see the increase, anything in the blue is a number of times that we've given mutual aid. Uh, we give it anytime we can. Levy and Dixie County are our headiest users of time. Los County users know mutual aid. Um, every now and then we get a call of Columbia, eight, four, but those are very, even part between Dixie and Levy, that typically calls. Um, then at Dixie and Levy, we'll turn around and provide us.
That's the number of hours or?
That's the number of extra calls.
Yeah, calls, okay.
Who, who makes that? Does dispatch do it or?
So we have, we put in a protocol when I started that the, they have to contact the on duty supervisor, the department.
Whether you gotta do it or not?
Well, and we might have an ambulance sitting here. Sometimes they'll call us for a non-urgent call and we hold our non-urgent calls. Like if they're coming from a medical facility, we'll put those calls on hold until we can handle them. Uh, the dialysis center is a great one. If you're access ported at working, you need to go to the hospital, they have to go in an ambulance to the ER. But they can sit there for two hours. They have medical staff to watch them.
Right.
We'll get to it when we
When you can.
Everything calms down. Um.
That's about a wash, how many times we've given aid and how many times we've received it.
Right, we, you know, twenty-two, it looked like we, we got ahead of the game a little bit, um, but in twenty-three, it flipped right back. So, but you can, you can see that the mutual aid, not just for us, but for the other counties is going up too.
Yeah.
Uh, and everybody's got hurt in the same way. In order to get more people, the county just got their pay up. So that'd be the next one for so I think they're, they're paying close to seventy now for, for a paramedic. We're at fifty-seven for firefighter paramedic. Um, eventually something will happen staying on that as well too. But they're gonna start, I already, already know some departments are looking at different schedules now, but any schedule adds a whole nother crew. Uh, per, uh, not per day, but if you look at it now, you'd have to hire six people to go to a different schedule, whether you went to twelve hours or whether you went to a twenty-four seventy-two or however you worked it out.
So currently, on average, you got about an hour a day throughout the year, a year that you don't have coverage, except you're getting mutual aid from somebody else and you're depending on them being able to respond.
Correct.
But most of the time they respond or?
Most of the time we can get somebody to respond, um.
There's more time to get to a response time.
Takes longer to get there.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of times we cut down on this number because this spoon has, especially when we transport to Gainesville, Lake City's a little bit different. So go to Gainesville, I seventy-five and Newberry Road are available. You're available for the next time. So we'll pull you from there. And if you're in Trenton, I can get our truck from I seventy-five and Newberry Road to Trenton before I can call any mutual aid and get here back. Unless they just happen to be passing through, uh, everybody does the same thing we do. You call for mutual aid, you need to talk to your supervisor, hey, what's the call? What's actually going on? Do you have any better someone available soon? And then they approve it from there. By the time it's approved, truck's moved back to respond. Uh, I said he responds from Jonesville and Gainesville all the time. Newberry.
How about the new community paramedic thing that Ryan's doing? How would that impact these numbers and?
We're not gonna see a huge drop in these numbers because our, our nine-one-one calls are continuing to increase. He is focusing on the people that call us many, many times. Right now, that's his main focus. Uh, Mr. Smith said in my office earlier, I pulled our frequent caller. Clicked on the second most frequent one, the first most, most frequent one wants to ride to Gainesville. There's absolutely nothing I can do myself. See retro from the law enforcement standpoint, sheriff's department. You literally can't stop him from doing what he's doing. There's nothing we can do about it when I focus on him. I've called seventy-two times last year, probably.
I wish there was a way you could do that because
Would be both.
Little Johnny, they, they use that as a crutch because little Johnny's got a headache and you can't give him aspirin, he wants to go to Gainesville. I, I've dealt with this in the past with some family members and, and surveying some of the people that were there. Uh, you, you just got, you, you, you could give him an aspirin, his headache go away. But he gets over there and his headache's gone away. But you just spent your time, your resources and money and everything. You're not gonna recover any of it. So you just did all that basically for nothing and tied up, tied up your services.
And his is, his is a combined mental health issue that you have no access for.
Yeah.
Uh, but the next person on that list has the O P D asthma intervention, so the breathing problem, they go about the same time every month. And it's normally a needed call. They need some assistance. If that community paramedic can establish a rapport with them, help them get assistance before they get to that point, we alleviate the transport. Uh, that is definitely some, that is, that's why the state is funding community paramedics. And that is why the insurance companies are looking into it now because if we transport them, they've gotta pay our transport bill and you don't walk in the ER for less than five grand.
Right.
Where if they gave us a couple hundred bucks for going out and doing an assessment and
Yeah.
stopping the problem before it got bad.
Yeah.
That's what the community paramedic.
That's, that certainly seems like a, a better plan.
But the, the community paramedic like, um, provide transport if they need to go like to Palm Medical?
No.
Okay.
We're not allowed to transport.
But they can help that person find transportation with the, um.
Yes, they can help arrange transportation and that is another one of his skill sets is he's got a book of resources. Who can I call? Uh, you know, there's been purpose involved. Palm Medical is actually heavily, heavily involved in this and wants to be a part of it. Uh, different transport services. We visit food banks and make contacts there to get people not only access to the food bank, but most of these food banks, if you ever find somebody in need, has no problem loading up in their private vehicle and bringing it. Uh,
Yeah.
That's a lot of what he's been doing. Uh, and I actually think we do a little bit more than what the state protocol asks for, but, uh.
And if that doctor visit keeps that person flown in the hospital, then that helps us with the freeing up that ambulance.
Absolutely. And the next phase is if EMS calls in transport, you can see fifteen percent increase in calls and a ten percent increase in transport. The page you want to add to that is our average call time. And this is part of the EMS program that we use. And that average call time is automatically recorded from the minute that the truck is dispatched to the minute that they acknowledge that they're available and ready for another call. But if those do, it says an hour and a half on here. They're ready for another call at Newberry Road, not seventy-five. So add thirty minutes of drop time on the back of that before they're truly back in your county. Um, you're looking at two hours every time we get a call. So if we can, are we mid-transport?
And that's quick, cause if I drive to Gainesville and back, it's gonna take me two hours. And I'm not stopping by a hospital and dropping someone off. Yeah.
That does include, and it's been a lot better, that includes the hospital wait time. Not every time we walk in the hospital, they just take our patient away.
I've seen them waiting line before.
We've waited three and four hours before.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Hospitals are doing a better job of that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we use these numbers too to talk to the hospital and still trying to get something in our area. Um, but so far, I don't think we're profitable enough.
What about these emergency care centers? They just, just put one in the launchways out there, uh, Santa Fe Ford. Is that someplace, is that something you could ta- take, take a patient to?
We take patients to that all the time.
You do?
We have a
At the ones at Jonesville too?
Yeah. Now, it's not an urgent care center, but there's standalone ER.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a protocol of certain patients shouldn't go to those facilities. If you have a person having a heart, stomach or throat, do not take them to that little facility.
Right, you know, right.
Um, when you pick up a patient from the nursing center that has a blood spot on their leg,
Mm-hmm.
that needs to be admitted and have a treatment done. Don't take them to that facility, they're going upstairs. However, if you're holding one of my trucks
Mm-hmm.
at that facility up there, they've been on the wall for an hour, I'm gonna drop them off at one of your other facilities, you're gonna worry about transport.
Correct, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna get the patient off our stretch so we can get back in the circuit. Um, and they do understand, and they get a little mad sometimes when we do it, but a lot of people wanna go to those facilities cause it's faster. If they're a candidate to go, we'll absolutely take them cause it's, it's faster for us to, uh, just to stem the situation.
I wish we had one of those at Van Nuys Springs, like a three-翼 or something. Give my, give my helicopter pad or something so that people to Dixie, Levy and Gilchrist County right in that area right there wouldn't have to, to go all the way to Gainesville.
We have a place to land a helicopter over there.
Yeah.
But you need an ambulance to get the helicopter.
Yeah, exactly.
I've, remember if you were a part of it when we talked to them, we brought, uh, the North Florida crew out and showed them like, showed them all that spot and fanning. We've been trying with them to show them that if you put something here, we can, we can make these happen to patients for you.
Well, I, I know Dave, Dave Padoc would be in favor of, he's even talking about trying to, to get some, some type of triage out there for, for the community. It'd be a perfect place because you got people coming out of Dixie County, you got people out of Levy County. I mean, you coming out of Cedar Keys, you gotta go all the way to Gainesville or, or Lake City and.
We, we requested that because I was part of a program when they did that in Los County, in the first part of building me.
Yeah.
I worked on the trucks that did those transfers and I worked in the admin side, handling the billing and all that. If they would put something like that in Gilchrist County, it would be an, an added workload on our EMS. However, it's a, if I pick up from your house, take it to your other house, you pay the bill.
Yeah.
We don't have to fight for the insurance down there. Um.
Well, the needs are even more now than it was five years ago because of the population growth and everything else. And plus you've got errors out there, you've got Tri County right there.
We share our numbers with them. Um, we've tried and tried and tried to get them to come out. We even had, uh, another facility that wasn't from this area.
I remember when you, I remember when you did.
Within fifty miles of the main hospitals to open up those, that's a state, uh, state statute.
Yeah.
Um, they even talked about even building a small hospital in this area.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna do it. What, what we need to look for is we need to look for one of the major players to do it and not end up with a Williston Hospital.
That's right.
Yeah.
Um, the small privately owned hospitals. And they do a great job to an extent, but they don't have the, they don't have the pockets to just to say what, uh, do somebody else play it.
It'd be nice if Palms or Shands or North Florida, somebody that's already there in the business would be good facility over here.
Shands or North Florida will eventually make their way out here. They're, right now, they're too busy cutting each other off. Gainesville to get to Gainesville. Soon as you, soon as, now instead of passing on North Florida one first, if I was a chance, first. So that's a great cutoff way back out there.
Maybe that's a project, we get a new legislator, maybe that's something that we can get them to help us with and, and, and maybe, you know, there's a lot of politics when you go to compete like that. It's like North Florida, they, they tried to put that one in Cleveland down there. And they fought them hand and tooth, not, not to lie. I was on, I was on the fitty with, with Baxter down there, uh, Dennis Baxter to, to get, and we, we got everything.
Wasn't it North Florida that fought against?
We got to Tallahassee and they knocked it out.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, wasn't North Florida that fought against them much?
And, and, and a lot to a general at the time.
Yep.
And, and they just, you know, and when, and when you, you get to Tallahassee, if you don't have the politics behind you and you don't have the right people behind you, you're not getting nothing. But I, I think it'd be worth a try to go, to go at it again, maybe if we could get the right people in place and the right contacts to, to put something out here because the need is there. I mean, the need is.
We still share our numbers. Um, like I said, we, we meet with them regularly, we share our numbers, we, we talk to them.
Yeah.
We're the, we're a little fish in a big pond. Now, when we have Levy and Dixie with us as well too,
Yeah.
it holds a little more weight, but, uh.
Well, how many times has North Florida built on them? They've built on like three, four times already. You know? And you, you still gotta fight that traffic. It don't matter how big the hospital is, you still gotta fight traffic to get there.
But we haven't, I guess, uh, it's not profitable enough for North Florida to come out here yet, so I guess one day when it is, they'll do something with it. Um, but, and I mean, until then, as far as what we're doing here, we're running everything we can with trucks. These trucks are running ragged, the crew's are running ragged. Um, it is gonna be a talent to hire people. I hope at some point that we can start paying experience pay and maybe get over the base pay to incentivize more people to apply with us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right now, our only, the only plan that we have is now is we're gonna hire them as E M Ps, try to put them through school. School's a year long and then I need them for at least three months after they get out of school, make sure that they're good to go off on their own. And it's just, you know, we cut them loose as soon as they're certified on our protocols and our way of doing things. But we don't, we don't start somewhere. Gotta, gotta get a third truck in.
James, we have three primary trucks. Two of them are new. The oldest one, how many miles do they have?
It's a brand new truck.
Just went and got them in Texas.
Yeah, the two new ones we've got, but we've got another one we're using, right?
We do. That one still has about three hundred thousand. But we've got, so now with those two new trucks, we're not wanting to, we taking one down for a repair. Uh, we've got enough spare trucks right now, but we have an issue. We've got one pregnant too, even if they have three hundred thousand on.
So we have a fourth, a backup truck.
We have seven trucks licensed to us, right?
Okay.
Some of those are old, old and I've been pulling the sticker off the side of it because we've had to give them. Um, when, when Danny Frings comes up again, I'm staffing more trucks out there. I, we need those extra trucks. Uh, but I refuse to pull the sticker off the side of them. I'm, I am gonna take one of them down to the box, to the point where we can't put anybody to work in it anymore. It's not been on the road, I expect for a while.
So what, couldn't we take the fourth, the best one after the three? And put it, get it in condition to use and try to hire, uh, some staff, but not six for this new unit? And try to cover these one hour time spots that we're missing. Is there a way to do that, I guess? You know, I don't know, uh, all the details of how that works, but just asking, looking at all the different possibilities, basically.
So we have, we have a truck right now to put them in, but you need a plan. If you're gonna, if you're gonna add that truck full time, you definitely need a plan ahead. Uh, we've already been hitting, or it's been three years to get a truck. So, so get in that spot. You can go ahead and plan for that truck and find that truck and it's gonna take a year to build from today's date. Um, that's gonna be a full laugh anyway. The, as far as the crew goes, that's gonna be kind of a slow process getting that truck on the road because I'm, I'm not gonna find three paramedics tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
EMP, I can probably find some of those, but the paramedic's gonna be harder to find. So that truck may start off, even once the budget's approved, I can back in a couple days a week, uh, and just ease ourselves into it. October one, we're not just gonna automatically have those trucks ready to get. Uh, I think we need a budget and plan for the full amount. I think, uh, Mr. New is absolutely correct that our fire assessment and our MSTU and the collection we make from EMS need to carry fire and EMS and not rely on any kind of fund balance. Anything we have additional, could be for capital purchases, but our, our payroll expenses really need to be covered by those three fund sources and not subsidized from the general fund. And you can cover it just on those three. And if that means.
Yeah, we can't continue funding it out of the general budget. It's gotta be something that's self-sufficient.
Could we buy the ambulance out, um, from fund balance?
I'll just have some balance buyers, uh.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about this new ambulance.
No, the answer's no, we don't have fund balance to, I mean.
How much fund balance?
With any EMS, um, we're projecting that we have a hundred.
No, I'm talking about our fund balance, our general fund balance, cause don't we have like eleven million dollars or something?
Twelve next year.
Twelve million? Can we buy it out of that? A one-time purchase?
If, um, if the board determines that they wanna start continuing to transfer money from the general, um, yes, absolutely. You have the ability to do that. The question is, is, the question is, is when do we run out of money?
Mm-hmm.
That's the question.
Right.
When do we run out of money? You look at our fund balance, um, history, um, I believe it was twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we had about ten million dollars. We've had an infusion. We had a windfall. See, that, that's what, you know, everybody's talking about all this excess money we have in fund balance. We had a windfall called COVID that, that infused some, some money into our fund balance. This wasn't from, you know, just, um, not spending money. It was because we had this infusion of cash from the federal government.
This wasn't from, you know, just, um, not spending money. It was because we had this infusion of cash from the federal government. And so can we spend some of this? Yes, yes, we can. The challenge is, is we are, we are rapidly getting back to where our fund balance policy is really quickly. Um, you know, this year, you know, we're proposing right now, uh, basically removing about four million dollars.
Okay, so, yeah, we haven't looked at that yet, so that's why. We need to look at that page first.
So the, the short answer is yes.
We need to look at that page.
The long answer is, we can't continue going down this road. You're gonna run out of.
We need to look at that page.
Yes, and, you know, if, you know, if we want to add the service that, you know, is being requested, you have to fund it. You, you don't have the money to, to continue pushing this down the road.
And we're not gonna have an infusion of money more than likely like we had that year that pushed it all up, so.
Correct. Um, so the short answer is yes. The, the long answer is you're running out of money to do this. You know, the, the fund balance that you have in general, um, when you, when you talk about, you know, using it to, to do a, a capital project, you know, to do, um, you know. What is somewhat a, a one-time purchase, you know, such as an ambulance. The, the challenge is when we start looking at funding personnel costs.
Which is reoccurring.
Which is reoccurring and increasing every year. So if you, if you continue to fund, out of your fund balance, anything that's recurring, you're running out of money.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you have a limited amount of time, you know, unless property values just go through the roof. Um, you know, but we talk about, you know, burden on taxpayers, you know. If, if, if values go up, that means that they're paying more, you know, so, you know, as we, as we consider all of these things, if you're considering taxpayer burden. That, that's what you need to be considering. Every time we add, you know, expenses, long-term expenses, you know, that's what you're doing. You're adding long-term burden. And future potential tax expense.
The, the only way to, the only way to equalize it is to increase your revenue stream.
Correct.
How do you do that?
Correct. There's only, there's only, you know, a couple of different ways, you know, through grant funds.
All right.
Through, you know, um, inc- increased growth.
Or, or change, or change your tax base.
Changing tax base, yes. I mean, but there's, there's not a lot of ways that small governments can e- increase revenues. You know, we're, we're at eight point seven right now, so we're not at the top. We're close to the top where you could even go for your general mileage. So, you know, as you, as you consider new expenses, consider long-term. What does that mean? You know, how does this, where does this put you long-term? You know, and, you know, when we started budget workshops this year, we talked about, um. The, the hope is that the future recession that's coming is not gonna be that bad for Florida.
Right.
What if it is though?
They're predicting it's gonna be here. They're just hoping it's not.
I mean, we, we are coming, uh, we're coming up on a recession and, you know, as I, I said, you know, they're not predicting a, a drastic recession like in two thousand eight. But what if they're wrong?
It had a six-year impact or eight-year impact.
And you have a, a fifteen or twenty percent drop in your average, uh, taxes, you know, you have a drop in state revenues, you know, and, and that's when the burden really hits. That's whenever it gets scary. And how do we, how do we fix this? Like, what do you do? Because fund balance is where you go to in that scenario.
Yeah, but when you.
But as we, as we beat down our fund balance, as we, you know, reduce it, you know, because, you know, someone thinks that we have way too much fund balance.
Yeah, but if you dip into your savings and you don't start replacing that savings, pretty soon the savings are.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Five billion four hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars came from the federal government.
Right.
From the feds, from Fear and Arvin.
That was an infusion.
That's.
That's an infusion.
That we're talking about.
That's not coming again.
Right.
Five million, five and a half million of it.
It's not re.
From the feds and they're not gonna do it.
It's not reoccurring in.
No.
It's not reoccurring.
Thank God we, thank God we put it away when we had to.
I think.
So we have it now.
I think what the board's gonna have to do is, uh, address, address your needs and then figure out how we're gonna get there. Now, you gotta, you gotta want list and you gotta need list, okay? I tell my wife, don't let, don't let your want or get ahead of your needer. Because you can want things, but you can need things. I don't mind funding the need things with the taxpayers' money, but we have to be careful. But if, if we've gotta meet a certain criteria or a certain level, and, and you're in charge of that, I mean, you, you take people to hospitals that are dying. So we, we're not talking about, you know, minor stuff. We're talking major stuff, okay? So we gotta figure out what level of service we want and how we're gonna fund this. Am I right, Todd? I mean, at the bottom line.
Exactly right.
What level of service do you want? Do you want two ambulances, three ambulances, four ambulances, five ambulances? And what's your response, what's your response time, all that kinda stuff? How many fire trucks you want? And then how are we gonna fund them if we gotta go out and get them?
Correct.
And how are we gonna keep them running and operating with personnel?
Yeah, 'cause.
That's the other question. That's where occurring personnel is.
That's right.
Yeah, grant funds can be used for some of those.
Yeah.
Still be trying to look for grant funds, the paper grants, like one of the biggest ones out there for that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be free.
If we're only gonna, you know, start off with, you know, a couple of days a week, can, can we just plan on a couple of days a week for?
But if I have the opportunity to hire three paramedics for six months, I don't think that. I don't know if we're gonna have opportunity to get them. Um, and day one, in fact, right now, we're not, not even day one, we're right, right to the second. I've got a young lady about to finish paramedic school and I'm about to send another one right through. People that have worked for us for a while, that have been interested in our department to go to paramedic school. Well, even if. Have those visions out there. Let's say we did this and we hired the E M Bs for that truck. I might be able to put all three of them. I might be able to put three people at a time to paramedic school in a year.
How many do you need for part-time right now?
What I'm saying is, if, if someone came up, you could give some of yours that are doing eighty hours a week a break.
Yeah, they, some of ours right now.
That they're not having to put in eighty hours a week.
Right, but they're still gonna have to put in the time because what, what you see, what happens when you work them, work them, work them. They're, they're gonna start burning through that vacation sick leave.
Yeah.
Now I'm filling those spots again. Um, I, I can't tell you what the, how long it would take to get that truck filled. What I can tell you is if I had, if four months after we started that, I had a, I had enough applicants to fill those trucks, we need to fill those trucks.
How many, um, will it take to do it? Like a couple of days a week versus seven days a week? How many crews? How many people working?
Uh, this depends on how many days a week you wanna run it.
I just said like if you have one, seven days a week? Or three days a week? Like, well, the seven days a week, that's gonna take six people or?
And, and which days are you gonna pick? Which days are we gonna pick to work?
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about like, there'd be full time at here. Yeah, I was just curious, yeah.
So what days are we working? Because if you, if you pull up, I didn't put it in this, and this is, your accounting is the biggest anomaly to me I've ever seen when it comes to looking at call numbers.
That's what I was gonna ask.
But even in Loxley County, Loxley County hasn't, well, they used to, they used to kinda fall off on some days. We actually pick up a little bit.
There's, there's really no way to count.
There's no rhyme or reason.
No rhyme or reason.
The day that I put that truck on is gonna be the day that nothing happens.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, it's, so what I'm saying is, we plan to put all, all of those people on that truck. Now, as we get people, my, I think the first thing we do is if we hire enough E M Bs to cover half of that truck. And start educating them to paramedic schools. As we see that, hey, they're getting ready to be done, they're, they're almost through. Hire the other E M Bs and then put the truck on the road full time. So this might, this might take a year if we budgeted ahead for it and we didn't expend all that money in the payroll budget, you bought your engine on.
Mm-hmm.
So, and what I don't wanna get into is when I, when I first started here, we had a lot of stuff that was financed. And that was often up over a hundred thousand dollars in each budget every single year that came right off the top, just paying loans back. Uh, and never getting ahead was finally to the point where I think the tanker and airbags. Yeah, so, yeah, we had one plan where I've got time. We financed those out like twenty years. So, yeah, we finally got most of our stuff paid off to where we're not. Right, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar checks every year right off the top.
So, so James, if we, if we approve buying a new ambulance, it'll be a year or so before you. And you would replace the oldest one, the, the one that's got three hundred thousand miles.
Yeah.
The three hundred thousand mile one, then you would use as the fourth.
Well, yeah, we could rotate the ambulance through. I can, I hate to say I have to wait on the ambulance because of what happened to us this last time. We got, we got in a bad situation this last time because we tried to push it out and we tried to get a little bit more life out of our truck. And then instead of fifteen, eighteen weeks to get a truck, it was three years. Um, hopefully that doesn't happen again. And it does seem, the day that we picked up those two trucks, they had four more jacks sitting on the lot after we had the one of the models. I'm not having to give a quote if we go, uh, obviously we're not gonna pick another one up, but they had trucks that was pulled up there exactly. The availability of this opened up on us like this. And through.
Okay.
Without the crews, the truck, and even if we, if we can get the crews approved. And any money that we don't expend because we're still trying to build up the crew or get them trained over the next year. Uh, may offset costs quite a bit, but not face the entire capital purchase without ambulance. They might have to wait another year. But if I, if I put them in a third truck running call, they're not running to Gainesville as many times as they were in fact. I've got plenty of fares right now. Eventually that truck is up twenty-four seven. Tell me if there were, if some of them were more reliable vehicles, but I think we can get them.
So we need to start.
If I had a priority in that budget, it's the crew.
The crews before the ambulance, okay. And how much would it be cost for the crews and not the ambulance?
Six hundred thousand.
That's just for the crews, okay?
Yeah, the ambulance is another four hundred thousand.
Okay, so six hundred thousand.
We've got some other equipment that we acquired.
Six hundred thousand.
Uh, four hundred thousand, I can get a little bit higher.
Six, three.
But we do have equipment that we acquire anytime we get a chance to write a grant for extra equipment for those trucks. We wrote a y'all freezing grant for some cardiac monitors. Uh, for mine, Chief Simpson's truck, we got brand new monitors and we put those monitors, put them on the frontline ambulance too, and we put the fares and put them on our trucks. If we need them, we got them. If they need them, they can take them off our truck and use them on ambulance. Got, we've got some equipment like that that'll save us on the cost of putting a third truck on the road. We've got, we're gonna have a starter for it too. Put those things into, into rotation and wire a little faster of.
Yeah.
Crews and not just the crews, but finding out how we're gonna do that crew every year. Adjusting the fire assessment and the E M F and M S T U from that side.
So, so currently, uh, Mr. Newton, with, uh, and Mr. Romans, the, uh, summary that you gave us showing revenue expenditures, fund balance, all those things. Fire had a deficit of three hundred and fourteen thousand, so that we're, we're already taking that from the fund balance.
Correct.
And then if we added this other six hundred, and it come out of fund balance, basically you'd be adding maybe nine hundred from fire, per fire and, no, wait a minute. Yeah, three hundred, that's right. That's right, okay. So the, the other question is, I'm not in favor of increasing the M S T U at this point, not knowing, I just don't have enough. Yeah, no, we appreciate it. Right.
You can't sustain your services with that. And we are so much cheaper than all the other counties around us.
So, see, I, I, I hear you. And that's been our goal is to keep, keep that millet's down and taxes down. Can, can you all, um, bring us back an estimate of what it would cost if we didn't fund it out of fund balance?
One mil, an M S T U, and one seventy-seven on fire.
Oh, you already got it.
One mil on M S.
M S T U.
And how much?
One seventy-seven on fire.
And see, and I, the first schedule was just like you, you hear, was kind of the history that I could pull of special assessments. E M S was funded out of the special assessment, looked like back before ninety-two.
Yeah.
Um, of fifty dollars. Then it went up to eighty-nine. Then when the first fire assessment came in, it was at eighty, and that was in two thousand and five, was the first time that that hit the tax bill. Not even, put on the tax bill, but it's not a.
It took us about twelve, fifteen years to even get it done.
Yes, and then twenty twenty-one, we went to the one thirty-five. Your M S T U, I know for a fact in two thousand and eight, we had an M S T U of one point oh five. Prior to that, there was an M S T U on the book. I can't tell exactly what it was for, but I know, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, that you cannot run. Special assessment and an M S T U concurrent for the same project.
Correct.
So somewhere we shifted an M S T U in two thousand and eight for E M F at one point oh five. Um, went up to one point oh nine, and then in twenty sixteen, it was one point oh six, right up until we hit the point seven three, and we split it with fire.
Well, we're just gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at it when it, when we decide exactly what we wanna do there.
And then you're gonna go over this page with us in a minute. So I would like to, yeah, go over that also.
Yeah.
Before we.
And, and the, the bad news is, is the meeting that we're fixing to have to have right after this, you're gonna have to set your, your tentative rates.
For your trim notice.
For the trim notice.
Yeah.
Now, we can't, we can't do that, we can't do that Monday then?
Nope.
No.
Why do we have, so by law, we have to do it today?
August fourth is your deadline to provide it to the property praiser, which is Saturday or Sunday, Sunday.
We can calm down, but we can't go up, that's right.
Now, are we having a, we're having a meeting Thursday, aren't we?
Yeah, we do have one on Thursday.
Can't we do that Thursday then?
Well, we advertised that it was gonna be after this meeting.
We need to do it today.
Yeah, I hate.
We need to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, this is not, this is not the final. This is tentative and we can go down. But we need to go ahead and set the rate of what we, of what we need to set to fund the services that people want.
But I have to give the tell the, the property appraiser what the tentative rate is for people who are funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean.
And that's, that's why we selected today, because remember I said, calm down. You know, I go up, but I restart the trim, restart, restart the trim.
But I'm just right seeing this today, this pack, packet here today, and then I'm gonna have to vote on it today. I would rather wait and vote on this Thursday that way. No, I'm talking about what, this part here with the new fund balance part. He gave me this pack.
That packet was last week.
This packet was on my desk right now, though.
Yes, but the, the fund balance.
Right.
Was, was on there.
Yeah, but there's some corrections on it, that's what I meant. Right, it's different, right.
I do agree with that, but, um, but the six hundred thousand that we're talking about, you know, that was brought up at first.
Oh, right, I know it was. Yeah, it was. But we didn't talk about what, what we need to go to versus, you know, on fire and on the M S T U, we didn't talk about that until today.
So if you want from point seven three up to one mil, would it cover that?
It would give you an additional three hundred thousand dollars. It's actually like three hundred.
And the other half comes out of fire, I mean, of emergency medical.
Well, if, if you go to one, now, if you go to one mil, if you go to one mil on the M S T U, it would generate an additional three hundred and like twenty thousand dollars. Um, if you go to the one seventy-seven, that would generate an additional three hundred thousand dollars. So those, those were the numbers that I was looking at, is providing you six hundred thousand dollars within each, three hundred each.
Our next workshop is Thursday?
Thursday, yes, sir.
I'd like to suggest, I need a little more time to think about it, ask them more questions. Okay, sorry, I missed that. But.
Unless we start the process all over.
Right, we don't have to make that decision today though, right?
We can do it Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
We're not trying to say that they didn't. We're not trying to say that they didn't.
Well, what I'm saying is, we have an advertised meeting right after this meeting. And I, I guess technically we could do an emergency meeting following the workshop and advertise that today.
You know what, if I were setting this and it was set in stone, I would agree. But we ain't setting nothing in stone. We're setting a rate that we can't go, we don't want to go higher than. So let's decide what the rate is, let's do it. And then you can look and do all your research to decide how much you want to go down from what we set, but we know we're going to have to set it up high. So we can go down. We're not going to set it low right now and then wonder about, well, can we go lower than that? Let's set it, be done with it. You do all your research and then come back at our next meeting when we decide what we're going to set it at. Then you can, you should have got all your research done on what you want to do. We need to move ahead, guys. We need to go ahead and set. This is not permanent, this is tentative. That's my, that's my outlook on it. Let's get it done with. I think if we wait and wait and wait, decide what we're going to set our high rate at, we're going to just be further and farther behind the eight ball. That's my opinion.
Beyond being the same, going to be, going to say, you know, next time.
Exactly.
We're not doing it right this minute, though. We're going to do it when this workshop's over.
Right.
Yeah, that's when you'll have your regular meeting because you can't take action in the workshop.
Okay. That's my opinion.
Mine too. Todd, the EMS was one seventy-seven, is that what you said?
The, uh, the FIRE, um, one seventy-seven would give you the additional three hundred thousand dollars to put the additional truck on.
That's one point seven seven.
No, uh, no, that's one hundred and seventy-seven.
So it's point one seven. How about a fire assessment?
Fire assessment. Yeah. Yeah, so your current fire assessment rate is one thirty-five for residential. You would need to, to take that to one seventy-seven.
To get the three hundred thousand.
To get the three hundred thousand dollars.
And then the other one's point seven-three.
The other one is point seven-three and you need to get one point oh.
And that's EMS?
That's EMS.
I'll throw in one more thing in there, don't throw it off that end. Um, you're talking about addressing the residential for later. We have a, we have a assessment study for a reason. Commercial pays a square footage, residential pays a flat rate the entire time. We've not cut the commercial square footage rate. People have argued to me that we don't run calls in commercial. Your fire assessment rate is your ability to protect that structure. We have larger construction in our own, we right now don't have the ability to protect them, so we have to move either. The reason we split this up between FIRE and EMS is because every person that will eventually staff these trucks will be dual certified. They should be firefighters and paramedics on those trucks. If I need to use them to fight building fires, we're going to be there for them. Our manpower is our biggest problem aside, and the reason that that whole assessment come out, when they look at that, they look at a percentage and they assign this percentage to commercial. The lion's share of it came from residential, which is kind of flipped because most places, we've mentioned Dixie County, Dixie County makes the majority of their money out of the commercial part of their assessment. They don't run all these different commercials. They just have a lot of the most properties. You have to provide that level of protection, and that's what they're paying for here. Um, so I, I think that needs to be addressed too, if you're going to put it on there. Again, you can always come down from it, but you need to figure out what we're going to do with them as well. Leave it the same, you could put it all on residential, but, um, that is not what that study suggested. Or basically said was legally sensible. I know as long as we don't go over a certain amount, which we're still well under that, then we're still good, but that's, that was part of that, that was meant to be a percentage.
The, the challenge is, I, I talked to the property praiser today, and in order to change the FIRE rates, like they, there's a, a date that they have to get these numbers in by. And we're getting really close to that date. I don't know that there's enough time to, to make all of these changes. Residential would be simple for them because it's one number, it's not a calculation. Um, commercial gets more complicated because it is a calculation, and I don't know that there's enough time to get it done.
Well, what, again, what it was suggested is a calculation. And I, and I don't like speaking when they're not in the room, but I've had multiple conversations with them about how that works. And the conversation is very true. They have the number. They just zero out the calculation and go to a flat rate, first square foot. The calculation is now you pay two and a half cents up to ten thousand square and then one cent over that. You go to a flat rate, you just add the square footage in. Now, they said that was much easier to do, but we've never agreed to just go to that one set rate first square footage.
I think, I think the, the problem is still the same, though. They would have to make those changes.
They don't have that time to make that.
And I don't know that they have enough time to implement the changes, but I, I may be.
You also may have to advertise it. You may have to give that to the public by mail out or some other form of medium if you're going to change their calculation formula.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah.
I think that's what we had to do last.
And that's what delayed it, that's what we had to do.
I think that something you have to start on about the first of June.
So Todd, you gave us a, uh, average value and a millage rate chart. And if it's different millage rates, it gives the abhorrent taxes. That's on page thirty-one. So if, if you increased the MSTU, how much of an increase in taxes would be, uh, I don't know, two hundred thousand dollar property or a hundred thousand dollar property? Just trying to get a feel for what we're talking about. Is it twenty, thirty dollars? I mean, I'm, none of us are interested, I don't think, in going up, but we need to know that kind of stuff.
It, we, we did our budget on, based on eight point seven, I think is what y'all's budget is on, eight point seven.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Elman General.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't have a, a really quick way to calculate that.
Yeah.
But I mean, I could bring it to you on Thursday.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Basically what you're looking at on these, um, if you look at page thirty-two. So for years, we've kind of, that analogy of that hundred thousand dollar property back in two thousand and fourteen, and, and how that property would have changed over the years. And I, I got to realizing that it's not really an accurate portrait of a lot of people in Gilchrist County because.
Ralph, we get page thirty-two on that, please.
Um, this particular illustration, what it shows is, if you have a non, actually, it's on the page. Page, page thirty-one, actually.
Thirty-one.
Yeah, so page thirty-one, what this shows you is a non-homesteaded property. How does that change over time? You know, a non-homesteaded property has no, um, no protection as far as the amount of increase. So if you have large increases, your, your values is going to go up with the increase, right?
They don't have a saver homes or nothing like that.
There is no saver homes, there is no protection, you know, no max rate that it can increase. So if you look at this parcel, a hundred thousand dollar in value back in two thousand and fourteen, our, our millage rate was eight point two six nine five, they would have paid eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars that year. You know, scroll down to the very bottom, you see in two thousand and twenty-five, that property has now increased to almost two hundred and five thousand dollars. Our current millage rate, eight point seven, um, the abhorrent taxes on that parcel is now seventeen eighty-two.
Even though we're lowering the millage, the value of the property is going up.
Even though you're lowering the millage, but your, your, your value has doubled.
Right.
Now, if you flip over to the next page.
MSTU taxes?
This is your homesteaded property, okay? You started out with a hundred thousand dollars, you have your fifty thousand dollar homestead exemption. Um, eight point two six nine five, now that property, they only paid four hundred and thirteen dollars in taxes, right? Now, this is strictly abhorrent. This doesn't take into account your special assessments and, and other taxes. This is Gilchrist County abhorrent, right? So you, you scroll on down, now, two thousand and twenty-five, their taxable value is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Because they were protected. They didn't, they didn't increase, you know, those, those drastic increases that we've had over the last number of years. They didn't recognize those increases because they have a homestead.
Right.
And, um, as you can see.
Eleven years, their taxes went up two hundred, a little over two hundred dollars as well.
Right, the last four years, they had a cap of three percent, whereas our property values went up, you know, double digits. Theirs was capped at three percent. So rather than being a two hundred and five thousand dollar value, they're at about a hundred and twenty-six. You take the fifty thousand off at eight point seven, their taxes are six hundred and sixty dollars. So just to show you, you know, with a homesteaded property, um, even though values have increased drastically, if they have that homestead locked in, um.
They're not being.
They're, it's, it's not as severe as if you don't have homestead. Now, those that are, not have homestead.
Yeah.
You know, it's a pretty drastic increase. What was it, over twelve hundred dollar increase or something like that? Um,
That, that's.
About a thousand dollar increase, roughly. Um, whereas a homesteaded property, you know, a little over two hundred something dollars. Again, strictly on your abhorrent for Gilchrist County, doesn't take into account solid waste, school board, or not, uh, solid waste assessment, fire assessment. Doesn't take into account, um, school board, whatever they do.
Right.
Um, but that's how you're affecting them with your millage rate, um, and what you do.
So most people that been here would be this latter, homesteaded, uh, analysis.
Correct.
And the newer folks would be the, the previous.
The, the newer folks are the ones that are going to see more of your drastic increase. Again, if they're homesteaded, you know, from last year, their max increase is three percent of taxable value.
But that saver home program, that, that's portable, isn't it? And I mean, if you, if you, if you sell a house down south, you can bring that up there with you, can't you?
Correct, I mean, it, you.
So, so it kind of.
Depending on what, like, you have a, a time period and Damon would be better answering these kind of questions, but.
But it kind of helps, it kind of helps our residents, but it costs us money in the long run.
Correct. Correct. It, it does affect us because it reduces the amount that that new person is going to pay in property taxes.
That's right, if they bring it with them.
Yeah.
Well, I like the MSTU better than the special assessment. You know my feeling on the special assessment. Everybody talks for it just the same way. However, with an MSTU, we're doing it based on the value of your home. If you go to six thousand plus on home, we give a counter today. That point three mil is going to be more than it is on mine. More than it is on somebody's house that's completely exempt, because you're not going to get that increase at all. Um, I wish it could be fire assessment that way, but they simply won't let us do that. Uh, I think I've softened bricks here from, it's not even point three, it's like point two seven mil. So that's twenty-seven cents, thirty, ten thousand dollars of value, a taxable value, if I'm correct.
Thousand dollars, that's twenty-seven per thousand.
Per thousand. I, I just, my thoughts on it, but, um, I've at least for setting it for a trend notice. Any more, any more effort you want. I've got all week full, any numbers that you want out of there. There's also some full, tons and tons of data. Uh, I can put you a book up there that's two inches thick, or I can give you the numbers if you want. If you'll set it up to give us a possibility to go somewhere, then we can, we can fine tune it from there. I can tell you now that we won't have six people hired on October. There's just no way that would ever happen. Um, but.
If you want to go kind of in the middle a little bit, then.
I would get on to the other end of it, actually, you know, because I can hire those people and if they don't start paramedic school till January, we don't hire them till January.
Right. We're going to find people to hire first, like you said.
Well, E and Ts I can hire.
Right.
An E and T I can put to school. I'd rather have them with me tomorrow than three months. I'd rather send people that we have working out and give them some relief than send them to school, the ones that have experience. But there are E and Ts out there and honestly, be silly and, and just say it's world to pay for your own school. Because everybody else pays for it, isn't it? When I went through, you had to pay, you had to get all your stuff and then try to find a job and there were five hundred applicants for one position. And that's just not the way it is. Departments that have had waiting lists are now paying ten thousand dollars on our bill. So I know we'd have a couple of months, but we wouldn't have somebody hired who may be able to resolve that number a little bit, so. Do anything to prepare to be at that number.
All right. We need to move on. But I, I agree. We, we're going to have to come up with some way to, in the near future, to, to, uh, to get the, another ambulance, to get the people on. Um, hopefully we can work out a little bit at a time and, and and put money away, that's what you do, put your money, bring any money away, and so when, one day when you have to have it, it's available.
Well, it's like we did to jails.
Well, it's like we did with the jail, like we're going to have to do with the trash. I think we're going to have to, going to have to find the money somewhere, we're going to do it. And, uh,
We'll finance it.
We'll finance it and we don't want to, we don't want to have to, with today's interest rates, you don't want to have to finance what you don't have to, so.
Or don't provide service.
Or don't survive, or don't provide the service. And that's not, really not an option, is it?
Not if you need the service.
That's not, not if you need it, is it? So.
All right, where are we?
I think the thing is, we've got a few, some that grind to keep the taxes low until it's all up fixed.
Yeah.
Want to play the fiddler, ain't it, it's time to fish.
The last year, we didn't have to go up because we had a good fund balance, but this year we may have to.
We raised our fire assessment last year, though.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
We did.
Solid waste, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and solid waste, we sure did.
We raised our fire assessment.
Yeah, fire assessment.
Solid waste, we went from eighty to a hundred and twenty last year.
I think that was two years ago.
Well, we raised our fire assessment when we dropped it, and that's in the, it's kind of offset by.
Told you about two years now.
I was on my, on my tax bill and I kind of put it there, I didn't. It's been fifteen dollars difference. We just looked at those two numbers and put it in there, but. So, but it depends on what the value of the house was.
All right. If, if we take it out of fund balance, I heard the argument why we don't want to do that long term, I get it. But the six hundred thousand even out of fund balance would leave us still eleven and a half million at the end of two thousand and twenty-five. Is that true? Extension.
If it's true first, the back state is your money at the end of.
And if you've got money to do it, then you don't have to pay interest on it.
In fact.
Don't have to worry.
In fact, but our, our money, basically, the county's money in the general fund is taxed, it's against the group.
Right.
So when you have a fund balance, that money's drawing interest until you do use it. Now, you'll get that money back, but if you've got some setback, it's drawing interest until you use it. Once you use it, then you get it reimbursed later on, but still, it's drawing interest once in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, then have to buy a new ambulance one day. Exactly, right?
If we do it quick.
If we.
I hope that the level off will be.
Yeah, well, I hope so too. I, I know Damian said that, uh, seems to be a slowdown in vehicles and that may at least stagger the price, if not drop a whole lot, so, uh.
I hope they're going to say that.
I mean, there for a while, they went from two hundred to three hundred, I mean, it was just like, every time you looked at the price, they're a hundred thousand dollars more.
Twenty-nine cleaning ball damage for a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Three forty.
She's gracious.
Exactly, it's at a hundred thousand dollars a year, what they went up. Exactly, it's at a hundred thousand dollars a year, what they went up.
Hopefully, they do come down.
Oh, we're gonna talk about fund balance in a minute, then?
Okay.
Can?
That's what I like to do.
All right.
Thank you, James. Appreciate all. Are you still looking to go into EMS, or now what?
Uh.
I think we're pretty much it.
Yeah, we're pretty much. The, the only changes that been in EMS have been this exact stuff, is the, the biggest ticket items on there were the ambulance, and I've. If I had to, and I know that's a big chunk, so if I had to pick between the cruise and the ambulance, we will make some ambulances run, and then we get these cruise trains where we need to be, and get extra people on the road. Um.
No sense having the truck if you don't have anybody to sit in it.
Well, and I, we had a tanker in the bucket when I first started here, and I fought again. I don't have a butt to put in the seat, and I farted in the basement. We have plenty of tankers. So, as soon as we get to the point where we get to those, those seats filled, we'll be coming back to you, and probably coming back to you when I know those seats will be filled, if we're doing the training in-house. Um, I look, get a little bit ahead of it, try to get it ordered, so we're not waiting to just get one, and we're locking in some lower prices.
Well, now, last year, you mentioned a fire truck at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that got off the table.
No, I don't want one, I'm just saying that's what they call them. For the fire trucks that we used to buy for a lot of counties were four hundred thousand dollars, so, I'm lucky to get an ambulance under that. I'm just saying that if we have to start replacing those trucks.
Last year, did you mention, like, we might have to be looking at one thing, or a car truck?
Within the next couple of years, not right.
Okay.
Let's, let's plan on not to do that. I don't, and I wanna find, I, I would love to find one. I'll even buy you a fire truck. They don't drive as much as them.
Well, good. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
James, while you're there, um, we, uh, we do need to also, um, approve fire services for, um, Fanning and Trenton, um.
What page?
Page one thirty-one.
Did it go up or stay the same?
It's, um, same.
Same.
Yeah, it's been the same for three years.
No, we went up about, what, three years ago.
Three years. Yeah, we increased Fanning, uh, I think it was four years ago.
That was three Fanning. Cause Fanning had been, had, they'd been getting fifty thousand, and we did that for five years. That was like, I think, my first year here, the last year we did it, to help them purchase the truck. But they were able to provide some call data for us, but they're very consistent and answering calls.
And that, we're still using them a lot this year off, though?
We do.
Okay.
That, and that, I know their number has went up, but right now, you have to fill in for any kind of entry.
And Trenton also, we're using them a lot, too?
Um, Trenton's still kinda hit or miss. Um, Trenton hasn't provided us any call data, so he's not very, very important.
So, this money that you collect, does it go in your budget?
No, this is money.
This money, yeah.
Money we pay them.
So, we pay, we pay the city of Trenton and the town of Fanning's money, um, to.
Okay.
To run a zone in the unincorporated area.
Okay.
Because we don't have a fire station without, uh, uh.
Okay.
And Trenton goes all the way outside City Grove Road, comes all the way to, um, three forty-one, the round B P.
So, this comes out of your budget?
Yeah.
Yep.
But we use them to fill some of our zone and provide the fire protection.
That you would have to provide if they didn't do it.
Correct. Trenton's kinda hit or miss. If Fanning, if Fanning was gone, and we didn't have them responding, it would cost us a whole lot more than the fifty thousand that we'd given fifty-one thousand.
Well, the reason I, I, well, it, it said grants and aids, I just took it as you were collecting it, but.
I wish.
No.
You're, you're spending it.
Definitely. But there, there are no dangers to that, that we're sort of.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right, page twenty-nine.
Big, okay.
So, this doesn't take into accounting the minor adjustments that we did today. Um. But right now, proposed budget revenues are thirty-one million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Proposed expenditures, twenty-eight million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, which produces a positive, um, surplus to fund balance of two million, three hundred and five, seven oh one. Um, taken into account transfers to capital improvements of a little over four million dollars. Um, that would be the three and a half million dollars for the solid waste project, and transfers for the, um, loan payments. Then, you've got transfers budgeted right now of one million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, which is three hundred and fourteen thousand to fire, one million, six hundred and fifty-nine to road. That creates a change, um, and a decrease to fund balance of three million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand. So, coming on down, um.
So, we wouldn't take out a loan for, um, solid waste, we'd pay that straight out of our fund balance, correct?
That's what this is.
Okay, that's what's making, yep, okay, making sure I understood that.
So, with that, um, with those expenditures, your required, uh, fund balance, uh, according to your policy is eight million, six seventy-seven. Um, with our current fund balance estimated to be at fourteen million, two sixty-eight at the end of this fiscal year. Um, and those reductions, that would put you at around ten and a half million at the end of next year. Looking at fire, um, you've got revenues projected at, uh, one million, one oh four, um, expenditures at one million, three sixty-five, which produces a deficit of, uh, around two hundred and sixty-one thousand, with the transfer that adds back in, uh, right at fifty-three thousand. Um, at the beginning of next year, we're proposing that you would have around two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in fund balance. Your requirement is two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars with the addition of the fifty-two, eight fifty-five, that puts you right at compliance for fire. Um, road department, right now, we've got revenues of one million, five twenty-four. Um, taking into account, at this point, we have zero gas tax, um, estimates from the state, so that number could go up, it could go down. Last year, it actually went down, surprising me. Um, we've got expenditures of three million, one eighty-three, one eighty-five, which is a change of one million, six fifty-nine. And we have a transfer to cover that. Um, fund balance at the end of this year estimated to be eight hundred and, right at eight hundred and forty-six thousand with a, um, requirement of six thirty-six, which would leave you at the end with a balance of eight hundred and forty-five. In EMS, right now, you've got estimated revenues of two million, three sixty-four versus expenditures of, uh, two million, two forty-three, which gives you a surplus of right at one twenty-one. Um, estimated at the beginning of next year of four hundred and seventy-five thousand in fund balance, a requirement of four hundred and forty-nine. And at the end of next year, estimate of four hundred and ninety-six thousand. Solid waste, um, we've got estimated revenues of one million, three fifty-three, expenditures of one million, three thirty-five, with a surplus of right at eighteen thousand. Estimated fund balance at the end of this year, five ninety-seven, a requirement of, uh, two sixty-seven, and an estimated fund balance at the end of next year, uh, six hundred and fifteen thousand. Anyone have questions, old man?
The fund balance of solid waste.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that a, isn't that a, a pretty high.
The transfer did last year.
Okay, so that's taken into that.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, so, solid waste, solid waste has been a pretty good turnaround story. We had to infuse three hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year, the beginning of this year. Um, and that was because, to start this year, we didn't have enough money in fund balance to, to basically cover our fund balance policy. So, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars got us there, and then the revenues have been extremely high this year, um, compared to.
So, then that, we were able to give that three million back, and, okay.
Yeah, so, so we gained, we gained some on top of that, um, due to the revenues just coming in really high.
Well, we also went up from eighty to a hundred and twenty.
Correct.
Solid waste, so we collected a lot more money.
That's correct. But the, the revenues, honestly, it, it's really coming from the, the increase in tipping fees.
Yeah.
Um, there's a number of, of different line items that the, the revenues just came in extremely high this year, but.
So, with EMS, with just their fund balance alone, we'll have approximately a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars more than what our, um, policy is. And then fire will only have eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven more than what our policy is.
That's correct.
So, EMS is, is a little better with the fund balance right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we could, you know, use that hundred and forty-seven thousand if we needed to use that.
The extra.
For the extra, yeah. I'm just, you know, throwing it out there, kinda. So, we're not dipping into our general fund balance if we use that.
You could.
Yeah.
No, I think she's indicating more not doing as much of a increase to the MST unit. Is that?
I think that's her.
Yeah.
I just think you're in a, you're in a real gray area.
No.
Well, that's the reason.
Yep. So, that would be half right there, a hundred and fifty through EMS, that would be half, um, of the, of the three hundred thousand. So, what would we need?
Now, bear in mind that your, your fund balance policy is a percentage of your expenditures for the year. Next year, your expenditures are gonna be higher, and actually, if you're talking about adding the three hundred thousand, you just increased your fund balance requirement by adding that three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, the, the numbers change every time you, you make some, you know, a big increase in expenditure, now your fund balance requirement has increased as well. So, that would mean you've got less money to, to pull from, if that makes sense.
We'll take a bathroom break.
We can, we can take another break, and we need to.
Coming, I'm having a bathroom.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess. All right, I called meeting back to order, it's, uh, five forty-seven. Let's, uh, let's move on.
Uh-huh.
What's next?
Well, we have, um, four other little minor departments, although one of them might be a larger discussion.
Okay.
Um. General Government.
Page.
Page eleven in your book. I'm pretty sure we actually addressed General Government last meeting, but, um, then there was a discussion about system and administrator. So, I just need to figure out where we're at on that.
How many, um, applications have we gotten so far? Department of Management.
They don't go to me.
Amy.
Kaylin's monitoring that, she's out. Nothing went well today, so.
Who's monitored?
Kaylin.
Kaylin.
All right, General Government. Page fifteen, page fifteen, uh, they, they call it pages eleven and twelve, but.
I'm like, wow.
And with, uh.
Make that to that.
Total went down. Operating expenses went down.
Yeah. Well, what you got is your professional service went down some, too, and that, that amount is based on your vulnerability study, so we paid out some on that already, so that line's actually grant funded. Um, but the, uh, so that's where some of your decrease was. Um, of course, you had your FAC Association dues went up this year by five hundred dollars. Um, the downtown redevelopment is up some, which that's based on calculations on the, pretty much, communication and freight's up a little bit, but.
But this was, is with an assistant then, this budget? No, okay. So we're not there yet on that one?
Well, that was the question.
This is just general government here we're talking about.
That's where his salary.
Correct, that's where it falls.
Cause we're hiring administrator, I think seventy four to a hundred thousand. And then we had talked about um, getting an assistant also. And the counties I've talked to, you know, that was their range and they all had a, you know, an assistant also. Now, is that something we would hire the assistant also, or the new county administrator or?
Um, I think that's kind of up to the board. I mean, typically, um, county administrator hires department heads. Um, and then you.
Approve them.
Approve them.
I would, my suggestion would be as, you know, as in this position. You will have to confirm it, of course. But what I would suggest is to let your administrator do, hire that person. Because they're the ones that's gonna be working that, with that person every day. They're the ones gonna be instructing that person on their job duties. Uh, and again, that would be, it would have to come to y'all to be confirmed, just the way department heads would. But I would leave that up to once you get your, uh, county administrator to let them hire that particular person.
They need to hire someone they can, they feel, they feel they can work with and.
Well, you got, you got a lot of, you know, everybody's different um, in, in the, in their thought power process on hiring people. You know, if it was me looking for an assistant and I was new to the county, I would rather come in and work a month or two and see who under me might would, would, could take that position, who had some history and knowledge of what's going on. They may not have wanted the actual that, but they may would come in as assistant. And then that would be a lot of uh, history, history and knowledge that you may have.
Yeah.
You know, that, that person may not be there that wants it, so they may have to look out. But, you know, personally, if, you know, I can only speak for me, I would prefer to come in, kinda see somebody who may be interested or applied for the job that might want to assist me. And then work with that person and bring it, you guys to be confirmed.
I would agree with that.
You know, um, because anytime that you've got some uh, historical knowledge, that's work, working with you is, is always.
I agree.
You can promote some others that already.
Right. And then there may be somebody out there that doesn't wanna be the.
Fifteen years of history with the county.
And they may not wanna be the county administrator, but they may love to assist that first.
Now, for the assistant administrator, how much is it, how much of that, um, how much do we budgeting for the assistant? I thought you did just include it.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so this is.
Last, last meeting, it was discussed that, you know, we need to consider that, but rather than right now, we don't have that budget.
And we don't have the proposed new salaries starting rates budgeted either, do we?
No ma'am.
Well, yeah, you do. My salary.
You got Bobby's salary falling.
My salary.
No, I think what you're talking about is raises.
Oh, it's not on there, but it's never been on there. It's always been contracted.
No, no, I'm not talking about that.
She, she's talking.
Oh, oh, okay. I apologize. No ma'am, none of that's.
Sharon, when you talk, when you talk to the um, other counties about their assistant, what were they paying?
I didn't ask, but I can call again. Well, I did, but I don't have that with me, cause I didn't know we were gonna.
It was around sixty when I talked to Dixie, but that was several months ago.
It was around sixty.
That was several months ago, so I don't know what it.
I, I just talked to him last week. I can bring that information Thursday with me. I'll get that. It's.
What, I mean.
I'll bring it Thursday.
Are there any other counties that are doing assistance other than, than that? Levy doesn't have an assistant, do they?
Now, I just called the two below us and I called the two above us, and population wise, and I'm still waiting on the two above us. But the two below, they did have an assistant.
Yeah, I think Levy does have.
Sir? Yeah, we, I mean, I think we need an assistant because um, it's a lot on one person.
Yep. Alright.
But I'll bring that information on Thursday.
Okay.
Alright.
And what is the increase then? Again, you may have already said in general government, why did it increase from six seventy five to five seventy seven twenty eight?
Um, one of the things is the constitutional officer salaries, cause they come in after the budget normally.
Okay.
And then the other thing is you've got.
So this is your constitutional officers. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and then you've got insurance.
Yep.
And then change, and then I think the FRS changed last year. Did we have it? It's not in here unless they put it in here.
But this is constitutional.
I didn't put it in.
So with the, Bob, Bobby, do you know with the constitutional officer increases the legislature mandated this time, that, does the fiscally constrained county get anything to help with that or not?
No, there, there's, there's an item number six. I think it's line number six or seven. That says any constitutional officer can elect to take or not take that pay increase.
So it's gone from a hundred and what, twenty something to?
It's a hundred and twenty, well, you had two that just changed July one. Now, those may have been differently. They may have been mandatory. Um, I don't know. The two go up like twenty three thousand or something? But now, those are already in the budget. Those are in the budget.
Alright, any questions?
Warehouse operations? Page thirty four.
Went down.
Page six.
Went down because of capital outlay. We're not planning to make improvements like we did last year. Is that right?
Yeah, mainly went down because of capital outlay. I mean, you had some increases. And then we still need to do the lighting upgrades and the blinds.
Can you're pushing fifty for that?
We'll move on to the medical examiner. It's page forty two in your, in your book and um, page seventeen in the handout. This is the money that we pay to the medical examiner's office. We also have money budgeted in there for transport, transportation and, and funeral services. Um, and that has been increasing some, so that's.
It went a bit. I mean, it stayed, stayed good twenty three to twenty four, but.
So this is the, this is the new contract that um, Lachlan County just took over.
Yep.
And remember, we had discussions about the big increase. The uh, the advantage to it is it's going to be more of a budgeted item now. Like they, they've indicated how much they're gonna bill us. And now next year, it'll, it'll adjust based on our usage compared to the other counties in the eighth circuit. But hopefully, we won't see, continue to see drastic increases like this. Hopefully, it's kinda gonna stabilize at this point. So it's a little bit different than it used to be, but we started, this year, we were gonna, we budgeted seventy five. We were gonna hit about this amount this year based on our utilization. In the way that um, they, we were currently being billed. So um, again, the good news is, is hopefully it's, it's, it's increased, but hopefully now it's gonna be stable. At least, you know, during the year. Hopefully, we won't see, you know, to where it, it blows our budget.
Alright, twenty, but uh, um, the rodeo arena's the next one. It's page seventy eight in your book, eighteen in your handout. But we're still just putting in the thousand dollars like we were. That's still on the lease, so. There's no changes there.
All the expenses have been covered by the person who rents it, pretty much, right?
Yeah, I think we have just a little bit this year that fell on us. Some of the, there's part like the lighting and stuff and, Central Florida help was willing to help out with some of that. Um, and so we were able to partner and just, they put them up. We bought a few lights, and that's our responsibility. And some of that was because, like, we're having events and stuff. It's just not the rodeo events. It was more, um, if the sheriff and them continues to use it for the, what do they call that? Turn, Gilchrist. Was he, I'm sorry. Um, the, the, where all the sheriffs come to Gilchrist County once a year.
Friends of Gilchrist County.
Friends of Gilchrist.
Thank you. Yeah. Bobby, who, who do we have that leased to? I got asked that question the other day.
Um, what's the name of the riding club? Gilchrist County?
Riders.
Riders.
Gilchrist County Riders.
Car Jason.
Gilchrist County Riders Association. Sir? He's our contact. He's, or one of my contacts. Operates a lot, a lot less expensive than he does. All the power and everything is in his name. It's not in our name, but. Um, Mr. Newton, I know you got a lot of other little departments listed here. Do you wanna go through them real quick? I mean.
I'm assuming everybody's probably had enough.
Time to look at.
To the next meeting, but um, if not, we can go on to some of the smaller ones. It's up to you. But uh, bear in mind uh, Thursday, we don't have a lot on the agenda. Mr. Crosby's indicated that um, something's come up that he's not able to be here for that one. Um, I did speak to the sheriff and they, if, if they don't come on Thursday, they have pretty limited ability to, to be here. They said they could come next Friday after three or the week of the twelfth. And the further we push this back, the more challenging it is for us to get it done by, you know.
So he's not gonna be ready by Thursday, you're saying?
No ma'am, he is ready.
Oh, he's ready. He's not gonna be here.
The, the question with, Mr. Crosby had asked if we wanted to look at moving it possibly till the next week. But I did talk to sheriff and they're not available unless we wanna do it on Friday. And, I mean, typically, most people aren't really that interested in doing a Friday afternoon meeting, but.
But if we did it, he could do, I don't know. I'd rather wait on Thursday and we set these military rates on Thursday, that's my opinion. If we have to meet next week. What about Monday? If we, could we meet Monday or not?
Sheriff, no ma'am, he can meet Thursday or next Friday or the week of the twelfth.
Have to, it has to be advertised the next Thursday?
But he can't meet this Thursday. No, he can meet this Thursday, right?
He can meet.
Yeah, let's just do it this Thursday.
Yeah, sheriff can meet.
Yeah, let's just do it Thursday.
At our scheduled time. They're, they're prepared to do it.
What, what else do we have on the agenda for Thursday?
Uh, Thursday, we have, currently, we have sheriff, road, animal control, library, other building.
We just did other buildings.
We did do some buildings. So we have currently sheriff, road, animal, um, library. Discussing the millage, and of course, we still have, you know, fire and EMS to figure out. Still got a discussion about general, um, that we were just talking about. That you were saying might bring something on Thursday.
Yeah, I would rather make, I would rather do it on Thursday, in my opinion.
Yeah, the only thing is, uh, there's some major road, you said, and.
Road, yeah. The big one to me is road.
Major what now?
Bobby's not gonna be here, and so I guess we're gonna, not sure who will present it.
The thing is, is I mean, we've advertised for it, but we could postpone it to our next budget workshop, cause I, I don't see how it could be done Thursday. So we could bring it back to our next workshop.
Which is when?
As of right now, we don't have.
August the first.
First is Thursday.
Right, Thursday's our last scheduled, so we gotta get some more on the books.
Just a suggestion. I know it's advertised. I can um, and y'all can rediscover it. I can kinda go over what the main point of road would be right now, if you wanted me to, and then y'all can discuss.
Hammer it out right now?
The main point of what now?
Road.
Road. Road department.
Oh, road department.
I mean, I mean, y'all can rediscover it, but I, if there's any questions on certain things, I might be able to answer now. How, how does that sound?
Let's do it.
I mean, I know it's getting late and everybody's getting tired, but um, it's on page one forty one in your big book. You, you do see, I'll let you get that. We won't have a slide for, no. I mean, we, we can put it up, y'all can put it up.
Can we discuss this today, um, the road?
We can, because when we advertise our budget workshops, we put the other departments.
Gotcha.
So I mean,
Okay.
I think we're covered, that we can discuss other departments because we advertise.
Every item doesn't have to be specifically on the agenda.
One on one, what page?
Long as the meeting's advertised.
Page one forty one. In your big book.
Your, your slide that you would normally have in your.
Road department, there we go.
In your handout is also the page prior. So if you go back one page, you'll see the comparison from year to year.
Yeah. That page is not numbered, but if you just flip back, that'll show you this comparison that you normally have. And so you can see there's a pretty large uh, capital outlay in the budget for road. Um, if you flip over to page one forty one, you're gonna see an increase in salaries. Um, remember, we approved four new positions for road departments, so that's some of that increase plus health insurance.
Three, right?
Ma'am?
Three, right?
Four.
Four, four and eight.
Yeah. And then your, your big change is going to be your capital outlay, your machinery and equipment. And what you have in there is a, a grapple truck at two hundred thousand. I'm sorry, yeah, grapple truck at two hundred thousand, a bucket truck at seventy five.
Bucket truck.
That's on page one forty two.
Thank you.
At the very bottom. Yeah. Two work pickups. I put in a hundred thousand, but I think we can get them quite a bit cheaper than that, but I just wanna be sure we put enough in the budget.
Oh, and now, I thought we were transferring, we got one for, um, didn't we get a truck for um, emergency management? And we're gonna transfer that?
Yes ma'am.
Speaking of that, we still need two more. Seeing with that, we still need two more work trucks.
Oh, yes, ma'am, your fleet down there is, most of your vehicles are twenty years old or older. You've got a sixteen, then you bought a service truck that was a twenty-three, I think, but most of your vehicle, and you've added staff, so we've got to be able to, you know, you gotta have dependable vehicles to give, to get them around, so.
Bobby, the truck that the Soil and Water Conservation District's gonna give back to the county, that one would be go, would that go to the road department?
Nope, went code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Okay.
Yep. Got it, um, two dump trucks, two new dump trucks, ten-wheeler trucks, the, the current three you have are two thousand and six models, we're not recommending getting rid of those. But it, there's times now that we just don't have enough trucks to get rock to graders or where we, where we need it to, so you really need a couple more trucks. Uh, also, uh, we have had to do quite a few repairs to those, but it's suspension and springs and that type. Um, I don't know what the, what's the other, twenty-five thousand, let me see. Okay. Oh, yes, yes, and then the twenty-five thousand is just for things that comes up from time to time. You know, you need a certain tool or something, air compressor may go out or, or different things, which it, it'll cover a, a large amount of good number of pieces of equipment, but that's, that's where you're at now. If you remember, we put the grapple truck off last year, we didn't buy one. Ours is basically non-existent, um. It will pick something up, but you gotta drag it all the way to the side on the ground and then lift it up and get it in there, and then you got, it can't be very big.
Bobby, how often do we need to use the grapple truck?
Um, you, you can use that grapple truck to one point, I don't wanna say every day, but you'll use it every week some, I mean, we've, uh, had every time trees are blowing over, uh, we, or you gotta trim trees, or, you know, it's, it, it gets used a lot, I mean, but.
I had somebody tell me the other day that there was a big tree fell called road department, they could, they responded very well and quickly and, but they came with the grapple truck we got, and it took them forever because it's.
What you're doing right now, you're probably spending four hours to do an hour job.
Yeah.
No, and that's, that's the big thing, you got a liability there, and.
Right.
There's only certain, we don't even wanna train anybody new how to use it. If you get it new, when you train somebody how to use it, or better, but it, it's just, and we've sent it out to try to have it repaired, it's not repairable.
Yeah, uh, uh, things we spend money on, people see, sometimes they don't see the, the cost of liability, they don't see the cost of turnover from employees. Uh, and we gotta do a better job of, I think, all of us, talking about those extra things. Uh, why it's important to invest, you know, if, if a vehicle has been twenty-five years since we replaced it, we gotta be able to talk about those things.
And you have to look at it in a, a, you know, one, safety is real, very important. But number two is, if we got a tree down in our yard, we wanna cut it up and take three weeks to haul it off. It costs us the same whether we do it now or we do it in three weeks. But when you're paying people to be out there and you're, and it's taking longer, I mean, you're, it's costing us money, so.
So what of this equipment, can we wait on versus we gotta have it all right now?
Well, if, if you, if you waited on anything, it, it might be the, uh, it would probably be the, the smaller trucks.
The pickup trucks.
Yeah, but, um, you know, the, the, the thing is, we, this county's getting busier, busier, and busier. And if we don't give people what they need to get the job done, we can't get the job done, and then we can't call up and wonder why they ain't got it done yet.
And there's the dump trucks, or if they keep going, dump trucks, they keep up with the rigging.
Well, if you got two graders needing a bunch of rock that day, then sometimes you gotta choose, well, this one gets it, or the other one gets it, you know, and now, it doesn't mean they can't go and be grading somewhere else, that's when we get the phone call and say, well, they just drove down my road and didn't grade it. Well, yeah, that's right, but they need rock, so they'll be back, you know, tomorrow when they can get rock. And that's okay, I understand, everybody doesn't know what's going on, but, uh, you know, it, that, and then now, if you have a truck go down, you're down to two trucks.
That, um, those four positions, are some of them's gonna operate this equipment?
Yes, well, they'll be doing several different things, I can't say, but, yeah. I can't say that's what those four will be doing, but what I'm saying, the other four people are gonna help with this and, and send some other equipment we have as well, too, I mean.
But when we get the equipment, we gonna have somebody to run it?
Oh, yes.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah, we've been very lucky lately, we went through a period of time that it was hard to get anybody with a CDL. And lately, we've been able to get people with CDLs now, um, and I have no issues with this, a lot of them's 'cause they're retired from somewhere else and they want something to do, and they want something to do local, and, um, they get a retirement check, but they'd like to have health insurance.
You say?
You know, and some of them don't take it, but, you know, but yes.
So Bobby, related to pay, I know the last three or four years, we've gone up across the board, four dollars an hour. Um, but I hear still, uh, sometime we're not able, not able to keep people or be competitive with surrounding counties, and I, I think you're gonna get to some of the comparison.
I've got a document here with.
Okay.
So you got Anderson Columbia, then we'll start them at thirty dollars an hour, you know?
Well, we, we'll never be able to compete with that, but, but the one good thing about a county job normally, and Anderson Columbia or any construction company has been busy for a while, but if it gets slow, you're gone.
You're right.
Most of the time, we don't over-hire, um, so there's, it's, there's a lot of stability in having a job with a, with a, a county or some other government, because we didn't fill that position, usually, if we're filling a position, we need to, you know, kinda, and, and nothing wrong with that, but I mean, just being certain, so they do appreciate that, and really, there's just a lot of people now that's kinda, they're retiring at sixty-two, but know they still need to work, and our jobs are grateful.
Can we do, do with just one work pickup truck, because we're gonna get the one from emergency management, we're gonna be getting the one from, um, Soil and Water.
You know, that Soil and Water's not going to road department.
Oh, that's right, going to code. What does code use now, though?
Uh, they've been borrowing an emergency, an EMS vehicle.
And the, the two vehicles you're replacing?
A little black car that they've been borrowing, it needs, but it's supposed to stay in EM.
You talking about the Explorer?
Yeah, a little black Explorer, it was given to us, and when it was given to us, it was said it must, it needs, supposed to stay in emergency management.
Who drives the little gray Blazer we have here?
It's right over there.
Who drives it?
Uh, it's, that would be Stan or whoever needs to run to another little department somewhere. Sometime, it's basically other departments, anybody that, sometimes Michael will need to send people to Gainesville for training or somewhere, that's what it gets used for. And then, uh, I, also, the person who travels and cleans the library and, uh, uh, and some other places, they use the great explorer for that, too.
Bobby, if we, if we do some or all of this, next year, what would be the need, or the next year, I know we've.
Whatever we don't do this year.
Okay, whatever we don't do this year, but we'd be good shape for how long?
This stuff here, we've been kicking it down the road for a while, I don't, I don't, I think you need it. I mean, I think if you, you want, I think if you want them to perform and perform the way we need them to perform, you, you gotta get something to do.
Yeah, we need to get them equipped, I mean.
You know?
And next year, there'll always be something, but it won't be as, hopefully, it won't be as big a list, because we will have got some of this stuff out of the way.
Well, you're gonna keep using them, but your trucks, your, your three semis are two thousand and six, so what is that, eighteen years old?
Yeah.
Can we do one pickup this year, maybe that, that next year, or doing the other one?
Yes, you could do that.
The four hundred is for two dump trucks or one?
Two. Yeah, I don't think I put it as two.
Uh, for two dump trucks?
Yeah.
Hey, could we do one truck, dump, um, dump truck this year?
Well, you can, you can do, you can do whatever you want. You can do whatever you want, but this is what we need. I, I might, you know, I'm, I'm.
Sir?
Okay.
If you, tell us your name, reward, tell us on the record, thank you, Billy.
Uh, the bucket truck we had now, we got the same thought of that, is it still certified, do they keep it? We used to keep it certified, it had to go every year?
I think it's, it's certified every, sometime within every twelve months, and yes, I think it is still certified.
It's still in good shape, ain't it?
It's, it's still, it still does work, it still does work good, the problem that we run into a lot of times is just if we had a second one, we could be getting more done, um, but.
I know that thing fits a lot.
Yeah.
I just ask.
Yeah, and, and I, I probably need to, I know when I spoke with Rodney, he kinda gave me this list, so I'll probably need to get back with Rodney on the bucket truck, and that, that might be the one that, they had it in the shop the other day and was having some work done to it, and I think they did get it repaired at the time we were discussing this list, they weren't, they weren't sure what.
So could we take the bucket truck off then?
With, that might be a good possibility, yeah.
Okay. How many dump trucks do we have right now?
Three.
Okay.
And if one breaks down, you're down to two, so, and we have been working on quite a bit lately.
Yeah, we've been putting, putting transmissions on them and everything else lately.
We can take the bucket truck off, take one of the work truck pickups off, and we'll talk about the dump truck.
And do, I would stay with two dump trucks.
With two.
I just, I, 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 what you're doing is, when it, when you don't have enough dump trucks to either haul where you need to stock, or you can get the equipment, you got people standing there waiting on line or.
So we can take the bucket truck off and one.
Well, not only that, you have five road graders, and if they, if they call for rock and you've got two trucks, you can get, you gotta either wait for them to bring you some, or you gotta come back to it, or you gotta do all kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, okay. So, can we, everybody agree, maybe we take the bucket truck off and one of the work trucks off?
It's a hundred.
Get by with others.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand less, there.
No, a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty?
No, 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 it's not, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right. No, the bucket truck is a hundred thousand.
No, it's seventy-five.
It's seventy-five thousand.
It's just hard.
And then, and then fifty thousand of the hundred thousand, so you're talking a hundred and twenty-five thousand off.
I'm having a hard time, 'cause it's my line, uh, okay.
Yeah, it's crooked, ain't it?
Yeah. I even tried to draw arrows on my, still messed up.
So you talk, talk a hundred.
Head sideways.
I know, it's like.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand off of that list.
So that's a hundred and twenty-five, go down to one pickup.
And you're talking about six hundred and, uh,
And bucket truck.
Six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And the graders, all of them released now?
Okay.
You got, you got one grader coming up. Yeah, you got one grader coming up in October that will need to be returned. And so we'll be looking at, uh, what the new lease price is on.
That's a two thousand, that's a nineteen, uh, two, I guess it's two thousand and nineteen grader lease?
I believe it.
So all those are in pretty good shape, basically?
I think that is correct, yeah, I, it, what, the remaining graders that we, the last time we were, the last three or three, I think we released, they were on five-year, right? May have been the last four, I'd have to go back and look, but we, we went to five-year, 'cause they gave us a better term on a five-year, and they gave us the full warranty with all the service work as well, too, so they're one hundred percent their responsibility, except for tires and, I don't even wear out.
So did we have six graders?
We had five.
Five graders.
Well, you got a John Deere up there.
Well, we own one, and then we lease four. That's a loader, yeah.
It's a motor grader.
John Deere loader. Lisa? You're, you're look, you're looking too far up.
But then you got a.
Oh, yeah.
Cause John.
You got a nineteen grader lease, you got three, uh, added up there, and then you got another lease.
Huh?
So with that one, we still have five? We still have five?
Oh. Okay.
You're talking about the John Deere?
We don't, we don't have the two thousand and nineteen anymore.
Okay.
If you look across there, there's nothing budgeted for it, that's, that's the reason you don't show a payment on it.
Okay, okay, but now the John Deere up there, it says motor grader, and the lease is thirty-five thousand, did it all use?
Yeah.
It, it's a purchase.
So we're not using it, or are we using it?
No, 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 it had cosmetic damage, that if you and I normally would just walk up and look at it, we probably couldn't even have told it. But what they were wanting to charge to repair the cosmetic damage and, and one other little item was more than we could buy it for, and we were using it every day, and sense to buy that one.
Okay.
And they, then, then John Deere, I think, financed us for us, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we actually have five, so that we don't, we don't have the nineteen anymore.
Okay.
Of course, the nineteen. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we saw where we can trim a little bit there. And hopefully, still get them some equipment that'll help them be able to do their job.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good, this is a definitely good start for the road department.
Yeah.
Getting them the things that they need to keep these roads up, so far.
All right, what else do we wanna cover, anything?
So, Mr. Langford's thrown out whether or not we should just do the meeting after Thursday. It's really up to the board.
We can go ahead and open it up, and then we'll make the motions to do that.
Yeah, and I, I think we need to go ahead and schedule some other workshops as well.
Next week.
Mr. Newton, so the one on the.
Yeah, we do need to discuss, um.
Why did we close the?
The raises.
Why did we not have the one on the fifth then, because nobody, I mean, I thought we normally voted on that as the board, if we're gonna cancel a meeting, and nobody had called me about, I just received the email.
Uh, it was discussed with everybody that there wasn't any business.
When did we discuss it?
Um, well, it was actually.
Meeting.
Yeah. It's just us as staff, that we didn't, we didn't have any items to present, I don't have anything for the meeting.
Okay, so wasn't it discussed with the board members?
Well, I think we did call the chair to just so your confirm it was okay.
It was discussed, but it was, there was no, there was no business to discuss at that time, so.
So basically, we could have showed up on the fifth and prayed and.
And gone home.
And gone home, so, um.
All right, so we're not gonna have the meeting on the first?
We are having a meeting on the first.
We are having the meeting on the first, that's Thursday, that's, that's Thursday, and that's, um,
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Now, Thursday, but.
Oh, I had it at four, I just.
I have it at four o'clock.
Is it two or four?
It's, it's advertised for two o'clock.
Advertised for two o'clock.
Thursday, two o'clock now.
Okay, I changed it.
Well, I mean, if, if we at least just still have a meeting, if anybody, public participation wants to come in on the fifth, could we just still have a meeting on the fifth and do a budget workshop right after it?
We didn't advertise it.
But I thought normally, whenever we.
Is the workshop Thursday or a regular meeting, regularly?
Um, so the first is a, currently a workshop, and we're still waiting to determine, are we having a meeting after it or after this meeting now? But Mr. Crosby does still have, uh, salary discussion that we probably should.
We're doing that right now?
Yeah, right now.
I passed out a sheet, um, proposed new salary starting rates. What we did is, if you look at the first sheet, it does have proposed rate, uh, pay rates. Um, this is the starting rates for each one of those positions, as you go down it. Um, and then, the way we came up with these rates is we, there was roughly eighteen or twenty, um, different places, and they're on the third page, that, and, um, that we spoke with, or just more spoke with and, and retrieve their, their pays, the schedule of what they pay and what they hire in at, the other thing that we did is we started looking at ads, um, you know, looking at people's website, what are they advertising for, how much are they advertising? You know, to hire someone, because that's naturally what they're gonna start, start at. Um, and then we, um, took our two thousand and six a third-party salary survey study that was done, and then we used the, um, inflation rate sort of matched to that. And then these numbers fit, we, we did that kinda to check to see where our number's at, if you take the inflation rate based on what the minimum rate is supposed to be going to as we work to it, which we've already made it to there, and compare it, those numbers match up, so you can actually take your two thousand and six, kinda compare it to what everything has happened, and these numbers match up, and they match up with other counties. Then what we did, um, with. Then what we did, um, because what, you know, you have a compression problem when you raise your bottom number, and you don't look at what your long-term employees are making. So we went and the percentage that worked out real well, even comparing to some other areas, um, was one percent per year, for every year that you've worked here. So it would be your starting rate, new starting rate, plus one percent for each year. And, um, what that came out to be is if we do this whole total, it's right around, right around two hundred and seventy thousand. In, in fire, and these numbers that I'm giving you include FRS, all your taxes, okay, so this is a, a total number. In fire, it'd be forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. EMS would be forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. The reason for that, salaries are shared fifty-fifty. Solid waste would be twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three. Road would be thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. In general, would be eighty-one thousand, seventy dollars. So that's kinda how they'll hit each department, is the way they would hit. So, if you followed this, and, if you followed this, make this your new starting rate, use the one percent, and, um, and, and then that's- And I will tell you this, there is no flat rate increase in here, because it's gonna be, depending on how much time is added here, what that could be or not be.
I thought we had said it was gonna be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Well, I originally said, I think I said around a hundred and seventy, and that was the number that I thought it was gonna be for general.
Okay.
Um, and it wound up, general was only eighty-one, so, but all your taxes and all for everyone is around, it's, this, I think this number comes up right at two seventy, I forgot.
I thought the total would be one eighty, okay, that's two.
And that would bring everybody into compliance with the minimum wage?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're already there.
Yeah, we're, we're there, but, um, yeah, everybody, we wouldn't be dealing with that factor anymore. Um, I think we would be very competitive, uh, where nationally, we're gonna be a little bit less than some people, cause we can't afford what some counties pay, but, um, we're a little bit, maybe a little bit more than others and right at the same, but, uh, I think we're close enough to, if somebody had to drive those, you know, good ways away from here to get a job that paid a dollar an hour more, that we're probably in the ballpark because of what gas costs nowadays.
So, so Bobby, are you talking about this, this will be a salary adjustment rather than a salary, a, a pay raise, or?
Well, it will, it, it, it will, it will be a salary adjustment, that results in a pay increase.
It will be a pay raise, but it's-
Okay.
But now, it could be higher if they've been working longer, correct?
Yes.
Did you say that? A percentage or something?
Well, we'd use one percent for each year, so if you've been here ten years,
Then they could get worse than that.
You get one, so if you've been here twenty, you're gonna get one percent for each one of those years.
But that's included in this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So last year, do, do y'all remember what the total one dollar across the board per hour was?
Ah.
I would say it was three something.
Had to be.
Constitutions.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah. We're not deciding on this today, we can look at it and think about it.
Well, I, 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 I wouldn't expect you to decide on it today, but, you know, I wanted to get it to you. The other thing I think you need to think about, this is for your, this is for your board employees. Has nothing to do with your constitution. I don't feel like a dollar across the board, fifty cent across the board, is gonna work. Um, I feel like you've gotta get, you got, we've had so many changes come at us so quickly, that was mandated to us. You know, you had some mandates in EMS and fire because of Medicare, Medicaid. You had some from the sheriffs that came from the legislation. Uh, you know, they, they've been different ones, and this will bring that in. Personally, I, I feel like you probably should ask maybe Mr. Romans or Mr. Newton to send a letter to all you, to your constitutional officers, and ask them to give you what they think they need in their department. You know, some of them may be fine.
Okay.
Some of them may need some additional funding. Um, I, I don't know, I have no idea, but I don't think that you can't take this really and apply it, apply it across the board.
So this is just-
Because it needs to be changed.
This is just the county-
The Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioner employees, not everybody that works for all the different-
This has nothing to do with any constitutional officer.
All right.
So, I mean, I think that's what you're gonna need to do, to see what number that they come up with and they give you.
How many total board employees are there?
Right at a hundred, I think it is.
What was the question?
Total number of board employees, I had it the other day, I can't remember.
It's right on there.
Is it right in front of the book?
Page, page three, I think.
Okay, yeah.
So like, if we have a park worker, three.
Page four, you have, you know, gotta do some quick math.
Yeah.
Um, in this budget, you have forty-one full-time in general, five part-time. Then you have right at ten in fire, you have ten in solid waste, twenty-five in road, fourteen in EMS.
So like a park worker, three. If somebody's been here ten years, is gonna make that amount of money, the thirty-seven thousand versus somebody we hire tomorrow. Right?
A park worker, three, if, if they've been here, if they're here with us now.
Yes, that's-
If they've been here five years, they're gonna make eighteen dollars an hour.
So they have to be here five years, okay.
Plus one percent for each year.
So this ba- this is just five years they've been here.
So that's five percent basic.
So they could get them five percent on top of this?
So they'd get, is that what you're saying, is they'd get, they, they wouldn't get eighteen, they'd get five per, they'd get eighteen plus their five percent? So whatever, whatever five percent of eighteen is, would be added to it, cause they get a percent for each year.
You got, you got a part worker one, part worker two.
So this is based on five years of being here, right, right, five years?
Does it adjust each year?
This is starting salary. This is starting salary, if you, if you're currently working for us, and you've been here five years, you'll get eighteen plus one percent for each year.
Start.
He's still be working.
Yeah, that's just an example.
So he's only been working here today, he's gonna come in at this rate. One percent above basic, but if he's been here twenty years, he's gonna get twenty percent above basic.
But you don't hire anyone at a part worker three, usually hire them at a part worker one.
I just use that for an example.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, most than per year.
What do y'all, I don't think you know.
What do you think? If you've been here three years, you get three percent, ten years, it'd be roughly ten percent.
It's not adjusted at five-year increments, Sharon.
Right.
These are the starting-based numbers right here.
And every year, you get a percent.
If you were here for two years, you'd get that number.
So a lot of people may already be at that, though, if they've been here twenty-
Yeah, we've got some peo- when, when we, when we did this, we got some people that's not gonna get an increase.
Right, that's what I meant.
You got some people that will get an increase.
So it's not like everybody's gonna get, like, if they've been here twenty years, thirty-six years.
If you're already at that number, then you, you don't get an increase.
Then you're good, okay?
Yeah.
So some people may not get nothing then.
Yeah.
Right. Open up our meeting?
Look at this one.
What is that?
The salary thing.
That's what he would just kind of-
Yeah, we're gonna bring that back, right?
Yeah.
Look at it.
Look at it.
Well, and I would suggest, if y'all have any, I mean, once you get a chance to sort of look at this and digest a little bit, either give myself or Miss Moore a call, and then we can, I'll, I'll show you some examples for, if you'd like to see it.
I, I think I, I understand where you're coming from, and, and, uh, but yeah, anybody else to-
Yeah, I understand it, I understand it now, that some people, like you said, may not, that they need where they need to be.
That's right.
So, what, what guidance on constitutional officers, like, what do I need to advise them to do?
I don't know what, you know. I would advise them to just, you know, tell you what the amount they think it's gonna take for their increases in their department.
Cause, I mean, some of our people may not even get a raise, so.
And they may have some that doesn't get a raise.
Right, so.
You, you know, I mean-
So we need to ask them what, what they think they're gonna need, and then bring each one of them to us, and, and then we can-
Yeah, and just bring it to you in a lump sum.
They can say, well, we wanna give them a three percent, or something like that.
They may, I, I, you know, I don't know, it-
And I think they're gonna have to come across with a lump sum, I don't think they can take individual person and do it, they're gonna have to come up with some kinda formula that they can give across the board to their employees.
Be nice if they all got together and kinda had a meeting together, the constitutional officers, to come up with something, that's kinda-
A lot of them don't have a lot of employees to do, to do this, but if each one of them kinda did something like this, where you'd know what the starting ranges were, I mean, you could take something like this, if you decided to, and like we were doing it one time before, each year you gave a two percent pay increase, and we put that on in the budget, and you could take it back out, but you knew what it was day one. Once you get it established, you know.
So can we get the constitutional officers to come back with the, with what they think they're gonna need? And a, and a justification for the, for the raises that they're given, kind of this formula that they're using? And, and that way, we could look and say, hey, that, that sounds legitimate, or, or whatever. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. All right.
We need to open up our meeting.
All right, you, you receive not because you have. Yeah, that's right.
And then, when we have, when we open up our meeting in a minute, we'll decide when we're gonna have our next budget workshop, beside the one on Thursday.
All right. So we need to open up our reg- our other meeting?
We just need to, a quick break to, um, to, before we reset the recording.
All right, we're, we're gonna, is it a break, or are we ending this meeting, basically adjourned?
Yes.
We're, we have a motion to adjourn?
Send it.
In a second?
Okay.
All right. We'll come back in just a minute and-
Hang on, I got it.
Open up the next meeting. All right, I'll call this meeting to order, it's, uh, six forty-five, uh, July twenty-ninth, or, yeah, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So I guess the question is, um, is the board prepared to set tentative rates at this point? Or do we want to reschedule and just do an emergency meeting after our next workshop on Thursday?
I'm ready.
I would wait, I, I wanna wait till Thursday.
I'm ready myself, uh, I don't mind honoring their request to wait till Thursday, if, if y'all okay with that, you can live with it. And, and I don't want you to say, well, we've messed up, we've made a mistake, we gotta do this, we gotta do that, but I don't, I don't mind honoring their request, but if we had to make a decision, I'm, I'm-
Yeah, the, I mean, it, we can, we can schedule an emergency meeting for Thursday, um, directly following the Thursday workshop. But that would kinda be our last time, like.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Friday, Friday is definitely the last day, cause we have to get it to them on Friday. So if we get it set on Thursday, I mean, it gives us time to prepare it and, and send it on Friday to the property fraser.
It wouldn't be an emergency, would it? It'd be a special meeting.
I, I don't know, because, uh, I'd, I'd have to-
I'd hate for some of the challenges, since you had this scheduled for today, that now we've taken this off the table and gonna come back Thursday. Them challenges because of, uh, advertising not being accurate.
Well, and that's kinda why I was wondering if it was an emergency, cause we can't, uh, the only way we can advertise it is by posting and, and-
That's the only way.
And, and, if, if I'm like minutia anyway, I mean, like, we could look it up and figure out-
Forty-eight hours is an emergency, twenty-four is a, I mean, forty-eight is a special, and then twenty-four, I think's an emergency.
You have time to advertise it, basically.
Yeah, I mean, we do have time to post it and, and put it on the websites.
Need to notify the press.
Yes, well, we do, we'll notify them when we, uh-
One, one press member's here, but we'd have to notify the advocate and also for the citizen.
We have them on a notification when we put it on the, uh, the website.
Yeah.
Um, they'll automatically get notified.
You'll come in Thursday? Thing is, we sent me here today and never got this first person.
I didn't know we were gonna talk about raising the fire up to a hundred and, um, what is it, seventy-five dollars? I didn't know we were gonna talk about raising EMS up to one, I knew we were gonna talk about maybe, we budgeted eight point seven, so I kinda knew, you know, I knew that, I was prepared for that. But I wasn't, you know, prepared for the other, cause I didn't have that information in front of me until today, that, um, what we wanted to kinda do that.
My, my, the way I looked at it, we're not raising it today, we're setting a maximum today. We're not setting the final today. All we're doing is setting a ceiling. And then when we come back, we can discuss how low we want that ceiling to go. But if we just leave, just, we just kinda delaying the inevitable, we gotta come up with a ceiling, and today, I can tell you what my ceiling is. I don't wanna go higher than this, but this is my ceiling, and then next time we discuss it, we can come down from that ceiling. That's the only way I was looking at it, is this is not setting anything today in stone, this is just saying, this is how high we can go. We're not gonna go any higher.
And that's what we've been doing every year.
And then at the next meeting, we can disguise, y'all can have your time to talk to everybody, and I can talk to everybody- Next meeting, we can disguise, y'all can have your time to talk to everybody, and I can talk to everybody, and we can all get feedback. And when we come back at our next meeting, then we'll know where we want to go with it. But next time, we're gonna come back and all we're gonna do is set a ceiling.
Okay.
So, yes, sir. You can tell us your name real quick, just so we have it on.
Hold, hold on, let, let me just say, I, I was gonna say that, you know, we kind of got out of order. There's an agenda for this thing. We started talking about the, the, the tentative millage rate and all that stuff. We, 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 you called it to order, we skipped the prayer and the flag because we did that at the early meeting. Then there was an agenda change, then public participation, then you can talk about the budget.
I'm sorry.
I think God, I think God got excited.
That's my fault. Um, go ahead, real quick, if you want.
Scott, you're for Kansas City, voter and taxpayer numerous replaced. Um, I haven't been able to be here the last couple of months, called some medical issues. But, um, many and I attended in May. I sat here and I want to show. Bring up some stuff that wasn't even on the agenda. Some major expenditures in money wasn't advertised, wasn't on the agenda item or anything. It just, and that's kind of why I kind of lost it a little bit at the end of the meeting, the way all that was happening. And I'm secretly going back to the road department, the four new positions that were not even considered until it brought up in discussion between Mr. Paul, his superintendent during his full PowerPoint presentation. That's three hundred thousand dollars, and y'all just rolled it over without any public comment, any public discussion, anything at all. I just feel like the board was kind of out of place by doing that. What I'm gonna ask you now is to reconsider several things within that road department, that being number one. If you want to do something, even two, it proves that he needs more after those two performed. You can revisit it at a later time during, during the year. Also, the two dump trucks, Sharon referred to. I mean, you don't have to do them both at one time. I mean, these taxpayers in this county are really tax and burden. Some of us are better off than others. You got fixed income people, elderly people. You got young families that are struggling, that everything they do. And every time you say, we got the vital search, we got to come up with more money. That's not what government is supposed to do. Government is supposed to serve the needs of the people. And a lot of these wants that are being presented as needs really needs to be discussed and hashed out. Not only between you board members, but some of the people in the public that aren't aware of it, after y'all have already made these decisions. And the stuff that's not on the agenda should not be considered in a, in a public meeting. I'm not gonna really say much about the process of Mr. Paul's resignation. I mean, I've been, was it ever put in writing what his terms were? He would ask for back in April, three, you must line the hand together to be in writing.
Bobby, you'll be giving the one that says I leave in July, or you gonna give the one that says I leave in August?
The one, Bobby, I don't care, but I just asked them to give an update on whether it ever got back to verbally done, or was it?
We all, we all know what he's planning.
Everybody else knows, but y'all, y'all work for the public.
We told you at the last meeting exactly what the update was. You may not have heard it. But we gave an update, and after we gave the update, you stood up and chastised us for not telling you the information we had just told you.
Part of it was about that, that road department track that they pulled, about it even being on the agenda. And you're gonna add permanent county employees? Don't you think that would be important enough to put it on the agenda? For somebody to look at and say, hey, you know, this is only three hundred thousand dollars.
The road department was on the agenda.
But that, that, that's.
Having one still. The employees man, I've been perfectly put, but the, the road department is.
That's how, that's how the most northern part of the show works. You put a real vague general thing, and that's what I called you out on. And then we get up there, well, this is what we meant, this is what, just show what we didn't mean. And that's what I told you out on the floor was, put the specifics up there. Don't just bring up something vague and general, and then slip something in under it without any discussion. Because during y'all's meetings, you don't have this public participation. You bring a, a, a topic up, y'all talk about it, give you a little public second discussion, you got a motion second, it's done five o. The public has no input at all, the way y'all are doing this shit. And I mean, to me, that's just disrespectful of the people that are paying the bills.
Okay, well, my only comment is, you need to come to all the meetings because we just. If I was to tell you all the meeting that come up at the next meeting, and if you weren't here, you don't know what's going on, but it's been discussed.
I, I watch the minutes, I read your agendas.
Okay.
Just because I wasn't here physically, because of my medical issue, don't mean that I wasn't participating and watching, okay?
All right.
I've gone to everyone that you've come to.
Oh, I'll be here. All right.
I need to kind of open the doors and let the light shine a little bit, but.
All right, all right, appreciate the comment. Appreciate the comments. All right, um, let's get back on the agenda then and, uh, and see if we can move in a forward direction. Um, where is the agenda?
Oh, that's funny.
Right here, agenda. All right, we called it to order. We didn't do the prayer and the flag, because we did that. Agenda changes?
Ms. Chairman, I have, uh, an update on two of the hearings.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and do them.
You have, you want to, you want to do them right now, or you want to do them later in your, yeah, let's do them right now.
We can do them right now. I'll let, uh, Ms. Langford, you want to take the first?
Yeah, last Tuesday, there was a, a court proceeding on a motion to dismiss the ABT Trusts Inc. versus Gilchrist County, Florida case. The court ruled in favor of, uh, Gilchrist County dismissed plaintiff's complaint, uh, with prejudice and without leave to amend. So that case is now done.
How much did we spend on that?
Uh, we don't have all the final numbers yet.
He gave you the numbers before the hearing, but we don't, we don't know exactly what was spent, uh.
Is there a possibility of recouping our expenses?
I think that one, that's kind of gonna be up to the insurance company, I believe, because that particular case there, I think, was.
The insurance has asked us to try to recoup it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
He, he knew something I didn't know.
All right, well, thank you very much. That's always.
I have one more.
Bobby had another thing.
If you'll remember, uh, Mr. Jordan stood up here.
That was the truck company. All right, this is a chance for the.
Hey, I got, I got one more.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Bobby, can I, real quick, related to that, I'm sorry, I should have been asking this before now. So, um, ABT was asking, saying there were some deficiencies with the building department, basically, I think, is, uh, did the judge give some opinion on that? Uh, those things, or, I mean, it's something you could give to us later. I'm just, I, I think if we can learn something from it, uh, well, then that's okay. If not, then that's okay as well. But I hea, I heard what you got as a result. And that's something that we can do later. I'll just ask him the question.
Well, what you have to do is you'd have to look at the complaint that was filed, you'd have to look at the motion to dismiss, dismiss that was filed in response to the complaint. And you'd have to read this order right here. Uh, the, the order was signed by Judge Gray, uh, Friday, July the twenty-sixth. And basically states in essence that the plaintiff's complaint fails to state a cause of action. As the claim for promissory estoppel is premised upon only vague and non-specific statements made by a county employee. Goes on to explain that, and it says amendment of plaintiff's complaint to be futile off of the reasons outlined above. Accordingly, order the judge that the, uh, motion to dismiss plaintiff's complaints granted, plaintiff's complaints dismissed with prejudice. Prejudice is dismissed with prejudice and without leave to amend. So you'd have to look at all three of those things to see.
Okay, sorry, Bobby.
Uh, the other was, you know, Mr. Jordan accused me of, uh, of ethics violation. Uh, I went before the Ethics Commission in Tallahassee this past Friday. Um, the Ethics Commission, um, had, of course, the probable cause hearing on the ethics complaint submitted by, against me by Mr. Jordan. And after hearing the advocate and myself, on behalf of, uh, well, my, the person on behalf of me, the commission unanimously voted to approve a motion finding that there was no probable cause to believe that an ethics violation occurred. So the case was dismissed, and there's no, no further, it's over with.
Good to hear.
Good to hear. Thank you. So, and I apologize for jumping up and handing you that letter, but, um, I'm kind of tired of it being insinuated that I might be lying about what I'm saying. So, and that's all I'll say about it.
All right. Well, we, we, uh, appreciate some good, good news on the, on the ethics hearing. And I did never doubted that you were, you were, uh, not guilty of any crime there. So, uh, we appreciate it. All right, there is a chance for public participation, real quick, before we get into setting the, uh, the general millage rate for trim and, uh, MSTUs and, and whether we're gonna do that or not. So is anybody else would like to publicly participate? All right. Yeah, tell us your name again.
Scott, uh, uh, y'all talked about eight point seven. Uh, you said you had a number in mind that you were gonna stick with. Would you mind sharing your number with us now?
I don't, I don't have a number I'm gonna stick with. I had a number that I was wanting to, the ceiling. Yeah, they suggested the, the, the recommendation was one point oh.
That was on EMS.
And that, and then the other was one point seven five? Seven seven. Those were, those were gonna be my recommendations. What was recommended to us is what we needed to go out, is gonna be my recommendation.
That's on the MSTU?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, automating the regimen is this eight point seven now.
Eight point seven is what we budgeted. I wouldn't be willing.
At eight point seven, you see.
We can go down, but we can't go up.
Yeah.
But you said you had a number, you were ready to discuss it.
Well, they gotta get a motion on the floor, so I, I gotta get a motion in a second.
But you're not gonna share your number?
Not until we have, we're having a meeting right now.
Okay.
Okay?
I should share your number.
And I will when we have our meeting, when we, when we discuss it. Um, you're gonna hear it in just a minute. All right, instead of just racing time now, let's just get on with the, with the meeting. All right, so we, uh, are here to decide whether we're going to set our tentative general, general millage rate for trim. And I will turn this over to Mr. Newton to.
Um, thank you, Ms. Chair. So, uh, the, the tentative, or the, the current millage rate that we've used for budgeting purposes is eight point seven. Um, that would generate the revenue that we have discussed. Um, it does, it provides a surplus within the general until we do the transfers. Um, you know, for the, um, solid waste, the loan payment for the jail, the transfer for, um, road department and the transfer for, for fire, which is currently budgeted. Um, so at this point, you know, the board just needs to determine, um, or if you're ready to go ahead and set the tentative millage rate. And if so, um, you know, I would recommend.
Can we do that one today?
No less, no less than eight point seven.
Can we do that one today and the other two, um, Thursday?
That is up to the board.
I would re, I mean, because I was prepared to do this one today, but not the other two.
Yeah.
Well, we have, eight point seven is what your recommendation is, and that's what we're currently at?
Yep.
So it's not going up, not going down, it's currently what we're at? All right, that's, I'm, I'm ready. If we, we can get a motion in a second on it.
If we see we need to, but.
Exactly.
Let's clarify, though, we can go down once you, you know, we can't, can't go high.
Yeah, we can go down, we'll be budgeted for it.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Correct. Everybody comfortable with eight point seven?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Uh, and does it have to be a vote, or is this just a general consent?
No, yeah. Need a vote.
This is a vote.
Okay, that's what I figured. So do we have a motion?
Motion that said it's eight point seven.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Thomas, a second by Commissioner Langford, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
But you have to understand now, if we put it on the trim, we can't go down.
Yes, that's right, we know that.
Find out we need more money or something to change.
Right, we know that.
It's over with.
That's right, that's right.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, put the vote on it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eight point seven. All right, um.
I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, do the, um, MSTU for EMS and for the special assessment for fire on Thursday.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second to do the, uh, uh, MSTU and the fire rate on, uh, at our next meeting. Any other discussion?
Well, my, my, and, and I'll, I'll just share my thought. We could set it at one, and we could set it at one seven seven. We can always come down, we just can't go up. So, I mean, we could set that today.
That's.
Fire at one, EMS at, at one point seven seven, and that way the trim notice would go out. If we don't, we're gonna set the same thing Thursday, or either we're gonna set it at a different rate.
Hundred and seventy-seven.
I'd rather do that. We have a motion.
One seven.
Right, one seven seven.
One seven, yeah, one seventy-seven.
Right.
And also, I, also, I guess the solid waste special assessment, there's been no discussion really about, that's gonna stay at the same number.
Okay, well, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank y'all.
All right.
So we're taking, all three of those are carried forward for Thursday?
Well, I don't know about the solid waste.
What about solid waste, Ms. Chair?
Oh, we can go ahead and do solid waste, yeah, because what, what is the solid waste right now? Thing that was last year? I don't have, I don't have that in front of me, so I can't.
One.
Is it on a page right now? Where can I see the agenda right now?
Um, the, are you talking about solid waste rate or?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, we're, like, normally it's on my computer right now. I mean, I saw it on the website, but it's not on here, so where can I?
Sure, sure, looking for it. You're talking about solid waste rate?
Yeah.
It's just, it's set at the same rate.
Yeah, same rate, so we're gonna do the same rate.
Which is a hundred and twenty for residential.
All right.
Per household.
Per household.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we leave it at that.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a, a motion by Commissioner Langford, and a second by Commissioner Sharon Langford to leave our, uh, solid waste special assessment at a hundred and twenty. Is that what it is, a hundred and twenty?
No, I would just say, I would just say set at continuation rates.
Consider that.
Because there's multiple rates within that as well.
All right, set at the continued rate. Is that okay with you? Is that okay with you, Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Go ahead.
All right, anything else we have to discuss?
The only other thing is, uh, we haven't actually set the tentative budget hearing. Um, it is, we've discussed it, but it has not actually technically been scheduled. Um, we tentatively have it on the board for September fifth, five fifteen. If I could just get a motion to approve that.
Five fifteen on August fifth, go move.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Sec, uh, Langford, a second by Commissioner Smith to set our, uh, date, uh, and time for August the fifth at five fifteen.
That's a Thursday.
September.
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 September, whoa, excuse me, I'm off on a, I'm on the wrong date.
That would be.
Wrong month, that would make, that would mess me up. So that is a Thursday, September fifth.
But our, our meeting would start at four, though.
That's right.
And it's a four o'clock?
End of the budget, or the budget, whatever.
The tentative budget hearing would start at five fifteen.
Okay, tentative budget hearing at five fifteen, but we got a meeting at four?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second for September fifth at five fifteen to
Tentative budget.
Do with a tentative budget.
Correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Five fifteen on September fifth. All right, any other?
What about your final? What, have you already got your final date?
So.
Do we need another workshop?
Ironically, we don't have to set it. Uh, we're required to set the tentative.
Right.
And.
I was asking for information only.
Um, but for information purposes, the final will occur on September sixteenth at five fifteen, based on the trim schedule.
September sixteen?
Which is our regular meeting date as well. So we'll have a regular meeting at four and, uh, uh, budget hearing at five fifteen.
And just so if anybody's wondering why we're having it on a Thursday, on the September the fifth, it's because it's a holiday on that September second, on that Monday.
Well, not only that, it's on the school board's calendar first, and then the county's second, and then the city's come after that. So it's, couldn't, couldn't step on each other's foot.
Do we have to have a motion on that September sixteenth meeting? Or is that just?
Don't really have to have it, if you'd like.
Don't really have to have it, if you'd like, we could.
We don't have to have it.
You don't have to.
It's just a four o'clock meeting.
He'll, 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 he'll schedule it, uh, advertise it.
Okay.
That first one he did because it goes on the trim notice itself.
The August nineteenth, that was at four o'clock?
Correct.
Okay, and do we need to set it? I know we're having a, um, budget workshop this and a regular meeting, this Thursday.
Thursday at two o'clock.
Do we need to set another tentative date and just in case we need another day?
I, I believe we are gonna need it.
Okay.
Um, so if we wanted to try and set something for the week of the fifth, that would be good.
You wanna do the, the fifth, we don't have in our regular meeting?
Yeah, we do the fifth.
If you wanna just do it the fifth, we could do it the fifth.
That's what we'd like to do.
At four o'clock?
Yeah.
August fifth.
You said the sheriff will be here Thursday?
Yep.
Budget.
Okay. So, maybe August the first and August the fifth.
August the first and August the fifth.
Both will be workshops.
Both of them will be workshops.
No, the first will be a meeting also.
Yeah, meeting and workshop.
Thursday will be a meeting also.
The first.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's August fifth at four. August first. Four.
August the fifth at four, yeah, cause I'll be back at work then. Four o'clock, four, better for me.
So, so on August first?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, okay, August fifth, four o'clock.
And then four o'clock from there on out.
Okay. Alright, anything else we need to discuss?
No, we're gonna do commissioner's report.
We can.
Okay.
They're not on the agenda, but if you got a, bought a report, we'll.
Yeah, I need, I wanna talk, I want.
Go right ahead.
Commissioner Langford, I know at the last workshop we've had or something, you was gonna give us the update on Spring Ridge, but we told you, somebody said you couldn't because it wasn't a, um, a meeting, since this is a meeting, can you give us an update on Spring Ridge?
Yeah, um, we did get a bid package from the contractor. Um, Lee and Jim both looked at it and approved it. We asked a few questions, they answered the questions. Uh, I sent Bobby a email and he said he was gonna put it out for bid and I, I think he did that. So it's, it's out for bid.
For how many days will it be out?
It'll be advertised for two weeks and then there'll be a thirty-day deadline on, on bid applications, I think. And the first time we can do anything will probably be around, say, but what, September first, about Bobby?
Well, we don't know anything.
I think the bids come in September the second or third.
I know that somebody had called me and they were concerned because, you know, summer, you know, here already, and then, you know, we were gonna put some ceiling on it during the summertime and now they're like, well, it's gonna be winter before you know it, so what are you gonna do? And I explained to them that we're gonna, um, level it. That's what went up the bid.
The bid, the bid says we're gonna sweep it.
Sweep it and.
We're gonna put a tack down, we're gonna put a leveling course on it.
Yes, a leveling course.
And we're gonna cap it with hot mixed asphalt.
Yeah.
That's the bid.
Okay.
And it has went out.
So, so we're not gonna seal any of those roads right now, we're just gonna do this to all the roads, okay?
That's my understanding.
So that was the person's concern is, you know, we were gonna do it this summer, just put a, you know, um.
Hot mixed asphalt won't have to be, uh, done as, as much as chip and seal would. Chip and seal needs to be hot because you don't, you don't heat it or nothing, but the, if you do the hot mixed asphalt, it, it'll work in a little bit cooler weather.
Okay.
Sooner the better, but I mean, you know, it, it should work better.
Alright, so we should have that back in two weeks then.
Will they have to seal every road out there with, with that cap?
Yeah.
Which could look like part of the road out there is good. I mean, there's a big section of the road that's not bad.
What they'll do is they'll put a leveling course on everything and bring it up to par, and then they'll just cap everything, cause, cause none of it's been sealed or capped or anything.
Alright, Mr. Smith, you have any additional?
No, sir.
Mr. Langford, any additional report?
Duke and the school board having a meeting about some additional funds for building a new school, funding a new school, staffing a new school. Did that not see a ad in the papers or something?
I, I'm not aware of that.
You're not aware of it?
No, I, I don't know.
I'm just wondering how.
I was gone last week.
I'll take our taxpayers. Uh, if, if they do, then.
They haven't received the money for it, but I don't know that they've got the money in hand yet, but.
It's, it's been approved. This was for staffing and additional, additional things that that ain't uncovered. But, um, the only thing is the Dollar General, um, is coming along. They've got the sheep brought home. Uh, I talked to the electricians a couple of days ago. Uh, they're hooking up the lights. They had a delivery on some of their coolers today. So, uh, the projection they're telling me, just talking to the contractors, not the, the guy that's over the whole thing. Just talking to him, we're looking at probably about another four or five weeks and they should be able to open it.
Yeah.
So that would be fantastic. The other thing I was gonna mention now is Spring Ridge. We'll have to fund it somehow, somewhere. So it might be something we wanna think about when we talk budget again, how we're gonna pay for it. Gotta be fixed, one way or the other. I know we hadn't got the bid back, we don't know the cost, nothing like that. But, uh, we still gotta think about how we're gonna pay for it if we fix it.
Mr. Thomas?
Hey, good, good.
I'm not, alright, to a jury, a second? Second?
Second.
Alright.